Hello?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, guys, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Uh, thanks for being here. We're gonna transition, have our, uh, monthly workshop meeting here and then we'll transition into the budget workshop here afterwards. Uh, I wanna call on Joseph to come up and do our invocation.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for this day that you've given us. Lord, thank you for the time that we can gather and go through the county's business and just give us all wisdom and knowledge to go through and make our presentations to, to the commissioners to let them see what we need and give them the wisdom and knowledge to go through and, and make the right decisions for the county, Lord. We pray for the ones that has lost loved ones recently and for the families and, Lord, we pray for the ones that are sick and battling cancer and, and different illnesses and just, again, be with us as we go through and, and conduct your business as a county. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Joseph. Uh, Jayman gonna lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the visual, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody's had a chance to look at the agenda, which would include, uh, the afternoon session. Uh, do I have a motion to adopt?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Ms. Finney makes the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Renninger, uh, any discussion? All in favor? All right. Brian?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, we have two, uh, reports today. We'll start with Robin to do the financials.
This morning, we'll be talking about the December twenty twenty-four financial summary. Uh, so we're, uh, six months into the new fiscal year. This compares this December with December of twenty twenty-three, year-to-date. As you can see, at the bottom of the page, we're about one point five million dollars better than we were at the end of December in the previous fiscal year. We have about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars more of revenues, mostly due to property tax. Um, we have, um, nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars less expenditures than we did at the same point last year. Most of that is due to our contribution to the capital projects funds, reflected in this one point nine million dollar number. And the rest is mostly just, uh, personnel costs and other costs that are a little bit higher than they were in the previous fiscal year. Uh, when we get into the workshop, we'll talk about revenues a little bit, in a little bit more detail, but I think that we're in pretty good shape considering, you know, compared to where we were last fiscal year. Uh, something to keep in mind is we don't have any more of the American Rescue Plan funding, the way we did in last fiscal year. Uh, so, but, you know, comparatively, we're in pretty good shape, so. Here is the graph. So, the blue bars are the current fiscal year. The yellow line is last fiscal year and the green line is fiscal year twenty-three. So, you can see, it's all pretty comparable. The little bit of differences you see in intergovernmental are mostly timing, as well as charges for services. So, let me know if you have any questions.
All right, looking good. Thanks, Robin.
And then, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Easter's coming up. We wanted to continue our conversation that we started about our subdivision changes. Uh, I know Johnny recently met with the planning board this week and he has some, um, ideas that he wanted to run by you all to see if we wanted to include them in our overall changes.
So, thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. So, a couple of things I want to draw to your light in, in some subsequent discussions. A few years back, North Carolina General Assembly kinda changed the approval process for septic tank systems in North Carolina. So, up, up to that point, the only way to have an approved, uh, permit to install a septic tank system in North Carolina was through the local health department. So, through various bills and, uh, laws, they now allow for privatization. So, a proposed developer or builder can go through a private licensed soil scientist, um, they can do a certified, there, there's various different people who can approve it. So, up to that point, for all major subdivisions, the local health official, um, signed off on the septic tank systems to make sure that the subdivision, that all the lots in the major subdivision were approved for septic tank systems. So, what we did in discussions with Suzanne was, we needed to address these because the local health department was signing off saying that they approved these subdivision lots and they never set foot on them. So, what we did in having those discussions, if you can see, this is currently in the subdivision ordinance and this goes on all major subdivision plaits. We just, in discussions with Justin and Suzanne, we added the red verbiage. So, in essence, what we did is now we've added, so if a developer goes through and bypasses the local health department completely, that we just put this statement on there that's saying that they have received the appropriate evaluation documents from an authorized private entity. So, this is just saying, hey, they didn't go through the local health department, or they did go through the local, local health department, but we're just gonna go ahead and let you know that, that's the route that they went. So, this is one of the proposed changes, just to kind of address some of the changes that had happened in the general assembly, um, to kinda bring our subdivision ordinance up to, to compliance. Also, the other thing is during the TRC, and this is no, we're on this, but, but conversations with the, um, with the fire marshal, when we go through the approval process for the major subdivisions, we look at the infrastructure to make sure it meets fire code. I.e., we've got, make sure that we've got necessary, um, fire hydrants placed, we've got egress patterns, widths of the roads, um, cul-de-sacs are the correct size. So, what this is, is during this whole process, is just to make sure when they submit the final approval process to us, to have the plat recorded, um, the fire marshal's gonna sign off on it as well, just to say, hey, look, we're good with what you've done, it meets the requirements and what we've agreed to, we're just signing off on it as well. So, do you have any, any questions? That, that's pretty much it.
I don't have any questions on this and you may not be able to answer this question, but, uh, um, if not, get it to Brian, get it to me by email. I'd like to know how many lots we currently have set aside in Davie County, permitted or otherwise, for construction, residential construction, commercial, if you could break those down for me. Um, do you have that knowledge, just off the top of your head?
Um, I can give, I can give a very, just a general, um, but it's specific, it's gonna be a whole heck of a lot easier to do, like, subdivisions than it is individual lots because, you know, the standalone one acre that's been there for twenty years that can build on it, we just get from those. Those are kind of, you know, a little bit, gonna be a little bit more difficult because they've been there forever. And if, you know, if you've been sitting on family property and choose to start construction, but just overall the subdivision approval process, yeah, we can, we can do that. We've had discussions, we do have a Excel spreadsheet that we're gonna start being able to, to all the ones that come through. We do have, some of those are kinda, we can know they're in the works, but like I said, some of these subdivisions have been proved two or three years ago and then all of a sudden, the economy changes and now they're ready to start developing.
So, you don't have that number?
Off the top of my head, I, I wouldn't even begin to...
Okay, yeah.
It would be, it would be off, but I can, I can a hundred percent get you that, yeah.
Please.
Because it's been requested multiple times. Because I've requested it at least three times. So, to know what's going on so that we just don't get surprised when we're driving down the street.
And, and we, I do, I get multiple calls from developers. I, I had a conversation this week about somebody wanting to do about three hundred homes. Um, a lot of them are, hey, what do I need to do? This is what we're looking at doing, um, what is involved with it? And, and those just go nowhere. Um, I mean, we get that constant. Um, a lot, there's three hundred acres, I got a call from a developer here in, in Davie County, the area, it was a hundred and fifty acres. What do I need to do to develop it? What can I do? And it was a real estate agent and they're marketing the property and, and that. So, a lot of that stuff doesn't happen, um, especially when dealing with septic tank systems. It's very difficult to know how many lots you're gonna get out of that, just because, you know, they gotta go, a lot of processes to go through.
Yeah, I think, and I'm not putting words in Benita's mouth, she wants kind of an ongoing idea of what developers are contacting you about. What I want to know is specifically right now, today, and I would say on a monthly basis, what lots do we have set aside for development in Davie County, including the municipalities? If you have that capability?
I can, I can do Bermuda Run, maybe a little bit more difficult since they've taken over, um, since that, that they're, they're, they're doing their own planning zoning now. But, but for the most part, uh, Mr. Lambert, myself, kind of have, and, and, and with Justin, with the health department, we can get a very, and it's gonna be, like I said, some of these lots may be there and they may sit for three to four years. I know in, in discussions with the developers at Nelson's Creek, that's a seven-year build-out. So, they might have, you know, three hundred and eighty-three lots out there, you know, that they're just sitting there and it's all gonna depend on the economy as well, but yeah, absolutely, we can, we can...
Yeah, and I don't wanna take an inordinate amount of your time to do that. Any explanation that you can give, like, the phase-in there, just, just put it, note it to us and send it to us on a monthly basis, if you can.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Thanks, thanks.
Even the dormant properties, once they start developing, then you should be getting septic tank request or water request or whatever. So, it, even if it's been approved for a long time, at some point in time when it starts moving, paper's gonna start coming across somebody's desk.
Yeah, it, it is, it is, yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got one, basically, about, maybe so you can explain this to the whole board, because I'll be getting questions about it. The property across from where I live finally sold and they've got a phase-one, and of course, we talked about changing the lot widths. And can you, I mean, can, as a teaching moment, can you explain the reason these lot widths don't comply with the new policy?
Those, those have been dealing from an official capacity years prior to the implementation of that. We, we had received, we had been working with, with, I think it predates, you know, my tenure here as well. Um, with having official and reviewing official documents, looking into that, I think they were dealing with the local health department through soil evaluations to that, private, uh, prior to the adoption of the hundred and fifty-foot wide road depth and some of the requirements for that. So, since we had already dealt with them, we'd already looked at it, they were in the process to develop it going forward, we, we stayed with, with, with saying, hey, you kinda fall under that. Anything that comes across the desk going forward has to meet those requirements now.
Can I follow up on that, Brent? Uh, the develop, and I don't know who purchased it, the developer that purchased it is new to this process, right? So, the, the developer that has come in and purchased the property is not someone that you've been dealing with for, for, in a grandfather status, if that's what you're...
I, I don't, whoever the developer is and whoever it is, I, I dealt, we did a TRC for this.
Yeah.
We sat down with the engineer, with the engineering firm. Normally, sometimes the developer's there and sometimes it's not, so, and it can change through your hands, but, but I, we dealt specifically with the engineering firm with that, about the layout and the design of those lots.
Well, but, but, but my question would be then, you, you just, you just made a point that the, some of these things can, uh, you know, somebody might have called you two years ago.
Right, right.
And if they call you back this week...
Right.
Uh, even though they called you two years ago with a hypothetical, whatever, the, the, the ordinance or the standard should apply today.
Correct, I agree. Yeah, it does, it does. We, we had a meeting, we had a meeting with that. They submitted plans, we sat down with the developer and had a TRC with that to discuss this specifically. So, when somebody, when they have pinned a paper and they have a map, this is where we're starting the process, we, in history, have treated that differently. Going forward, we can change that, I'm, I'm all about. In discussions with, 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 uh, with Ed and this, 'cause we had a few that, hey, look, we had already sat down, we had already had meetings with it, and then they get to the process to have it recorded. Um, if somebody calls me and says, hey, I wanna do this and this, I say, this is what you have to do. If I don't see anything and it's just this hypothetical situation, we treat those a whole heck of a lot different.
Well, I, I would hope so. I hope that, that the, the policy that's in place today is the standard that's set with developers that come in and, as you said, to, to, to sign the documents and to proceed forward.
Right.
It's the policy that's in place today. The implication I got from Brent was that we applied the past policy to whoever this developer is and whatever this property is.
Yeah, we, we, but we had a, we had a meeting with that, like official TRC, which is technical review, to sit down to, to look at the layout, to the sign that meets all the requirements. That, this has been going on for years in dealing with this, with this property, that specifically.
With the owner, not the developer.
I, I don't know who, I don't know if they're all still tied in it, I don't know who the owner is. I, I dealt specifically with, um, whoever the engineering firm. And normally, when we deal with these initial layouts, it's engineering firm, it's an architect to make sure that they meet all the requirements. I don't know who the developer is, sometimes, sometimes I don't.
So, so what you're pledging now is that if someone calls you today about a property that, as you said a minute ago, three hundred homes that called you...
Correct, yeah.
Uh, even if they had called you two years ago, you're going to apply the ordinance that's in place today.
Correct, yeah, okay, yeah. So, so if I have a meeting and you, if you sit down and you submit architectural plans and you go through all this and we go through and we review the site and say, hey, look, we're just, it, it, it's a meeting. It's not, hey, I wanna do this. Like, a call I had yesterday was from a real estate agent and was doing some stuff like that. I kinda steered them the direction, tell them about what the expectations are, and then a lot of times that goes away. But when somebody comes in and brings a, a set of plans of a specific, you know, subdivision layout design and I say, hey, look, and, and we did, they went back and tweaked it because we did have some issues. Some of the lots that they had pro, proposed initially didn't meet the minimum lot size. And I look at it and I go, this is preliminary what you wanna do? Now, they started dealing with the local health department and soil scientists to have the lots perked, and then once that taken care of, then they'll come back to me. They want that. When they, and then the initial, um, submission is this is pie in the sky, play, plan A. And, and then that subsequently has changed and tweaks from, uh, due to, due to septic limitations.
Well, I'll let Brent and Benita, they have questions, but I, that's not what I heard. I heard that, uh, that the, uh, the frontage requirements that we had developed about a year ago, um, were, were not being applied in this case. That's what I heard. Now, maybe I misheard that, because you had talked to these people several years ago.
Yeah, we had dealt with them and officially the submission process and they were processed of having it approved.
The, the owner of the property, not the developer, I mean...
I, I don't know who, I, I dealt with the engineer on this.
Okay.
This is somewhat similar to what's on Redland Road, but I think when looked into that, I mean, you had, it was a little different than this in the context that there would be like some successor interest type things with it, maybe about how it was omit, you know, it was submitted. I think the question really need answered here for everybody really is more about, is the same people that are trying to, to develop it in con, conjunction with the new owner, are they still in the mix? Or is this a totally different group? You know, because the owner that's got it now is not the same owner that was initially involved in this, but is that just the, you know, the executive producer, so to speak, or the money person that ended up buying the land, but it's still the same development group involved that, you know, and that, I think that would help kinda maybe clear up some, some things versus the owners came to with a totally fresh set idea?
Terry has a question.
Yeah. I have two questions. Is, is the issue here not really, when does the meter officially start running? Is that, that's the issue, right?
Yeah, a hundred percent, that is the issue.
Okay.
And if I, if I have clear, and, and in the past, was my understanding, if we took any county official stance with a specific submittal or design, that's when the clock started. But, but going forward, and I know we implemented stuff, 'cause there's a lot of stuff, phase-one, phase-two, that they've not recorded. We've dealt with that officially and made requirements and it met the requirements and they've dealt with the local health department and DOT and, and they're in the process 'cause this takes time. If we sat down and they had a submittal to us of a specific site plan and we reviewed the site plan and said, okay, this is what you want, that's when the clock started. And, and that's, that has been my approach up to this point and, and that's, that's the same approach. If that needs to be changed, then one hundred percent, I, I do not mind having discussions with developers and growth with this, I do not mind.
Let me say this, I, just so going to record, because this is more sensitive, 'cause it's across from me, I have no problem, the way it is to get land to perk, the way things go on for maybe two or three years, I have no problem with honoring the, the timetable when they come into it and this being fine. I don't wanna move the cheese on somebody in the middle of trying to do their stuff. So, I'm, I'll be clear on that. I think my question on this one or any other one, and it just so happens that this one is close to where I live, I have no problem, but my, what I need some clarification on is, the final owner that purchased it the other day, or very recently, was it, are they in conjunction with the engineering firm, developer, whatever, that submit, that started this submission of plans? Because that don't seem to be like a successor interest, because it never went to one entity that got those and then to the second entity. It literally went, it literally went from the McCullough brothers to this new entity and all this was people experimenting, doing their due diligence. That, and I'm saying that across the board. I have no problem if it was somebody who started looking at it ten years ago and they were ultimately the buyers or ultimately developers, that's, I think that, is that, does that not sound like a fair question, what I'm saying?
Well, I think the property, where the property's located is irrelevant right now. The issue is, as Terry said, when does the meter start?
Right.
You, that's part of the reason we wanna see the number of lots that are set aside in these developments, because, you know, there's a purpose for changing these ordinances.
Correct.
There's a purpose behind it and the citizens of Davie County have asked us to, uh, to do what we've done. And if we're gonna grandfather, uh, two thousand lots in, because a, a property owner called you three or four years ago, that, 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 that's not what we're about here.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, a hundred percent.
And so, um, I just, 'cause it, clearly, the property that Brent's discussing has changed hands. You were dealing with a new property owner and a new developer that I think came in, this is my opinion, you can, we can debate it, that came into play after we had passed those ordinances. And so, um, I, I just think we have to be careful with that and, you know, if we, if we have to be, if we have to come up with something definitive and we want it, we want developers to, to come to Davie County, especially commercial, but, but, uh, we pass these ordinances for a reason.
I understand.
And, um, so...
But I, I'll just reiterate that if, if we can show that there's some linkage between the current owner and this shell of, whatever you wanna call him, this developer, this engineering firm, whatever, but I, I don't think it, I think what we don't want is to say all the work that so, that previous developers have done doesn't need to be fair game for the new buyer to poach as a way to...
But, but the, the application, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Easter, the, the site plan would be property-specific.
Right.
And you're gonna have, people are gonna do work, it'll never get to you, no one will ever do any, they'll never submit a formal proposal. I mean, that happens every day.
Correct.
So, but if you've got a site and it's got a application filed, to me, that would be pretty clear, that that would be, you know, the meter would start, whatever the ordinance is that day.
Right.
But you're gonna have a lot of successor issues. I mean, as all this property starts to transfer from generation to generation in this county, you're gonna have a lot of that. So, I think it's very, it's imperative, I think, that we clearly figure out when the meter starts. And to me, it's when the application, property-specific starts. And may, and maybe that's the way it's being done, but we just need to clear that.
That is the way we are doing it currently.
But I guess my question back to what Terry's saying, so we're on the same pages, but if it's property-specific and all this is going on and then that person throws their hands up and says, I'm not gonna buy it, and then somebody else does it, they throw their hands up and say they're not gonna buy it, and then you finally get the person that buys it currently, my question is, should they be allowed to grandfather in all this previous work by other people?
I don't think so. I think they should have...
I mean, is that...
Well, I...
'Cause it's not the owner doing all this, it's all these developers on behalf of the owner.
Yeah, I guess, you know, that would, if someone came to Johnny and said, this is my plan, fifty lots, and it works through the process, subsequent developers, and they come back and say, sixty lots, you know, I would see where that's the difference. If they came back and said that we would want to revisit it, but if they said thirty lots and it's less, I mean, this needs more discussion.
Correct.
No question.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
'Cause I hear what you're saying, but we do need to establish...
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, oh, I'm very clear, I'm gonna say it again, 'cause I believe redundancy is more important than you think. I don't wanna move the cheese on anybody that's got their name in there, 'cause that's, that's not the way we should do things. However, if Robert Baldwin, who bought this, was this firm that submitted all this stuff acting on behalf of him, or is he taking the work that they done? And I'm, I think it's a, at least some type of argument that you, these are two different things. This is not moving the cheese on the people that have been over there perking and doing all these things. So, I don't wanna say too much about it because it's close to me, but I'm gonna be, I'm just gonna be clear, I'm gonna be fair about it, no matter where it's at, so...
Well, there've been, there've been multiple proposals on this property, beginning with the, I mean, you, we started out, and I, I use this one because you brought it up. We started out with two hundred units on that property.
Correct.
Uh, maybe almost three hundred, the planning board turned it down.
Three hundred and nine.
So, the, 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 the issue has to be, and I think it's a great point, Terry, at what point do we apply the current ordinances? Not, 'cause we, as you, you guys talked about, we can have successor owners multiple times o, over a course of ten years. Uh, I, I just wanna make sure that we don't have a backlog of units that we're, that we are applying prior ordinances to, uh, that are gonna come forward maybe in the next five years and we say, well, wait a minute. And now, if that means we have an official site plan that they cannot vary from, I believe that's the way we ought to work these things anyway. They have to file a site plan and we have, you have to approve it or whatever, whoever approves, approves, and then we, then the clock starts ticking. Uh, so...
Yeah, but I also, I also say this and then I'll be, get out of the way. Successor interest, if an entity bought it and had it approved that way and they had marketed it under the pretense that it could be utilized that way, that would be changing successor interest in a detrimental way because somebody had possessed it. In the case of this property, there's really no successor interest. It's, the McCulloughs have owned it, people have debated, decided, backed out, debated, decided, backed out, debated, hoping we would give them sewer. Now, a new owner finally stepped in, speculating in some way, nothing wrong with that, there's no successor interest involved here that we're taking away from them, like a previous owner negotiated. So, that's what I think we've got to determine on a case like this or any other case. Does this person need to have the, anything that was previously talked about? I, I, before, I would totally agree with that, I'd say, what's the linkish between the final guy that bought it and any of the work that's been done so far? Is there a link? Was this person involved? So, that's, that's all I'm gonna say.
My, my, my personal opinion, if, if we want to, if we want to, you know, and maybe this is a conversation for Ed, a conversation with this board, but going forward, if, 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 if we won't clear guidance on this, if we say, if it's not been recorded or signed off on, you have to meet the current standard. And, and I'm okay with that and I can discuss every developer and say, going forward with this, this is the expectations of you. I mean, this is just preliminary in discussions, this just come across my desk, it come from nowhere, we still don't have approved septic, we don't, there's, this is not remotely to the point where I can sign off on it. This come across my desk and I was like, okay, they're phasing it in now. Reached out to, um, environmental health to say, hey, where are we at with the septic? And they're like, oh, we're, we're still issues with this and then this predates, there's been septic the whole time with that. And they're like, oh, we're, we're still issues with this, and then this predates, there's been septic the whole time with that. I don't mind reaching out and saying, no, currently, there's been subsequent changes and all that. We have to meet the current standards, 150 foot wide. I do not mind that. Like, if, if, if this, if we feel to do this, I'm okay with this. I don't have, mind having these conversations with developers at all whatsoever.
Well, if, if you haven't seen anything until it's just now starting, to me, that's a no-brainer. That, what we changed applies. If they've never offered anything before.
Well, they have, but that's what I'm saying is, there's been.
This particular person, though.
Well, like I said, when these come across, they change hands. I, I talk to way so many people. I, if there was one person I deal with, if, 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 if you're building a home, I deal with you. Normally, when it's this developer, I'm dealing with an engineer from Winston, from Charlotte, and it's this person, and that person, and this lady, and I've taken over, and we're looking at this. So the hands change. Subsequently, the, the lots may move here, because dealing with DOT permits and stuff like that. Normally, when I get the first submittal, it's pie in the sky, and I look at it and go, okay, looks good. Now I get the septic permits, deal with DOT, deal with everything that, look to make sure the lots meet the minimum lot size, and look at that, okay. And this specific, some of the lots didn't mean this, you need to change this, but once you deal with the local health department and private soil scientist, those lot dimensions may change.
But you just said that this just came across your desk, and none of the septic have been approved and all that, so that means that they're just.
This phase, to record it, this phase, this phase.
And also, I'll add real quick, um, this is part of our discussion with you all, letting you know what's coming. I mean, this came across Johnny this week, and, uh, nothing's official. Um, and doing our due diligence to get it to you all to know what's out there, um, is where we're at in this process. So this is not like they're, they're submitting this preliminary plan as the final, or anything that needs to be approved. This is obviously part of the overall conversation and discussion, but I think it's good for us to know the meter's gonna start when they officially submit something, then we can apply that going forward. When we made the change to the 150-foot rule on, uh, subdivisions that were supported on state maintained roads, uh, we were under the impression that projects that were into works, we would try to finish out, but we clearly, based on the conversation today, uh, it makes clearly good sense that if entities along that way have changed, then it's really starting over back at zero.
I felt like we meant that we're truly in the works, not.
And this project being a great example, has been a conversation, like I said, Johnny said it before, he or I both got here. Uh, but in terms of official submittals, I mean, even still, this is still, I mean, I don't know if this is even official, this is preliminary, but obviously, it's something that is, this is a real tangible thing that starts a clock. Does that make sense?
I'll just say, once again, the only thing about, you know, I don't want to violate any successor interest stuff, we can consult with Ed about that, but this one, different than some of the other cases I've seen, the property never changed hands until the last month or so, whatever. I've not been sitting around looking every day to see if it went through, because I've been told so many times how it's been sold, and I explain to people at the store, that it's not sold until it's actually closed. It don't matter if an offer's been made. So, this one, for, serves as an example for any case like that, because I think what, I, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think what we're kind of saying is, if there's something that where people have sent preliminary things, and there's no entities ever purchased it, that's a different, that's a different animal, because somebody could have submitted something four years ago, and now it's the fifth, sixth person that's been in negotiations that finally buy it, and that's kind of what's happened here.
All right, Terry, go ahead.
I got two things quick. Um, on the chairman's request, or I guess everyone's request about the spreadsheet with the lots, um, if you would accept this, if we had three, platted lots, total lots, or platted lots on the drawing board, total. If, I think that would be helpful from planning. And then, my second issue is on this, um, on the septic tank issue, my concern is, does that go far enough for a, a private soil scientist? I don't want it to come downhill on us.
Right.
And I don't see, maybe that does that, I don't know.
So, so this is just to have it recorded. This is just to say that this does not, and, and it, it's clearly in there. It doesn't give you a permit, it doesn't, you can't construct, it's just for a major subdivision to be recorded. Going forward, subsequently, the individual lots, whatever approval process that they choose to go through, they would work with the health department to get the necessary information, either, and there's different aspects, and it's so, there's so many different options that they do to go private. Um, and, and Justin and Suzanne would have to speak to those, but this is, licensed soil scientist does it, they submit the necessary information per, per statute, and they say, okay, we've got what it needs to record it, and then subsequently, when they start building the lots, whatever else they have to submit for individually, they would have to do that as well.
Right, but my, I'm aware of issues where we have accepted a private soil scientist, and the private soil scientist's report was bogus, or they failed somewhere. And up to now, the state has stepped in begrudgingly and paid for it. But now, as I understand it, if we accept something that a private soil scientist does, and it fails, that's on us, the county. And that could get very expensive, so we need a, some recourse back to the soil scientist. That's my question. And I don't think that, and we don't need to beat that up anymore today, but that is still a concern.
Right, understand, and, and I don't, that, like I said, that's, that's not, that, that's the discussion with Suzanne and Justin, to be honest with you.
I have one more comment. I got to thinking about, uh, because we got to move on to, to our budget agenda, but I got to thinking about uh, this issue of when does the clock start? Uh, I'll use our guys in the school system. If the state legislature passes a law that says the class size for a kindergarten class is 16 people, they can't change it to 20 people, or 20 students, just because they started talking about it two or three years ago.
Right.
Now, what he can do, what they can do, and Mr. Wallace, if I'm out of line here, this, they can file for an exception if, if the business plan warrants it. Maybe what we should do, Johnny, and I don't, I want you guys to have some leeway here with people you've been talking to before, as Brent said, uh, maybe we should have some sort of exception process in play where you can come to us, because these discussions go on over a period of time, and say, look, I, and I'm paraphrasing now. We started talking to these people two years ago. We, we only have a final site plan today, and then it'd be up to us, or your planning board, or whoever, or administrative staff, to approve or disapprove that exception, if that makes sense to you. Otherwise, when they file, when they file a site plan, that's when the clock starts, an official site plan. Uh, but we need to give you leeway. I do agree on that, but, uh, I think we have to, there is a rationale why we change these ordinances, and we just cannot grandfather a ton of stuff in.
I agree.
So.
I've not seen a tangible site, if, if you, I, I do not accept, if you draw something on a napkin and say, I'm looking to do that, no. But if, but if we sit down and had an official called meeting and scheduled, and, and deal with the engineers, and you've got architect, and a surveyor, and you show me the layout, and you say, hey, what do we look here, are we okay, are you okay with the general layout? Then we're gonna take it and start, go to the next entity, deal with the state, and start securing septic permits for my, that, that is when it is. But other just basic phone calls, to me, that, that is no, that, that does not, to me, validate any kind of thing.
Well, the thing we would have to be concrete on that, though, is that site plan, that you're not, they, they file a site plan with you two years ago that was, uh, 75 units, and now this year, uh, when they come back in, it's 125 units.
Yeah.
Uh, you, you, you know, I have no problem with what you just described, if it is documented, and it's, and, and, and that specific site plan has been approved, and they don't vary from it. Now, if they vary down, you know, we can all agree with that.
With septic, they do vary down.
Yeah, but I, I just think we have to have, we can't just leave everything wide open.
I'm okay, and, and if, and if this board chooses, and I know Commissioner, uh, Chair, it's, it's a, it's a long discussion, but if this board says, hey, until going forward, I, I do not mind having those conversations with the developers, and saying that there's been, we, we layway, and, and if, since we don't know how much, I, I'm 100% okay with steering every developer in the direction, going forward, this is where you've got, this is what you have to do, and we are taking this and doing this, and, 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 and having discussions with them going forward. This only, and I, and I would say the majority of the subdivisions that I work and deal with, it's a minute, they're going in putting private roads in. Um, they're, they're, they're developing that, and, and it's just, it's this rare case where it borders, you know, an already established road. So, if, if going forward, if we choose to do this route, just because this is what we do, I do not mind having this conversation with the developers, saying going forward, this is what we have to do, and, and just be done with it.
I don't know if it's that simple, but I, I want to be fair to whoever's done it, because, you know, I don't know, I've not kept up with who's been negotiating on this land, but I do know, maybe the pers, maybe the LLC that purchased this is connected to the LLCs or the groups that's looked at it previously, and to me, that would show a legitimate linkage. If it's somebody totally new that came to the picture, that's totally different. Now, you know, but like I said, I want to be fair, don't want to move, don't want to change the rules on somebody if they, if they are directly connected to what's been going on.
Any other, any other questions?
Yes, I have, I have a comment I'd like to make on this, or a question, or, or get your official, or yours, official opinion on it. Everything that's done on that property is for that property. It's not for the person that owns it, or the developer, or, or whoever. Somebody that buys it down the road is subject to whatever rules and permits, and anything else that's been put on that property. And I do know that you have to have some kind of site plan developed for that property before you dig your perk holes, because that's how they know where the houses are going to go.
Correct.
And where to perk.
Correct.
And this property was perked some time ago, so there has to be some kind of plan already developed as to what that property is going to be. And that does not attach to the McCullough brothers. That's not something they can take with them when they sell that property and move it to another property, or whatever. It has to stay with that specific property. Uh, any permits, any rules and regulations that you tell them they have to live by, has to stay with that property. It's, it's not something that any owner owns. Um, is that correct?
Yes, sir, yeah.
You're correct, it's prop, property specific, John Owens. Therefore, if, if a property has been approved for something, and John does, and he sells it Sam Road, then you can't take it away from Sam Road, because it's already been approved for this guy, and you can't say, well, he no longer owns it, so now you've got to start over.
Well, we've got to move on, but, uh, but I do want to make one point here. That, that property, and I don't, I don't, I hate to continue discussing this property. It is on the borderline of the potential of sewer coming out to Baltimore Road with the new exit. So you're telling me, if this is approved for whatever, 50 units, okay, with septic, five years from now, sewer runs out to Baltimore Road to the edge of that property, and they believe they can get with sewer 200 units on that property, that they have to apply a different plan that would, that would fit under the current ordinances, even the way you're defining it.
Right, that property would have to be rezoned. They can have sewer, but the minimum lot size will still be RAR 20, which is 30,000, 40,000 square foot, depending on that. So if they wanted to go to R8 or R12, that would require action by the, the, the planning board, and then approval from this board to increase density, to go eight units per acre, and all that. So, so if, that, that, that 100%. Now, they could hook sewer, but they're still gonna have the same lots as what they are now.
Because some of the speculation in that area is going out years, looking at the potential of, um, of a, okay, all right, thanks, Johnny.
Correct.
I have one more little, just simple question that goes all the way back to the beginning of your conversation, because quite honestly, my attention didn't grasp it. Who did you say was approving septic without stepping foot on the property?
I, I didn't say that. Oh, no, 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 no.
Yes, you did.
Okay, 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 okay. So, initially, the local health department were the only people that could approve septic tank systems. So now, the General Assembly of the State of North Carolina, if they, the local health department, once they receive the necessary documentation, and there's different ways of going, from a licensed private soil scientist, the health department, as a part of it, says, we received the necessary applications from a private soil scientist, and they can proceed on. The, the local health department doesn't set foot on the property in certain instances. And that's, that's not, that's, that's a State of North Carolina thing. That, that's that.
Just wanted to clarify what you said, because I wanted to make sure I heard.
Yeah.
One final clarification to Richard's point and what Ed was saying. Was anything tech, you know, was it technically approved, or in the process of just showing what we're, because I think that's gonna, that would be important on any, you know, you know, you look at the site plan, I get that, they do the soil sample, I get that, but has anything officially been approved that continues to move on with that land?
The only official approval from, from my office is that went out when we signed the plaque to record it. That's the only official approval. That's the only official approval.
And that kind of runs in context with Terry's amendment to my request in platted lots versus.
Right.
So nothing's officially been approved on that yet. So, does that change what Richard's saying, or not? Richard's point's very good. Well, take it.
I understand that. Initially, when I sit down, and normally when most developers come in and we do kind of a TRC, a technical review, we look at infrastructure, uh, Mr. Lambert will be in there, um, to discuss what needs to do to get water, to, and, and a lot of stuff. So there's different entities working. The developer will deal with DOT to, to get driveway permits, they'll deal with, uh, DEQ to make sure grading permits, and then they'll deal either with the local health department, or they'll deal with a private soil scientist to get perk test. But the, normally, the initial submittal is pie in the sky, the most bang for the buck, where they can get the lots. If they want to go with that, they go with that. That, that's what they want, and that's what they're working off of. Sometimes, well, because this lot is good, this lot can go, we're gonna, we're gonna make this lot bigger, and we're gonna add here and add there. So normally, the lot size goes down. It never goes up. So during this process, everybody's, there's, there's multiple entities that go approval, and once every entity signs off on it and says, you know, we're okay with it, we've got everything to good, we can record it, then that's when the official approval i- is done, if that makes sense.
All right. You did a good job. Thank you. Thank you. Brian, pending?
Yes, sir. Um, due to the timing of this particular meeting, we do meet Monday of next week to go over our February, uh, commissioner's meeting. A couple of items, uh, Mr. Easter will be back up here again to talk to you about some solar farm text amendments. Uh, Paul Moore is gonna present and finalize his recreation and park advisory, uh, park ordinance changes. Uh, Registered Dees is gonna give a presentation of a project that she's been working on in her office. And then we have several appointments that you all have been reviewing this month, um, to move along some of our boards and committees. That's all I have.
I, I tell you, if you don't mind, uh, we'll dispense with commissioner comments. I think we've commented enough, and we'll have, we'll have plenty of time to comment, uh, today, so we'll move on to the budget workshop.
Yes, sir, we're gonna rearrange some seats real quick.
All right, well, I'm gonna get some coffee.
Oh, I'm sorry, Richard.
I've got one question I want to ask.
Richard has a question.
Um, on the Baltimore Road project that was mentioned by somebody in here, uh, we had seen somewhere along the line that it was to be started in 2025. Is that still applicable, or have they postponed, or whatever?
If, if you, if you will give me one minute to look up the last report that they sent to me, um, as we moved these things around, I can get you the answer of when, the timing of certain things. I know they've moved some things back a couple of months, and I know 2025 was always on the, uh, list, but to give you this, um, I can give you an update.
Mike, have you looked at that? Have you, okay.
There's parts of it in 25.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you asking?
It was, it was the, uh, getting the permissions and the rightaways and things this year, right? Yeah, and then starting the rest in 26.
Awesome.
They've been working on that.
Okay, go ahead and arrange what you need to arrange. We ready? All right, uh, Mr. Wallace, we'll go, oh, Brian, you want to go?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a few words before we got this going. Um, number one, thank you all for allowing us to do this today. Uh, this is part of our budget pri- Uh, this is part of our budget process. Um, a couple of things I wanted to point out. Um, as we're doing our budget this year, um, I'm calling, I'm calling this year's budget the Girl Scout budget. Because one thing that you're going to see today and probably through this whole budget process, I think we all remember when these were two fifty apiece, three dollars, then they went up to four and now they're six dollars, same cookies, same great taste, but the price has gone up. So I'm just preparing you now, you're going to see some of that today. Um, I know that Suzanne's going to talk about some of their increases. Joseph's going to tell you about some of the same equipment that's going up. The sheriff's going to talk to you about equipment. Um, all that being said is that we're going to take all that information together this spring and we are going to try to formulate the best budget that we can present to you all, knowing that we're coming into this process with the cloud of revaluation hanging over our heads and that we are taking all of that in consideration, all the feedback that you guys have given us, um, throughout this fiscal year and prior conversations. We're trying to put that all together and making sure that we give you a product in May that fits the guidelines that you expect. Um, and, uh, but we wanted to take today to start that process, to have that first additional deeper conversation about budget, um, as we move into the spring. Um, so that being said, please, if you have any questions for any of our presenters, um, you should have, did we get the notes pages sent to them? For them to take notes?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
And the.
Okay, and the back of your binders are, it's, it's, it's just some basic notes, questions, comments, pages. Um, so if there's some, if there's something that hits your soul and you want us to dig into too deeper and maybe not go into as deep a conversation today, um, we will collect those at the end or if tomorrow you want to email to either me, Karen, um, so that we can make sure that we're answering all of those questions through this process, um, please just let us know. So to kick us off today, we're going to start with our, uh, partners in education. Uh, we have, uh, Mr. Wallace and Ms. Varner here to talk to us about Davie County Schools and Davie Commu- Davie, Davidson-Davie Community College. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wallace.
Morning. Chairman Jones, board, Mr. Barnett, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Right in line with the Girl Scout cookies, I just got an email about three weeks ago that we have a system where, Richard, if one of your, if you want your transcript, there's a way to go get it online where they're, they're doubling their price. So if we don't change our price, we lose money. So even transcripts, securing transcripts are going up, which is right along the line with the, with the Girl Scout cookies. Thank you for the opportunity. I want to say again, as, as Brian mentioned, it's a partnership. We continue to talk about that and the opportunity to sit down with the leadership at a table and talk and share where we're heading. We're serving children in this community. It's one of the most important things we can do. I appreciate the dialogue and the conversations a moment ago because we do care about what we do and that makes us all better. And I've said this to many of you before, we can't, Davie County can't just have a good school or a good hospital or a good EMS. We've got to have it all. And it takes a lot of deliberation and partnership. So thank you for that opportunity. We have a presentation we're going to walk through. We'll be glad to field any questions. And I'm going to ask Mr. Clay Harris, who is our chief financial officer and chief operations officer, to come forward and share this presentation with you.
Thank y'all for the opportunity. We start out with these, just a few pictures that kind of highlight what, what we do. Um, top left corner is education. That's, that's a classroom of their students. The top right corner, um, that's our North Davie Theater Group. They were at a breakfast, um, probably about a month or so ago and presented the, the play they were doing at that time. Um, bottom left corner, it's Maxwell Elementary. Uh, Mr. Osborne, the principal there challenged his kids to come up with stuff for Western North Carolina. They came up big. We filled a truck up and took it to them. The last one is, um, what used to be our old boardroom, it's now the Julia Suter building. We did the ribbon cutting for that. Just some highlights of kind of what we've done this year. One of the things, the first thing I want to talk about is, is kind of funding and, and where we are. This is the first year we've done funding and arrears. Um, uh, it's a good plan, but it can tie our hands if we, if we lose ADM from one year to the next. Our funding is based on where, where ADM was the previous year. So we could easily tie our hands. We're very fortunate. Um, we're in the minority for rural districts. We're staying stable or growing just a little bit. So our forecasted ADM this year was sixty nineteen. We actually came in at sixty twelve. So I mean, it's, it's very good from that standpoint and we continue to do that. The next two items that kind of highlight where we are. We're funded at thirteen percent of ADM for our EC program. We currently have seventeen point five percent identified. Academically gifted, the opposite side of the spectrum, we're funded at four percent. We actually have fifteen percent identified. Reason that's important is any funding we need for this group over what the state provides, we have to go local. That's, that, that comes back in the money that you provide. So just kind of give you an idea of where we are. Capital projects, our capital projects, as we work through those, they, they'll start this year. They may not finish for a year or two till we get, to try and get everything done. Or we lay the program out and we can't start until the next summer because we have cranes at our schools. We can't have cranes there when our students are there. So we work towards those. We've been challenged over the last week given the cold weather. We, we've had some failures in some of our heating and air systems that we've had to work through. And so we, we've worked through that. We've got a school that's just got a brand new heating and air system. It failed us in the, in the throes of it. So we're having to work with even our new equipment, our vendors, make sure they're doing the right thing. And so our capital projects, as we look at it, we'll work through them. Um, but our fund balance that we talk about is so very important for these things that we, so we're not having to come back to y'all all the time saying, I've got a heating and air unit. It's going to be thirty thousand dollars. I need help. That kind of thing. That's a piece of kind of where we are and what we're doing when we look at funding and everything else. Charter school spending, um, is another, is a key point of kind of where we are. State legislature changed the update on our charter schools. Our virtual schools used to get seven hundred and ninety dollars a year, um, for every student in Davie County that goes to one of the virtual schools. Um, last year they changed it to brick and mortar and virtual get the same thing. It's a hundred and ninety-one percent increase in what we pay our virtual schools, virtual charter schools. So the spending in twenty-one was right at twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollars. Last year we spent ninety-six thousand dollars, two hundred and seventy-four percent increase over, over three years. This year we're slated to spend almost a hundred and ten thousand dollars if we continue on the trajectory we're on now.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Absolutely.
Uh, give me, um, tell me what you mean by that, virtual charter schools. How many different entities is this money going to? Who, who, who does, who, who do these dollars go to?
We, we currently, we currently have fifty-seven students in Davie County that go to a ver- a charter school of some sort. Majority are at our virtual school. So that's, um, the new one that's open this year is in Raleigh. I think it's called Pine Lake if I'm not mistaken. Um, we have the Leadership Academy in Forsyth County. We have, we have two students, I believe, that are going there. Um, so it's fifty-seven students. I think we're paying eight or nine different entities for those. The vast majority, when the, when the funding changed for virtual, the vast majority have gone to a virtual school of some sort. So, um, North Carolina Virtual, uh, there, there are a few other ones that are out there that we're, we're funding. So I'm, I'm going to make it very easy for you. So if you give us two thousand dollars and we've got a hundred students in our ADM, that's twenty dollars is what the value is, I have to send that amount of money to the virtual school for that student. Does that make sense?
Oh, it makes all the sense in the world. Yeah. I just wondered where, uh, exactly how broad that was.
Well, we, uh, Davidson Charter, uh, I know we've got a few students there. So it's Davidson County, Forsyth County, Raleigh Durham, um, there's some there.
But that, that fifty-seven doesn't count our virtual students that go to your virtual school? Just outside of, okay.
Our virtual school, yes.
People may not understand that because we don't have a charter school in Davie County. So that, that's a great point. Thank you.
So, uh, so that, that's what it is. Um, the other piece that we took a look at or we constantly have, have, kind of have, uh, side on is voucher. Um, North Carolina DPI came back and said, when you take a look at the voucher program, what is the impact to all the, the LEAs or PSUs out there? They forecasted our impact would be three hundred and sixty thousand dollars of state funding we would no longer get. Um, talk a little bit about ESTER spending. Um, ESTER spending ended on December the twenty-ninth last year. Um, we were able to redeploy all of our staff. We had seven, uh, seven staff members that were paid with those ESTER dollars. We moved them into a classroom or into another position. We didn't have to, uh, let any of them go, um, from that standpoint. Very fortunate. Um, the bigger impact for us is around, uh, professional development, um, and some of our summer programs and everything else. ESTER paid for a lot of those. As we continue to look at that, we're applying for grants to be able to continue that because that professional development for our staff was invaluable in where we are and how we could continue to build capacity inside of them. We found several of the summer programs that ESTER funded was very valuable. A bridge program, for example, so our fifth graders going to sixth grade, our eighth graders going to ninth grade. We had, went to summer camp just to help them acclimate to their new school. Um, so there's very valuable, so trying to figure out how we can sustain some of those things without those dollars today. We're very specific to pay for that. Questions? Okay. Um, classified salary study, that's, that's been before us for about three years now. Um, when we took a last look at that, it's about one point five million dollars for us to get all of our classified staff onto the state mandated, um, salary scales. Um, we, we've not been able to do that. So I took a look and said, you know, what if we do a tiered approach and we start? And I just chose three percent as somewhere to get started. That's about five hundred and ninety thousand dollars for us to get started just to help retain some of our staff as we're competing for other, other role, other entities and everything else. So we continue to look at that, trying to figure out how we, how we can make that work.
Clay, that's one of the areas that I've always, I've had some concern about with some friends of mine across the state on school boards that run into issues about, you know, how you keep good classified staff. Because, you know, a couple of my friends, they had people being taken by the county government doing the same job paid at a much higher salary. So, uh, I'm quickly, what is, what are we up to as a minimum hourly rate for a classified perk?
Well, the lowest classified position is fifteen dollars an hour because the state, state mandates that. Um, if they're paid out of state dollars or federal dollars. Um, we don't delineate between state, federal or local. If it's fifteen dollars an hour, everybody's going to be paid fifteen dollars an hour. So that's the minimum of what we pay. Um, we try and keep, uh, try and move them along so that they go the next year, they'll go from fifteen to fifteen sixty as we try and keep them moving a little bit, um, a- as we go through the next person. If you're, this is your first year coming in by, it's going to be fifteen dollars. Okay? Other questions? Um, what we want to take a look at is just let you know kind of where we were with vacancies at the beginning of the year. Um, from a certified perspective, we had thirty-five vacancies. That doesn't mean we had thirty-five classrooms without teachers in them. Means we had to, we had positions where somebody may be in there in a long-term sub to fill that role. They may be teaching in something that they're not licensed specifically in, um, as, as we work through that. So there's thirty-five, thirty-five open positions. We've had fourteen resignations so far this year. We've actually hired twelve positions back. Um, so we continue to work through getting people in the right license to be able to instruct the right place and, um, growing our IAs or, um, in, into teaching roles as we work through that.
So is that thirty-five plus two?
Thirty.
If you net twelve off the fourteen, it, do the, do that, the resignations, are they abo- over and above the thirty-five?
Over and above the thirty-five.
Okay.
So please, please understand that doesn't mean we've got open classrooms. It just means that when you take a look and you've got a licensed teacher for middle school ELA, um, we may have another or two other ELA teachers covering their classes, but that's still a vacancy for us. So now we're paying for their planning period to be able to cover those. Does that make sense? Kind of where, 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 so it's not, we don't have classrooms without someone in them for students. Um, does that make sense? Does that kind of answer your question?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
We were getting a true picture of how many vacancies you have.
Yeah, yeah. And so from a classified perspective, we started the year at thirty-six. We had twenty-one resignations, thirty-one we've been able to hire back. Um, building administrators, I just want to share this so you kind of understand what we're working through. We had, we had our six new assistant principals, two of which were our, um, two of our employees that went through a principal prep program and moved into that. We brought four in from outside the district. Um, and then we have three new principals. They were all, um, Davie County Schools assistant principals that moved into that role. Um, so, and we have twenty-five administrators in Davie County. You take a look, nine of our twenty-five are new, either to a position or new to us. Well, that's just a little bit on safety where we are. Um, a lot of, a lot of communication around Open Gate. Um, we introduced, there'll be eighteen Open Gate devices in our schools when we fully implement. Currently we have our middle school, CDA and early college are live with their, their units going relatively well. I was actually at Ellis this morning helping them with theirs. Um, the high school, we did the training last week with them. Um, they will go live next Wednesday at the high school with those devices. And then the elementary schools will go later in February and then we'll have all eighteen devices, um, uh, deployed in, in our schools at that point. Ray, the panic button app, that, that's a, um, state provided app that we've worked through. Uh, all of our schools, all of our staff have been trained on that. We should go live with nine-one-one probably the end of this month, first of March. Um, great, uh, app to be able to communicate with our staff in the building as well as notify, uh, those of us at the district that need to know about it if something goes off, we're notified immediately, um, so that we can make plans on what we need to do. I want to take a minute just to say our relationship with the first responders is wonderful. I mean, that just, our, our work with EMS, our sheriff's department, nine-one-one, as we look at all of that, it's just phenomenal. Thank y'all for that. Um, we, that support and partnership is, is invaluable as I'm in meetings with other, um, finance officers, uh, operations. What we have is not standard across the state, so thank y'all for that. Talk a little bit about trends and everything else. Every year our, our, because this is their, their document that they provide. But up in the stars is what I want to talk about a little bit. Um, our ADM over ten years has dropped about six percent. Um, our staff to match that, we've reduced our staff by nine percent. But our retirement cost, even with the lower staff, has gone up a hundred and ten percent. If I do the same thing for healthcare costs, it's gone up fifty and a half percent. So it plays right into what, uh, Brian was talking about with cost continues to go up a- as we work through that and, and, um, uh, we're trying to figure out how, how we balance it all. Keep in mind that anything we can't cover with state and federal dollars, I've got to come back to the local dollars that you provide to us to cover. Yes, sir.
With this, you know, I was astounded when my daughter came back, when she applied and told me what the contribution was for pension, first of what it was when I worked. Um, what, um, how much of that, I mean, how much of that's paid by state funds or whatever or close? I mean?
Um, well, um, you can take in consideration about eighty-five percent of our staff is paid with state dollars. So eighty-five percent of that number i- is going to be, uh, state funded and everything else. My point here is if we, we get to a point that we overspend or they, they continue to raise the cost, um, where this is going to be a dollar impact for, for local. It, I mean.
But it's still a substantial cost. That's what I want.
Absolutely. And the problem you run into is, um, I'll take our maintenance team, for example. I can't pay them out of state. They have to be local. So when retirement goes from twenty-four percent to twenty-six percent, every bit of that is a local dollar. Um, same thing with healthcare, same thing with when they say, hey, we're going to raise salaries three percent, four percent. That's a direct impact to local dollars as we take a look at it and will continue to remain competitive. Does that answer your question, Brett? Thank you. Okay. Other thoughts? Um, here I just want to talk a little bit about where we are from an appropriation standpoint. We take a look at twenty-two up to twenty-five. We continue to grow and thank you. Uh, inter-local agreement is, is a wonderful thing. Again, we, we're in the minority with that and that, that's very promising for us. What I wanted to add in the peach arrows that are in there, kind of talks about personnel cost and utilities, things we have to have that have to come out of local dollars. Um, between twenty-three and twenty, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, um, we, we had, we had personnel costs went up about two point seven five percent. Utilities went up about one point five six percent. And it was eighty, almost eighty-three percent of our budget last year. Our personnel cost went up ten percent, utility cost went up four percent and it was eighty-seven percent of our budget. We're continuing to, to give up with where we are as we take a look at it, but it's eating into a lot more of that budget, um, and the, the money that we're getting as we work through that. So just more informational questions about that? This goes back to your question, Brandon, a minute ago. So our total budget, I'll take state, federal, local, everything into consideration with the exception of our capital funds, eighty-four point five. 84.5% of our budget, total budget was for personnel. That includes salary benefits and everything else. 7% of supplies. Those supplies could be paper, pencil, software, things we've got to buy from that standpoint. Then you look at contracts and utilities. So we've got contracts with social workers or speech pathologists because we can't hire them. We have to pay, bring them in and pay a contract. That's what's included in that. And that last 0.26% is other. That could be charter schools. That could be any, any number of things that are not covered in those other buckets. Yes, sir?
Clay, just real briefly question. Can, and Karen, if we don't have this, can you send us this? We've got commissioners up here making notes specific on your, on your.
It's downloaded, so I think.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So that, that's total budget. We take everything into consideration. Went one step further and broke it down just local. This is what is a local appropriation. So the, the personnel is actually 73% of the money. So the 14 million dollars that we got from y'all this year, about 73% of it is going to be for personnel. That's going to be salaries, benefits, that type of thing. 6% of it's going to be in supplies. 20% of it's going to be in contracts and utilities. And then the 0.68% again is that other. And that really is the charter payments that we've got to make.
If I may, I want to make a connection here. If you go back to where the state funds us at 13% for exceptional children, but we're, our population has stayed relatively the same. Our head count was, of our exceptional children is 17 and a half percent. We have no choice. We have to pay and meet their needs. If that's a one-on-one, a nurse to a child assistance, we have to pay. So that's where a lot of that can be found right there for personnel, which we're mostly about personnel. But we have to meet the needs with our AIG kids. We have to meet their needs as well. And there's a discrepancy there of 11%. That's how we get to some more, why we need additional positions and where we put those positions.
That's a picture of boxes as they were loading up. So what questions do you have for us?
Any questions? I will just say this, we're praying for you because I hear in May, we're going to have, we're, we're going to have an issue and we're going to pray that God brings us somebody because you're going to be hard to replace, Mr. Wallace. I'll tell you that.
I appreciate this group and everybody in this room. We've worked somehow with them. So thank you, Mark. Yes, sir, Brett.
I want to say something real quick. Mr. Wallace, Jeff, whatever you want to call him, we go back a long ways and I, I wouldn't do this if it wasn't for remembering him wrestling in his apartment with one of my best friends growing up, all, all the way back to the late 80s or whatever. Enjoyed having a long relationship, friendship, professional relationship, watching kids grow up. You know, he embarrassed the devil out of Katie when he said, "I knew you when you were in diapers" to her classroom. So down at South Davie. But I just wanted to, you know, appreciate and I've enjoyed being your friend.
Thank you, Brett.
I think y'all need to tell him he can't go. Just deny that.
I promise you, I've tried that.
Just lose it.
I tried that as well.
Well, I, I'm sure we'll have questions as we get into the process. We'll get, we'll get them to you if there's none today.
Again, if you, you have this, but if you need some additional, just let us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will go to the community college.
Thank you. It's good to be here. I'm Jenny Warner, president of the community college, and we appreciate the opportunity to give you a little update today. Although he needs no introduction, I'm very happy to have our board chair, Dr. Bill Steed, with me today, as well as our executive vice president of finance and administration, Laura Yarborough, and our vice president of workforce and community engagement, Dr. Jonathan Brown. First, just to thank you for everything you do for Davidson Davie. We're grateful to be in a county that is so committed to helping its people and its economy and its communities be successful. And we're just happy to, to be a partner in that. So thank you. As I think we all know, the, the role of the county officially in supporting community colleges is in supporting the buildings and physical plant of our college. So I think it's worth repeating, and you may have heard this too, but, but we hear all the time from people that we have one of the most beautiful community colleges in the state. I would argue the most beautiful. And it's actually, it's one of the things people tell us most often. They feel like our campuses are clean and nice and inviting and welcoming and that our facilities are repaired and updated. I had a student athlete tell me recently, and he had visited a lot of schools because he got recruited from a lot of places. He said, there's no comparison. There are no nicer facilities than what you have at Davidson Davie. So thank you for the role you play in that. And although we know that the physical plant of the college is not necessarily the only thing that matters, it's a piece of the puzzle because we have to put together a quality education for our students so that they can study in modern facilities that then lead to 21st century jobs. So when you combine that with our 40-plus programs of study and our, our top rankings on performance measures, you'll understand why our enrollment continues to climb. You may have heard me say this before, but we were one of only four community colleges in North Carolina during the pandemic that didn't lose enrollment. And ever since then, our numbers are still going up. So more and more students are coming to college. Specifically now, here in the spring semester compared to a year ago, our spring semester FTE curriculum enrollment is up more than 6% compared to a year ago. So it's proof to us of our relevance to our local populations and their need or their willingness to stay local for their higher education, which is good for the long-term success of our communities. If we keep them here at Davidson Davie, then sometimes we have a better chance of keeping them here for their future careers and having their long-term contributions here in our counties. A little more about our enrollment here in Davie County. In our continuing education classes that are based at Davie, now this doesn't include Davie residents who may also go to our Davidson campus, but for what's happening right here on the Davie campus, we had 434 students in the fall. In the curriculum classes here at Davie, we had 453 students in the fall. And then if you want to look at who some of those students are, some of our, if you combine our early college, our CCP program, which is also high school students, although they're not in the early college, and, and other dual enrollment opportunities, that's 272 of our students from the fall. So a large number of, of young students either duly enrolled at the high schools or at the early colleges are taking advantage of the, the community college. We also continue to meet the needs of students who have dropped out through our basic skills program. That's what we call career and college readiness to make sure that they can get or keep good jobs. And so we had 153 students in that program this fall. A little update on Ignite Davie, which as I think you know, is really not comparable to any other program in the state. It offers a lot, a lot more community support and wraparound services than other college programs throughout North Carolina. But in the fall, our total number of enrolled students in Ignite Davie was 139. And just so you know, some of the programs that those students are in, about 64 of them plan to transfer on to a four-year school. 18 were in some type of healthcare program, 22 in business and computer programs, 15 in a skilled trades program, and then about a dozen in some other miscellaneous fields. We have also been able to add some new opportunities to Ignite Davie, whereas it previously used to just cover curriculum programs. We've added some continuing education programs that students are eligible for also. That includes nurse aid, HVAC, electrical, phlebotomy, and our central sterile healthcare program. So let me move over for a minute to customized training. This is a, a large part of what a community college does, and it is when a company, new or existing, needs a certain type of training for their employees. And so we work with our trainers, whether they work for the college or work for our statewide system, and we develop the specific training that the company needs. So so far this fiscal year here in Davie, we've trained 179 employees at five companies, Ashley, Avagall, Break Bush, Comfort Built, and Liberty Sheds. We've also worked closely with the team here in Davie that recruited SBA home to come here. We talked with them during their early visits about the training that would be available to them through the college. And now that Davie has been confirmed as their final selection, we're working with them to, to firm up the plans that will meet their specific needs.
Can I interrupt you real quickly?
Sure.
Do you have those notes formally?
I can absolutely go to you.
Do you get those to Karen?
Sure.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Lot of great information.
Yes, I will. I'll make sure you have them. Let me move on to some of our workforce continuing education programs. We trained 210 people this fall in our plumbing, electrical, and mechanical code inspections. We have a successful evening welding program going on right now. We are continuing our apprenticeship paramedic cohort with Davie Medical Center. It's being taught at our Davie campus for right now. We have a new detention officer training school that we've been working with Sheriff Hartman on. And we've just hired two instructors who are going to offer computer and drafting classes at the Davie campus and at the Davie Education Center with the registration opening in the next few weeks for those. We're still actively recruiting companies for the apprenticeship consortium. It's a consortium of business and industry as well as the college. Incursol Rand has been active in that consortium, and we're always hoping for more there. We have a small business center that operates out of our Davie Education Center in Bermuda Run and right now is partnering with the Chamber to offer a number of opportunities this spring. Brian, thin minutes are my weakness, so as we get into that discussion, we'll work with you as we, you know, figure out how to prepare for the new fiscal year. So as everybody well knows, our cost of doing business, of course, is going up as well. But, but we can have that discussion with you about how we plan for some of our future budgeting needs. So I think I'll stop here and please, I'm happy to answer any questions. And I will get you data.
Questions?
I do have one comment I'd like to make. I spoke last night with one of your peers in Wilkes County, and they had nothing but praise for your, you yourself and the way you run Davidson Davie.
Very kind. Thank you for letting me know. We are lucky in this state to have a great system of community colleges and a great set of colleagues across the state. And it's, it's always a pleasure to, to work with them and see what's working at their colleges and see what we can do here. So thank you for that.
Are you still working on a healthcare building on the hospital campus?
We are. We're in the design phases of that project. And, you know, it's, it's a little bit of a chicken and an egg kind of situation. You know, you, we always want to know what that final cost will be, but we got, you got to get far enough in the design process to really get your best numbers. We do know we still have a little bit of a funding gap there, but we've, we need to, to move a little further along to know what that looks like. I do think that this will be one of the best partnerships you'll see in the state when we make this happen. Atrium is really excited about the opportunity to, to have our, our education presence so close to them as we work to build up that healthcare workforce. So I think it's going to be a great partnership. We just got to get a little further before we have specifics of breaking ground and that kind of thing.
Do you foresee having a pure dental hygienist program at any point in the future? I know it's assistant and all that, and that's one of the common ones that people have to go to other community colleges for?
Yes, we do have dental assisting now, which is based at the Davidson campus. Whether or not we add dental hygiene really depends on our assessment of the marketplace. When we started dental assisting, the assessment was there are enough dental hygiene programs out there right now to meet market demand, but there are not enough dental assisting programs. So if that changes at some point, we might make another decision. But what we don't want to do is have a program where there aren't enough jobs out there. So we don't want to go to the cost of doing that without making sure the workforce demand is there.
I'm mainly asking because of the linkage with the Ignite Davie and that, because I know a lot of the students, you know, end up going to, I think Guilford Tech's like the most prominent one in the general area.
I think when we see an opportunity to add a program, we certainly do. And that, that's the reason that we have added a new radiography program that's going to start in the fall. It's because our healthcare partners said, hey, we know there are some programs out there, but we still have openings and we really need you to do a program. And so that, that's how we kind of make that decision. So it's always a possibility, but I think we would have to determine that that demand is there.
Right. Glad to hear you're getting the radiography. That's great.
I did have one other question I'd, I'd like to ask. When, when you do deal with the law enforcement students that come through the community college, when they come out, do they have their BLET or are they just capable of getting it then?
They, they do. Do you want to add anything?
Thank you.
I, I appreciate you working with the sheriff's department in that manner. And I just want to say, I hope that you will move forward to a stronger working relationship with our emergency services, EMS, and fire departments in that same manner because they're having to go to other places to get their classes instead of being able to take them here. And especially the fire program at the high school, that is a crucial program for this county because we depend on volunteer fire service. And if we can get those young men and women certified while they're still in high school and get them excited about the fire service, that is a blessing to us. We, we are still very unique that we solely depend on volunteerism in this county. So, but it's, it's very important to me that our EMS program employees can get what they need locally. Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you so much. Just get those, get that information to Karen. Thank you so much. We'll take a 10-minute break.
Got me a banana.
All right. We will get started again. And Robin, thank you.
Hello again. So what we'll talk about now is just a sort of a broad overview of revenues, of where we are right now, where we're planning to be for budget. Jamin is going to be up right after me to talk about the, this year's revaluation. So if you want to save any and all questions for Jamin, he'd appreciate it. So, so this is a snapshot, just the revenues portion of what we talked about earlier, where we are at the end of December. And again, you know, we're in a pretty good space as far as property tax goes. I think that we said that there were a couple of large escrow payments we received in January. So, you know, this January number after taxes were due will be pretty good. I'll keep referring back to this slide as we go through, but I'll talk about sales tax for, well, let's talk about the property tax rate history. We've seen this slide before. This is something we've included in budget presentations. And the We've seen this slide before. This is something we've included in budget presentations in the past. The blue and red lines represent operations, you know, the tax rates we have for operations. The red bars represent the revow year, so every four years we'll have a red bar. We'll have another one in twenty-five, twenty-six. The green section is the four cents we have for fire. So just a note here is our scale starts at fifty-five cents, so it's a little skewed just to get everything on the graph, right? The orange portion is the ten point eight cents that we have for the school debt, and the tiny little purple hat on top is the penny that we added for the park debt. Both of those last two things were the voter approved debt. So just as a note, we haven't had operational increases in the tax rate since fiscal year two thousand six, two thousand seven. And as we talked about before, our price, you know, the price of everything is going up, so those pressures can be a lot. So back at that time, we had a five cent increase in two thousand six and seven for some debt service fire schools' current expense and to help fund EMS three construction. So this is what all of that represents. So I'll go on and talk a bit about sales tax. So sales tax throughout North Carolina, we've seen a lot of flattening this fiscal year. We saw a lot of growth during COVID based on consumer behavior, inflation, that kind of thing. So we, you know, got a great deal of sales tax because of those reasons. So this is a snapshot of just some of the counties, but the totals are statewide. So this is through November. These are the amounts that we would receive in January. So right now, if you look towards the lower right-hand portion, you see that one point two percent. That's the total increase compared to where we were at this point last year for sales tax statewide for North Carolina. We're also seeing a similar situation in Davie. So these are Davie's numbers. You can kind of see the past few years, what, what we've received July through November, and we're kind of flat to, you know, a little bit of a decrease. Whereas you can see at the bottom, we've had a good bit of growth year over year, you know, based on the factors that we've talked about before on those.
Robin, are, are we doing the point of sales tax, or are we doing?
The way that we distribute it is now, refresh my memory. It's either based on per capita or ad valorem. And we're, we're ad valorem. We changed about a decade ago of how, you know, they show us Davie County as a total, including the municipalities. So we changed that allocation about ten years ago or so.
That is for a five-month window comparison to the previous year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, all right.
Because I think, let me go back to the, the total slide. What we've got budgeted is that fourteen point seven million dollar number for the fiscal year. And this represents, I think, through the end of December, really only three months worth, just based on the timing, okay? So we are continuing to keep an eye on it, you know, consumer spending. Anything that happens with inflation or deflation are going to affect our sales tax numbers. So we've traditionally been pretty conservative as far as budgeting for sales tax, you know, because you're kind of looking at well into the future on what you think might happen. So we're kind of, you know, but going to budget a pretty flat number, I think, at this point.
Hopefully, though, it's going to dictate spending habits, dictating less spending, dictating less inflation.
Right. Well, you know, that's the, you know, the flip side. Like I said, you know, we've gotten the benefit or the windfall, so to speak, as far as inflation goes, because, you know, the higher price you pay, the more sales tax you're going to pay on a gooder service. So let's talk about intergovernmental. What intergovernmental represents are federal and state grants, as well as our interlocal agreements that we have in place with our municipalities. Just as a note, some news has come out in the past couple of days. So on Tuesday, the Federal Office of Management and Budget ordered a pause to disbursements from federal grants to ensure that those grants are consistent with the executive orders, but the memo was rescinded yesterday. So we're thinking there still might be implications from that executive order from those federal grants, but we're keeping an eye on it and trying to be informed if there's any sort of change from the cash flow from any of the federal grants. We get a lot of state grants that are really federal grants that flow through the state. So we're just keeping, you know, an eye on things to make sure that, you know, we're going to get the grants that we anticipate getting. As far as charges for services, we're looking at those departmentally as we go through and try to set rates for the new year. And as you know, we've set our fee schedule during the budget process, so those will be presented to you as we see them from the departments as far as fee schedules go. And a little bit about interest. So the Federal Reserve has not decreased rates the way they had anticipated they were doing. So our interest is still, you know, looking pretty good. Our interest rate is within like one percent as of what it was last year. So I think that we'll probably budget pretty consistently with what we have this fiscal year, as far as that goes, so. So up next, I think we have Jamin, who's going to come talk about revow. So just let us know if you have any questions.
One question right quick. What are you projecting our fund balance to be at six thirty twenty-five?
Six thirty twenty-five, I think we'll again add to it, not at the rate that we have been, because again, we don't have those American Rescue Plan dollars. So I think we'll still be on the good side and add to fund balance. My hope is that it gets, you know, above what we've set of twenty-five percent. We're really, really close. You know, if you round up to the whole list, percentage would be there. So, you know, I think that we'll add a million or so, or two.
So that'd be twenty-four, twenty-five, something like that?
Yeah, twenty-five, probably twenty-five, twenty-six, but you know, our denominator as far as expenditures keeps going up. So, you know, you can still add to it, but your percentage can go down, so, because we've seen that in some years.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This morning, my hope is just to kind of give you an update of where things are kind of falling out, and just to show you some statistics, maybe from other counties as well as here in Davie County. As we go along, if you have questions, feel free to, to ask, and we'll see what, get them answered. With that being said, again, like I said, you know, some of the topics, some sales trends, some of the strategies that we've done to try to communicate the revaluation, because, you know, that's kind of the biggest thing on the table as far as the tax office goes these days is the revaluation. And then questions and discussions. The chart that you see here is just a, well, every January, all one hundred counties have to take or send departmental revenue information concerning where their ratios are in a given period. So that's the information that you're seeing here. What department revenue does is they collect all that data, they put it together, and they send it back out to us individually through the counties. It kind of just gives us a chance to compare ourselves as to where other counties are. When you look at it, you know, you see the counties, the, you see the ratios that each county is currently at. You see the CODs. In this case, this is, this is our sample size sales. This not, does not take into consideration that every sale between a period is just a sample size. And then it also shows when was the county's last reappraisal year. So again, it's just information that's shared for us to compare with other counties. And then this is the rest of the counties here. This kind of narrows it down a little bit. This chart here shows, you know, the ten largest counties and how they are comparing to each other as well as to the, the rest of the population. The ones on the right side are the counties that's bordering us here in Davie. So when you look at the numbers, Yatkin, Davidson, Rowan, and Ardell, you can see where their ratios are currently as when this report was done, as compared to ours, which was at this time seventy-three point eight. And so it's easy to tell that, you know, we're pretty much right in the middle or in that ballpark of where everybody else is too. So, a good, like I said, a good tool to use in comparisons. So just a little bit about the real estate market. You know, the last four years, home prices have, have gone, gone up. You know, the market has been a very good market. Trying to throw up some numbers for you to see as far as some, the median home sale values. In twenty-one, it looked two hundred and sixty-nine thousand. In twenty-four, as you can see, about three hundred and eighty-seven thousand for the county, respectively, in the same time period. You know, Koolme, one hundred and fifty, Moxville, two thirty-eight, Bermuda Run, about three ninety-two. Home values are definitely not going down, or at least not anytime soon, so.
Jamin, is that, I mean, just make sure those numbers for the towns, the current?
That was like twenty twenty-four timeframe, but yes, sir, those are specific to the town.
But they're specific to the town and as relates to the three hundred and eighty-seven median overall price?
Yes, sir. The three eighty-seven is kind of the countywide, yep, yep. So here are the final numbers as of yesterday afternoon. The left side again is what we report to DOR, because like I said, DOR is just, all they want to know is the difference between last reevaluation and the current reevaluation. So countywide is fifty-one point oh seven, and then Koolme is the seventy, well, right at seventy-five, Moxville sixty-one point three five, and Bermuda Run right at forty-two. The twenty twenty-four data is, you know, as a taxpayer, I understand the twenty twenty-one reappraisal numbers, but I want to know the difference between last year and this year. So the twenty, the right side kind of correlates that percent increase between twenty-four and twenty-five. That's why they're a little bit lower.
Jamin, does that equalize for like the growth of what's come onboard during that time? A lot of that's thirty-nine instead of fifty-one when you compare it back?
Yeah, that take, you know, the, the numbers on the left, I mean, that includes the, the growth, maybe new businesses or whatever. The twenty-four is just the time period of that one year. If there was maybe one or two businesses, it would be accounted for, but that's really just the, the natural growth there. Any questions with the number?
Just to be clear, that's commercial and residential?
Yes, sir. Now, when you look at those numbers, you may gasp without a choice of better words. So the next couple of slides, I actually wanted to show you where these numbers are kind of coming from. Again, you're going to see the dates that reflect one revow period to another, so that's why these dates are a little older. So Koolme being the highest increase, I actually found a couple of houses just to show this location here. You know, back in the last revow, or revaluation period, it sold for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. This revaluation period, it sold for two twenty-five. That's about an eighty percent increase. And as you can see, it's probably, you know, there's really no major updates that appears to be added to the, to the home. There's another one in Koolme area. Back in twenty twenty, it sold for seventy-eight thousand. In twenty-three, it sold for a hundred and fifty thousand, so about a ninety-two percent. So the numbers that I was referencing earlier, this kind of supports that data. Moxville, twenty seventeen, ninety thousand, just a couple of years ago, a hundred and forty-five thousand. And again, it, you know, it's just a simple home. There's nothing extravagant about it. And then finally, one from Bermuda Run, twenty twenty, you know, sold for two hundred and thirty-five thousand. Couple of years ago, three hundred and seventy-five thousand. So the market, as I said earlier, is doing very well. This is about a seven percent increase. So these four slides kind of support, you know, the numbers that we're, we're showing. This was just a breakdown statistically, you know, of the market. The time period is January of twenty-four to December of twenty-four. What I tried to do is break it down in, in groups, you know, home values below a hundred thousand and then other ranges as you go down. So as you can see, at the end of twenty twenty-four, our sales ratio is the main thing that I wanted to, to bring your attention to. You know, when you see point six-two, point five-nine, you know, those numbers, if you think about that in revenue, North Carolina is a hundred percent of market state, right? So for every dollar of the market, you're only getting sixty-two cents if we don't do something. So that's why we have revows every four years to reset to the market. So right now, if we had not made any changes, you know, the summary says for every dollar of revenue that's available, we're only getting three, sixty-three cents, you know, so we're kind of losing out. So this was the snapshot before we made any changes to the system. And then this is the snapshot after. It's the same time period. This slide incorporates the changes that we have made. And as you can see, your sales ratios are now one point oh, which means for every dollar of revenue available, you're getting that dollar. And that's what we'll be turning in. Matter of fact, I think we just sent the file to Department of Revenue for last year's numbers, so. As far as kind of the calendar goes, just wanted to update you where we're at. You know, November the fourth, we adopted the schedule of values. That was complete. February fifth, we have, our hopes is to get the notices mailed out, just to kind of give you, since this slide took place, we updated the file this morning to our printer. So they now have the notice file. They'll go through, create the notices, send us a proof. And if everything looks good, we'll approve it, and they'll be ready to go for next Wednesday. February fifth, which actually may, we're working on that now to get the appeals module open online. So if someone wants to appeal their value, this is just a portal they can use. April first is when the Board of Equalization and Review convenes, and April twenty-eighth is when it will adjourn. April twenty-eighth is the last day that an appeal can be accepted. Anything after that is considered untimely, and the homeowner or the business owner or whoever has to justify why it's late. So that is, that is a, a key date to remember. Appealing your value, you know, with the numbers that we've seen, this is a tool that, you know, taxpayers have that they can use, you know? If they don't agree with their value, they are more than welcome to appeal. How does someone appeal? The notice that you will receive actually doubles as the appeal form. So all we ask is that you fill out all the requested information. You can mail it in, you can bring it in personally, you can email it as an attachment, you know, whatever, just make sure it gets to us. Or, as I just said, we have the online appeal portal, okay, that you can go through. If you lose or misplace your notice, no problem. We've got one online on the website that you can print off and mail in if you'd rather just do it that way, so. One of the other things that I wanted to bring, or we've tried to promote is, you know, with the increases like they are, you know, there may be some other options, you know? If, if you're a landowner, you know, you have a large tract of land, you know, we have programs that can help you defer some of those taxes. We have exemption programs, you know, depending on your age, your income. You can actually get some of the, the taxes exempted. So we've tried to promote that and educate people as they come in and just talk. That information is also on the, the website. You just fill in a, fill out an application. We'll see what happens. There are some stipulations, you know, age, income, those type of things. But it may be a way to help taxpayers, you know, as these increases. But it may be a way to help taxpayers, you know, as these increases are coming, so. Some of the things that we've tried to communicate, you know, anytime somebody comes into the office, you know, we've got flyers and brochures across the counter. You know, we've done the presentations to the city councils or the town boards. They have sent, you know, incorporated to their websites and their social medias. And then with the, the change of notice or the value changes, we're actually going to send the brochure out again. We sent it out last year with the taxes, going to send it out a second time with notices. And we're actually thinking about sending it out a third time with this year's billing cycle. So that will be three times that we'll get the brochures into the citizens' hands. Hopefully, they read it.
Do those brochures explain that some people could qualify for those exemptions?
I can't remember if those programs are mentioned, I would have to double check that. But it does have our contact information. But I'll, I'll look at that and see.
That might be because some people might not be aware.
True that, true.
And they may not, some, you know, some people just don't come and ask. And we, we encourage them to, but sometimes they just don't. So that might be something good to put in there.
Yes, ma'am. And then lastly, you know, something that comes around with every revale is an opportunity that's what's called revenue neutral, okay? Revenue neutral is basically figuring out what a levy rate for today equals yesterday's levy rate, if that makes sense. So when you look at this information, you know, the, the information to the left is the property values in sequential order of the last few years, okay? The center information is the dollar change for those differences of values. And then the third, which is the far right, is the percent of change for those same amounts or values. So when you go through this and you do the mathematics, it's telling us that revenue neutral as of today would roughly be point five eight one four, okay? So if you add in the four cents fire tax, it's a point six-two-one-four, which is about a difference of fifteen and a half or fifteen point six cents between yesterday and today, so. Now, the one thing is, is disclaimer-wise, I have to make sure I say this. This data does not have the appeals data. We still have to go through the appeal cycle, which is going to be the next couple of months.
Fifteen, a fifteen cent equivalents?
That's right, right?
Just on that chart, not to get into weeds, but how did personal property decrease by eighty-eight million?
Personal property is revalued every year, it's not a four-year cycle. So a business that may be here today is not here tomorrow, so.
I understand how, I understand how it works, you follow it every year and that's the number. You've got your own depreciating scale that's embedded in that. But we've added, I'm just thinking globally, we've, we've added a whole lot of businesses with a lot of personal property. So I'm just, not saying that's not right, I'm just, that doesn't, off the cuff, doesn't.
Just doesn't compute.
No, it doesn't.
I'd have to go back and see, or go into my system to find out the exacts of it. But those numbers do come straight out of our system as far as reporting concerns.
So do you have any explanation that sticks out in your mind for that?
Can y'all remember in our meeting, that discussion? I know that. I do not, sir. Yeah, that's why I said they come straight off the scrolls, I just can't remember. I would have to dig a little deeper into it.
Okay, we don't need to get.
No, that's fine. I thought maybe there was a quick one that would say this explains.
Right.
But I will say this, this is fifteen cent, I know it sounds a lot like, we've run the numbers from the twenty-three and the twenty-four revaluation across the state. And we are right smack in line with most of the counties that have recently gone through revaluation. We saw some as high as twenty-five cent, some as low as seven or eight cent. Now, again, this is not agreed upon, voted upon property taxes. It's just if we, if we ran the numbers today, this is what would compute out for revenue neutral.
Have you, did the arithmetic to see what one cent based on the new projected valuation is?
I have not, sir, send your, Robin, have you?
So you were asking about the value of a penny?
Yeah.
It's about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now.
Thank you.
Is that your last slide, Jamie?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a que, I have a cou, a couple of questions. First question is, do you have any idea how many? This, this really concerns me and I, I'll, I'll get to why it does in terms of the context of this question. How many counties in North Carolina are at eight years versus four years?
DOR, for the last several years, have really pushed to the four-year cycle. But there are still, I would guess somewhere between five and ten counties.
That are at eight years?
That still are eight years.
Okay, the, and the reason, the re, that, that, you know, we're in this for the taxpayers not to, 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 we, last year, and, and we had to get back to our twenty-five percent, I get it. But last year, we put six million dollars in fund balance. You're telling Terry that we estimate approximately a million in fund balance, going into fund balance this year, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the hard work you all have done. But fifteen, fifteen cent equivalents is, is tough. So I, I really honestly think we should consider it every eight years. This, this hit on the taxpayers every four years can, can be tough. I will tell you, I've had two phone calls in the last month and it, it's kind of, it, it's a small thing in the broader context, but I had two people call me about the tax bills they got on their vehicles. Actually, I had three. The, they had been, for instance, I had a guy who had a, a, a truck that had been valued for five hundred dollars for the last five years. This tax bill he got, it was valued at six thousand dollars. I had another gentleman up in the Sheffield community that his vehicle had been valued eight hundred dollars. Last four or five bill, tax bills he got. This year, it was eight thousand dollars. And now you guys were very kind and you reduced them for him, but you still reduced them to an exponent of about four or five times of what they had been billed in, in the past. So brief question is, why? Why are we seeing that level of increase on those vehicles? And I know this is a small component here, but to them, it's big. And can you, can you answer that question? Because I know there, there are probably a multiple of folks who did not call us.
Right. Yeah, I'll, I'll try to answer it the best I can. You know, I think, one key point of information that you just mentioned was those values had not changed in multiple years, right? So what happens is, you know, when the pandemic hit and ever since that time, the demand for used vehicles has just skyrocketed. So that demand for those used vehicles has caused values to increase. And unfortunately, you know, when we look at the books or at the, the brochures that we use, you know, three, four, five thousand dollars is kind of the bottom line that these, these manuals are telling us to increase to.
Well, the, the ninety-year-old gentleman that called me last night, he indicated it's a seventy-four pickup that has rust on it, that he bar, that he barely ever uses. And though you were very nice to him, you, you, you went from six times what it had been valued to, down to double what it had been valued to. But there, uh, uh, and, and I know you've heard this a million times. If you can sell it for that, come put a for sale sign on it. And I, unfortunately, I have to agree with him. I just don't necessarily get it. And what, what worries me about the revale questions we're getting ready to get on property is we're going to get a lot of those same questions. And I, I understand you're doing your job. But I think if we're going to see this kind of increase every four years, and maybe you can send us some data of like the last five revales and what the percentages and dollar figures look like, we can kind of come to rest in terms with that. But otherwise, I think we have to, we have to really look at how often do we want to hit the taxpayers? And Robin, I agree with you, we haven't had an operational tax increase, but we do have fundamentally a tax increase every four years when we revale. Not on the rate, but on the dollar. There's not a soul out there who would tell me my taxes haven't gone up in twelve years. And I get we've kept the tax rate, other than the school, consistent. But this is, and if, this does have an effect on, on people's pocketbooks. And people voluntarily buy Girl Scout cookies. They don't voluntarily pay their taxes. And that, it's a little bit, a little bit, a little bit different. So I just say that to the commissioners and not as, not to you. I do, I do fundamental, fundamentally have a problem with these, these vehicle taxes going through the roof like they are. But, but I, I think we have to look at, you know, I'd like to see the data over the, maybe the course of ten, three or four revales and what the fi, dollar figures look like or percentages. And then I think we have to, I think we have to really take a close look at this because this, Davie County is a blessed county, but there are people in Davie County that are not necessarily as blessed as others. And these, these massive tax increases are, I think, we just have to pay close attention to it.
And I'll tell you, I, the, the, the person who had the five hundred dollar truck that still having to pay for it like it's a three thousand dollar truck, they are a much kinder person than I, because I would still not be happy with that. When a vehicle is just used for somebody to drive around in their cow pasture and use as a, on, as a farm truck and they're not going to sell it, it's not going to be sold for three thousand dollars if, if anybody tries to sell it. And I just, I think we need to be very fair about that type of thing.
I would say that the personal property concerns me. But in the context of the real estate, the value is what it is. And I mean, I want the value to stay what it is. I think then it becomes what you do with regard to setting the rate. And my only other assumption, that's not a rocket science to figure this out, is that, my guess is that this is like, I don't know if fluke's the right word, but a really, the COVID thing along with the value thing, along with all the inflation and money that was handed out, I can't imagine we're going to find anything if we go back eight years or in four-year increments or anything else that's going to mirror what we're having right now.
Yeah, I think this one, this revaluation, for whatever reasons, is unique, you know? And it's not just here in Davie County, other counties are seeing high double-digit increases. Forsyth County is over fifty percent. Cooperris County, I think they did theirs in twenty-four, they were like sixty-something percent. So these numbers, it's not just isolated here, unfortunately, it's across the whole state.
Oh, didn't we have one, sorry, didn't we have one series at some point where, it seems like to me, we had a thing back during the Great Recession where my property went, my property value went down.
Right.
Pretty, you know, fairly significantly, so I know that has happened.
It might have been a timing of the revale and, because I was actually getting ready to give a situation, this is a real-life situation. One of the other counties that I, I had the chance to work for, I started in two thousand and eleven, right? So everybody knows what happened in that oh-eight, oh-nine, oh-ten timeframe. That's when the market kind of tanked. Where their prior revale was two thousand and seven, when it was peak season. So for eight years, taxpayers had to pay on that two thousand and seven rate or scenario, you know, and one year later, it tanked. So, and, but we didn't revale until two thousand and fifteen, so.
Our, our revale around that time did not go down.
Right.
Our total revale did not go down, I can assure you of that. We haven't, it may, and it may have been the timing, but we haven't had defluxation in valuations in terms of taxing folks. Maybe individual situations, but not in general.
And that's what, you know, that's what citizens will see here. You know, when you, when you look at that thirty-nine percent, that's just a median. So some may be higher and some actually may go down because, you know, like I said, that, that thirty-nine percent roughly is the median of both, both extremes.
Yeah, ours actually, our tax bill went down briefly, but I think that's probably because we had an older home and the status of the way the market pressures were at that time.
Good questions.
Just for my own edification, the, the real property, that's localized. Call the work your staff did, that's very localized. But the motor vehicles, that's a statewide issue.
It.
Is there any localization embedded in that?
DOR, I say DOR, um, DOR is involved with that, but we can set those values, I believe, in-house. So that is something that I'm, I'm more than welcome or willing to look into and see what can and can't be done with it.
Can we go back and talk about four years versus eight years? So I'm not sure if we would wait eight years if that would help us, because I remember that by going back through my notes from four years ago, that the revenue neutral rate changed about three cents. So if we would have, you know, say we skipped that one and had it done previously, you know, theoretically, what we would be looking at is more like an eighteen, nineteen cent. I think that what we're seeing is just the sticker shock of home values in the market right now. So, you know, if we were to go back to an eight-year cycle again, you know, we could be in a place where home values did go down and it would take us eight years to be able to make the market adjustment.
But they would get the sticker shock every eight years, not every four years. I get what you're saying, but.
You know, when you're doing it every four years, you're, you know, adjusting to the market every four years. Theoretically, if it's a steady sort of increase, like you would see during normal times, these are not, you know, this is not a normal time, right? So, you know, you would get that adjustment every four years.
But in this case, if we'd had a eight-year, wouldn't it have been hell of a sticker shock?
Yeah, I would think it would be more theoretically. So say we skipped the last one, which was about three pennies. You know, theoretically, you would see a difference of eighteen or nineteen cents at this point.
And back in two thousand and fourteen, I think we actually did lose value at that point because I'm looking back at our historical tax rates. We went from fifty-eight cent to sixty-two cent, and that was a reval year. I believe that was the year that we did an interim budget because everything, we were trying to figure out what we were going to do. And we actually went to a revenue neutral, which was a four cent increase.
And, and again, this is, this is January thirtieth figure. On the same list here that I'm looking at, that has the twenty-three and twenty-four counties that went through evaluation, we listed what they put as revenue neutral and then what they ultimately adopted. And you will see a wide range, wide swing of what they actually adopted versus their revenue neutral. So there were counties that had a ten-cent revenue neutral, but only changed their tax rate two cents. And that's the part that we're working through this spring as we look at the remainder of the budget process. But we figured that this would be a question and we wanted you to have the understanding of where we're starting this process with. We're starting at eight point five billion, knowing that we're going to have appeals on day one. And that's going to dramatically affect what that number comes down to before we finish putting all this budget together.
Only other comment is, I don't want to see us feel pressured to dumb down the real property. Personal property is a whole different animal, but the value's what the value needs to be. You know, not any of this rhetoric about I can't sell it for that unless it's real property that they're able to demonstrate that, you know, you've got it appraised in correctly because of some extenuating factors that you go in there and look at it. But just because I go out and tell you my back fifteen acres I bought, ain't nobody gonna pay that for it. Well, that don't, that doesn't matter because I bet you I can find somebody that'll pay that for it.
Good questions.
But just to put this to real life, and I understand it's January thirtieth, but we're talking about to the top line, somewhere between thirteen and fourteen million dollars. If we didn't change the tax rate, which I'm pretty sure, we gotta talk about that, but you know, um. Is that, is that about what you get? Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, a lot of work, appreciate it.
And thank y'all for being so kind to these people that are upset.
Well, yes ma'am. Anytime we can make things right, that's what we're, we're apt to do, so.
So um, next on our agenda is to talk about the uh, any direct state appropriations that we may want to seek from the General Assembly. Um, as you guys know, going into this spring, they're going into their long session when they're going to be formulating their budget for the next fiscal year. Um, wanted to start real quick with the projects that they approved in the last state budget. Uh, this was a list that got us to the five point seven million that was included in the budget. Um, uh, happy to report that a lot of these projects are either uh, completed or in the works right now. Um, so we are taking full advantage. Um, I was just at the park yesterday, um, and the folks were out there putting up the new lights. Uh, I think everybody in here is well aware, if you are in this building, that with the courthouse renovation going on. Um, some of the uh, struggles that we've had to deal with, uh, with helping them out through that project. So um, wanted to show you the list that we presented last year at the retreat. Um, and not necessarily um, asking for ups or downs right this second. But obviously, uh, I would assume that we'd want to take a lot of these same projects, if not all the same projects, and at least start our. Twenty twenty-five list for where we left off last year. Um, I did go ahead and remove the Dutchman Creek project because we're working on that. Um, I included the Cherry Street Building, I know that's uh, not directly generated from you all. But you all have been involved in those conversations with Representative Howard on that project. And then ultimately speaking, um, if you think of any other projects. Um, as we gonna see conversations today from Brad and from Johnny as they come up and talk about our capital needs. Um, there may be also some capital coming from the sheriff or EMS today too, that we may want to look at as potential asking our state folks. We have not gotten directly, um, at least from the County Commissioner Association. That there is gonna be as much appetite for direct state funds compared to what we've seen in the past. Uh, you know, ob- obviously that can change as they go into session more, they're just really starting back right now. But I definitely think we need to be prepared to have a list ready to go. Um, because if there's any opportunity for us to get that funding, I hate for us to miss out on it. You probably know that Representative Howard again is the senior chair for the Finance Committee. Um, and I know uh, she has great relationships with the Appropriations Committee Chair, so, um, and the new Speaker of the House. Um, I know she has a great relationship with him, so I think those are all things that, you know, it'd be great for her to have in her back pocket. If any projects that may come from Davie County. So again, uh, if we, if you want to discuss anything today, we can, but obviously moving forward. Uh, we probably need to shoot for a date, probably the first of April, um, to get something formally sent over. Any questions?
Well, just. Point of order, we are gonna have an opportunity to discuss whatever at the end.
Right, yeah.
Okay, all right.
This is kind of what I just, you know, so.
Good morning. I talked to you briefly about some HR items. The first one is to talk about is a Cross Blue Shield that we've had since July two thousand and fifteen. We've been self insured with them since that timeframe. The numbers that we have seen of the insured has gone up as the years have gone by. Just give you a little comparison, when we started in two thousand and fifteen, we were covering three hundred and six employees. And at this point, we're up to three hundred and seventy-seven employees. We've had the same provider and same benefits since two thousand and fifteen. We're preliminarily anticipating a twelve percent increase to this, to our current rates. We will not know that information for sure until we get to about the end of March. This is just a brief history of the percentage increases that we've had over the years. We had four years in a row where we didn't have any increases to our insurance. That was prior to two thousand and nineteen, we had two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen through twenty twenty-one of no increases at all to our health insurance.
You're talking about no insurance period, not just no increase to our, to our employees, right?
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you mean.
Do you, did we have an increase for the body as a whole or just there was no increase for the employee?
The rates themselves stayed steady.
That's what I, okay.
Right, they stayed steady for those four years and, and each of those years listed up there, that has the percentage that had increased. And at this point, we're anticipating hopefully at worst a twelve percent increase. Our dental insurance is also self insured and has been with the same dental insurance company since July two thousand and fifteen. The numbers are basically the same there as well. The numbers are a little bit higher, I, I thought I corrected this slide, but apparently I didn't. The numbers are higher with the average number of employees because people can opt out of our health insurance. The dental is, is a given, just like divisions, it's a given. And the projected increase for that one is also, is um, five percent. Also wanted to mention with our health insurance, when employees exit who are, when employees exit the county. We offer to them an exit interview survey and one of the questions is asking them what they think about our health benefits. And the vast majority of them appreciate the benefits that we do offer to our employees. Just to give you some brief information about what we've achieved in Human Resources. From over the twenty twenty-four, we had over thirteen hundred applications for employment in comparison to twenty twenty-three. We had, where we had six hundred and forty-nine different applications for employment. We onboarded over a hundred new employees compared to eighty-eight in twenty twenty-three. This is not fiscal year, this is actual calendar year. Offboarded ninety-three employees, unfortunately, that was down in twenty twenty-three to seventy-six. We also conduct monthly onboarding sessions for full-time employees. Conducted supervisor training for supervisors, we trained twenty, twenty-one different supervisors. And we've also had some various different offerings for our employees, we have an annual health fair. We offer vouchers at two different times a year for restaurants and ice cream. We had the annual service, years of service celebration as well as the annual holiday celebration. And just want to briefly mention, I will be requesting in addition to our staff as our offerings have increased. We're, we're trying to do more, obviously like everybody else with, with less, we're trying to do more and more each year. We just like a little bit of help if we could have it. Questions, comments?
Excuse me. What types of things would you, what types of things do you mean that you need to do more that would require you to have a new employee?
Would like to have better recruitment efforts. I try and squeeze that in, you know, with Indeed and the various different platforms, try and do a better job with um, advertising. Try and get out to the various fairs that the different entities offer, such as the um, community college offers something, the schools offer something. We, we try and get out to those things. But sometimes it's, it's pretty impossible. So just helping out with some of the little projects that Samantha and I cannot get to. We'd love to have somebody help out with some of those other things that we can get out and do those more visible things for employees. And, and like I said, the recruiting.
Anything else? Briefly, the, the um, we did good on our um, self insured program as far as the rate increases. But what is driving this twelve percent? Is it, or do you know, is it? Claims, okay, that's what I assumed, but, okay.
Unfortunately, people continue to be sick, unfortunately, and, and the RX. That always has a huge impact on our increases, even though we offer the generics, generics through foster drug. All of those big cost prescriptions, that drives up the cost.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not taking this towards HSA because, you know, it's, it's a long ongoing process if we did that. But is there any programs that our insurance can help us with? That would possibly help us with rates or help us incentive wise with. Instead of having maybe the punitive measures, the measures like I've seen with my wife's insurance. Like the X amount of steps and all these things that encourage people. And I know you can't twist their arm to do it, but some type of incentives to do that because those. What I've seen it helps, it just inherently helps if people walk more, do whatever more. And I just thought I'd throw that out there. And I'm not suggesting a different type of insurance, just if there's anything we could do to encourage that.
Cross does offer some incentives through their website and if people sign up online, they, they definitely offer some different incentives that way. We also encourage our employees to get a health risk assessment. And if they do that, they do get some incentive money for that as well. And if they meet certain measures, they get some incentive money for that as well.
I just didn't know if we could look at any kind of incentives for healthy behaviors like. X amount of steps per day, X amount of steps per week, anything like that.
We can definitely look into that in conjunction with our wellness clinic for sure.
Okay, anything else?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'm gonna talk to you about the other part of personnel and HR, it's always a big component of the budget. And what I really wanted to do today was give you guys a snapshot of what we look at when we're trying to determine. What figures to aim for when we're putting our budget together. Um, so I'm calling this the working client, working market climate. And what we want to look at is different tools to help us to come to a point of where we want to be, what we want to aim for, what we want to shoot for. And looking at our salaries. Um, primarily the consumer market index, consumer price index. Uh, last year, when we did our workshop, um, I introduced the idea of taking four entry level positions within our uh, county. Because those are the type of positions that are entry level and pretty uniform across every county. And seeing what they're charging or what they're paying their employees uh, is entry level to see where we match up. And then finally, uh, as we're part of the Winston Salem Metropolitan Service uh, area. Uh, what does the Bureau of Statistics look at in terms of a living wage? And how do we compare against that? So with the consumer price index, uh, this is probably the easiest comparison to look at. They report this out every month and the January fifteenth report came out at two point nine percent. Um, this factors in several um, items, uh, things you bought at the grocery store, gas. Um, different types to see what inflationary rates are looking at. Um, so right now, in January, two point nine percent. That is potentially one of the tools that we use to help us evaluate again where our salaries are stacking up. Uh, against our other counties and other industries, uh, to tell you the truth, depending on how the economy is going. Uh, last year, when we had our workshop, I focused heavily on these four positions. Our social worker one, telecommunicator, our basic EMT and our income maintenance caseworker ones. Uh, these are positions that you could pretty much walk into any county, they're gonna have a very similar job description, very similar to job functions. Uh, they're also most of the time entry level, so what you pay these people affects everybody up through the department. And I wanted to see again, how do we stack up against our comparable and neighboring counties? When we look at these four positions. Um, just like us, um, as we change, they change, so we want to remain competitive in our job market. Um, I feel very confident that when we get people into Davie County, we'll do a great job of keeping them. Um, if you look at our numbers, uh, people who have been here for a certain number of years, they stay. And then if you get towards the very end, most of those employees are gonna stick around because we have great post employment, post retirement benefits. But I'm also looking at how do I attract the best and brightest who don't work for us? Um, you know, one of the things, best applicants have options. We recently went through, or currently going through, uh, some, some high position vacancies right now. And what we're finding is if we don't move quickly, the good people are getting snatched up. So we want to make sure that we're competitive, we've changed up some of our recruitment tactics to make sure that we're out there in the market so that they see us. Um, but obviously for a lot of people, salary is a big factor. Um, so what you have in your binder, uh, and I'm gonna do this for all four positions, but for a social worker one, for example. As you can see on the right hand side, you can see what our starting salary it was in twenty twenty-four. And what it is currently in this fiscal year based on the changes that we made last budget. And then you'll see each county, uh, some of these counties are neighboring counties and some of these counties are very similar to us in size. And uh, they're rural counties as well, so I thought they would be, they're, they're probably not, we're probably not gonna lose anybody to Lenore County. Just to be honest, unless they live in eastern North Carolina, but Lenore County is very similar to us. We may not lose anybody to Alexander County, but it's another county comparable to us in size and population. So what you'll see is the salaries that they uh, have for their entry level social worker one in twenty-four and in twenty-five. Uh, for example, Alexander County, we are eighteen point six percent better. Um, in twenty twenty-four, and then if you look in twenty twenty-five, we actually improved to twenty-four point forty-five percent better. So from an analytical standpoint, what I want to see is the counties that we're doing better, that we stay better. And then for example, Forsyth County, probably not the greatest example, but it is a county that we compete with. We were twenty-one percent behind Forsyth County in entry level social worker ones. You can actually see that in this fiscal year, we closed that gap. Uh, being realistic, I don't think we'll ever close the gap completely. But definitely what we want to make sure is that we're being competitive. Um, I'm pretty sure Forsyth County is, they're going through revaluation right now as well. They're having some of the same struggles we're having, but we don't want to see that gap get larger when it comes to competing. Um, a social worker, that's a college degree position. Uh, you come out of college, if you live in Forsyth County and you had the option, I personally, I think it's probably harder to work there than here. Uh, by a whole lot, you probably earned that additional percent. But you know, i- if you're coming straight out of school and you're looking at Davie County versus Forsyth. Or if you're willing to drive to Rowan or Davison, uh, Stokes, uh, probably be, well, we're doing much better than Stokes and Surrey and, and that standpoint. And Yakon doesn't have social worker ones, uh, they start um, a social worker two, so that's why I didn't include them on this particular list. But I'm not gonna go through each one of these, but I just wanted you to understand if you go back and look through it, the rationale. Those that were ahead, we want to stay ahead. And those that we are uh, behind, the only one I'll really point out is Rowan County. In this sense, we were nine point eight percent behind them, uh, and we failed a fifteen percent behind based on what they did as part of their budget. You'll see similar with telecommunications. Again, you can see where our salaries are over to the right and you can see where uh, our uh, competing and comparable counties are. So again, and there are some areas where we did close those gaps. So again, and there are some areas where we did close those gaps, counties that we were behind. And then counties that we were ahead, we continue to be ahead of. Same with EMT basics. And this is, this is probably one of the most, of all of these, probably one of the most competitive out there. And again, you know, we just made the move with our shift supervisors. May not necessarily affect the EMT basics, but at least it puts us more on a competitive level with our other counties, because we were the only county not still doing that. But again, where we want to close the gap, I mean, even in Yackin County, we did close that gap. We were nearly 13% behind to where we're 7.3% behind them in starting pay for entry level. So still got some work to be done in some of these. But these are the kind of things that we look at. And then finally, with the income maintenance worker, caseworker one, as you can see in almost every case, except in the bigger counties, we did significantly better and are continuing to do better from that particular side. Question? Yep.
My question, and anybody can answer on this, this is not a loaded question. How do we find ourselves so relatively good in a couple of these categories? When I'm, and when you take out the Iredels and Rowans and Forsyths of the world, but find ourself, is there a reason we find ourselves lacking in the basic EMT to the degree that we were when I look at some of those negatives with counties that we were a good bit higher than on these other positions?
Yeah, I, I can't answer that question specifically, other than the fact that that's just the particular position. And as, you know, as, as we make changes, they make changes. And if their changes were significantly better, and it was across the board, you're going to see this type of discrepancy. I have seen counties that literally have taken certain departments or certain jobs and said, we're just going to automatically increase the starting pay for this particular area. Public safety generally does get looked at a little bit harder and careful compared to Health and Human Services. So that could be part of the reason.
Looks like there's, looks like there's some good reason. I just want to make sure we're on an apples to apples comparison, and there's not some attribute that they're requiring that we don't require that explains it. Or if it's, you know, if it's, if it's apples to apples, it looks like something needs to be done. So I just want to know.
Yeah, I would probably say this is as close as apple, apples to apples that you're going to get. I mean, and, I mean, I, to, to your, to your comment, there's something needs to be done. I think that's probably what, why we're looking at it. I mean, and, and a lot of counties, you know, we taught position grades a lot when we talked to you all. Interesting, you know, in some counties, your EMT, your telecommunicator, your social worker one are all in the same grade. And that's why you see those same numbers across the different counties. Whereas we may not have it in the same grade from entry level that they consider it. Could be part of the reason why it's just different.
Well, and I've said this before, but, so we are showing that our telecommunicator and our EMT basic are the same starting pay. But a telecommunicator can start a job with zero training, an EMT basic cannot. They have to have their certification. So I, I don't agree, I still don't agree with that. And of course, obviously, we can't match the pay of someone like Forsyth County. However, it is a little concerning to me that Yadkin County starts more for an EMT, because I would think, Joseph, are you still here? I would think our call volume is higher than theirs, wouldn't you? Okay. So that one, that, I mean, I, I, it concerns me we're less than Yadkin, but it would be ridiculous to think we could match Forsyth and Iredel, so.
And again, this is just a tool that we use to, I mean, to your point, we need to know that, that we're behind them. And what can we do within the means of what we can afford? But I will, I'll also echo this, and you guys have heard me say this. If I increase that EMT, then I got to increase the paramedic, the field off, training officer, the assistant supervisor supervisor as well, because those positions are all career ladder stepping stone. The way they fit within our position grades, we, we really don't want employees on each other's heels. And that's something that we have been looking at internally. Just, again, just to give you a behind the scenes snapshot, when we look at an EMT position, when you look at that at an hourly rate, you know, we're comparing that hourly rate to some of our other employees, because you're right, you cannot just come off the street and be an EMT. You got to come with that certain amount of, of knowledge and skill and, and school. So, you know, how do we stack up our other entry level positions that may not require that? Is what we're looking at as well. And then also just the market. I mean, the market dictates a lot. I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not going to necessarily pick on our folks in the sheriff's office. But the sheriff will tell you, they have to have basic law enforcement training, which may not be as, as different type of training than some of our other departments. But his market is so much different at a starting level, comparatively speaking. You know, a lot of law enforcement, what a basic law enforcement, you start making more than a teacher with a four-year degree. So that's just the market. Doesn't mean that we have to necessarily hit the market or let the market dictate to us what we want. But again, as a tool for us to evaluate how to look at budget next year is how we look at it. So you're, you're exactly right. I mean, doesn't mean a telecommunicator and an EMT basic have to be on the same grade.
Do, does anybody know, just right off the cuff, what are we starting law enforcement officers at that hadn't been to school yet? Because JD, aren't you sending some to school?
Well, yeah, we, I've worked with the human resources and finance. And so what we did for recruitment purposes now, since they've changed the rules on us, is we've created a couple of positions that don't really count against my position code. We just take a, if I have an empty deputy position, we will take the funding for that position and fund a recruit position at a lower pay level until they graduate from school. And then that funding is there for me to go ahead and move them to the deputy position. So I typically am paying them anywhere from five to six to seven thousand dollars, somewhere in there. I don't remember the exact number, less than what a brand new deputy would start while they're in.
While they're in school.
And another thing I'll, I'll point out, just because I have the other counties on here. I know Rowan County and I know Iredel County also, in terms of recruitment, do signing bonuses. That's something that we traditionally have not done here in Davie County. Doesn't mean that we can't do it. It just means that if we do it, we have to roll it out in a certain manner, because obviously, everybody working here today didn't get a signing bonus. But if we hire somebody to do the same job tomorrow, that can kind of, in a way, disrupt the apple cart. But it seems to be working in Rowan. I talked to their manager just this week. And, and I know Iredel's done it for quite a bit of time. And I think Iredel does not do it across the board. It's certain positions, I guess, ones that they have deemed to be the most difficult ones for them to feel, they're offering those type of bonuses. But those are the type of things that we've talking about, and we haven't got to the point yet that we have enough that we're ready to bring that forward. But those are the type of things, when we go out there and look at the other counties to see what they're offering as a recruitment tool on top of salary, that we have to be competitive with.
So how many vacancies are we looking at right now?
Vacancies right now, I would not know that number.
I would say we're between 15 and 20 right now, kind of about what we've been averaging.
Mostly where?
They end up being the same place, DMS, social workers, communication, health communicator, education, public building, the library.
Like to make one counterpoint on the, when we, I'm all for as much scale integrity as practically possible. But when you've got an inflationary environment and a demand environment that we have, you've got to sometimes understand there's going to be some elements of salary compression that cannot be avoided, because, you know, you look back at what people that left positions a few years ago are making, and now what they're, the people are making that's in that same position, just that in and of itself. Look at the North Carolina salary schedule for teachers. And it's, I know teachers get frustrated, but it's, you've got to attract somebody for those beginning positions. So you got to strike a balance, because you can't just take the $30,000 employee and escalate it all the way up the scale to affect the $200,000 employee. My wife's been a nurse for 30 some years, and she knows what salary compression looks like. Because when they need to hire a nurse, it doesn't matter how gifted my wife is. It doesn't matter if she's the nurse supervisor, and now she's in the insurance business with it. People get hired, and they get hired making fairly close to what she makes within reason. So, you know, we need to drop this notion that there's not going to be some salary compression, because it's a reality.
Brian, just curiosity question. Why is Halifax County on your slide there?
Population. And then when we look, our third way of looking at salaries across the, the region is the metropolitan statistical area. They call it the Winston-Salem one, but it's us, Yackin, Forsyth, Davie, and Stokes Counties. And we're all part of the larger Greensboro-Winston-Hi Point combined statistical area. And within this grouping, it allows us another opportunity to look across the board. Now unfortunately, for us, from a geographical standpoint, does not include Rowan and Iredel. They're part of a different group. But when we look at this group, one of the things that being in this group allows us to do is look at a living wage calculator that compares what a living wage will have to be, or can be, or determined to be for an individual, based on the number of children that they have and the number of adults that are working. So for our metropolitan area, as you can see, for example, one adult with zero children, they determine the living wage to be 1990 an hour. They also give you the poverty wage as well. And then across the board, it gives you two adults and one working adult, or two adults and both working. You know, and I, what I wanted to see from an internal standpoint, and again, well, on a side note, this is based on a 2080-hour employee. And we have a combination of 1950 employees and 2080 employees. But I wanted to see, where does Davie County stack up on this living wage calculator? And I think this kind of goes back to the question Commissioner Shof asked Mr. Wallace about their minimum pay. Now, on our scale, we actually have grades that go below a grade 63, but we do not have any employees in those grades. So our lowest grade that we actually have an employee working in is a grade 63, which is 33,922 to 55,065, 67. So as you can see from a minimum, if they're a 37 and a half hour employee or a 40 hour employee, you can see where our lowest paid entry level. Doesn't mean we have somebody making this, but if somebody started today at the entry level, you can see where they would fall on the living wage scale. The way I look at it, you know, really from a comparison standpoint, we, we really can't look at the two adults one working, because getting your lowest paid employee to that level, we, we just can't afford that. And then if you compare against the one adult and the two adults both working, even with one child, you can see where we stack up. And just from a number standpoint, you know, we're not there. Do I think getting there is realistic? Probably not. But I do think this is a tool for us to look at, just to see where we can pair. I doubt even Forsyth County, Winston-Salem is going to hit these numbers for a living wage, based on a calculator that's out there. If they do, kudos, but I, I highly doubt it. But I do think, again, it's a tool for us just to see where we stack up. Recently, Atrium Health looked at this as well, and they boosted their minimum from 1750 to 1850 to try to close the gap on a living wage calculator, too.
Quick question. The, the private sector wages that you're kind of competing against here, does your wage include benefits? Or do their wage include benefits? Because a lot of private sectors, you know, don't have the benefit package that we have that would need to assimilate into the.
Yeah, my, my understanding is the living wage just looks at the actual wage that's being paid. But I would, I, I would, I would concur with what you're saying. Another benefit to local government that makes us more competitive against the private world is that we do provide really good benefits. And I can stand here and say that, being in local government 18 years. You take somebody right out of school, you know, that they don't see that in game like we do as professionals who've been doing this for a while. And, and when they get here, they tell us that. But again, as a tool, this is what we use kind of behind the scenes to figure out through the budget process of what that, those salaries, because face it, our, our largest expense is personnel. And so what we end up having to do, and what we do, is we just put in a placeholder. You know, we decided the placeholder this year was to shoot for what Atrium did to get their lowest paid working person to the floor of 1850. It's very ambitious. I want to make that very clear. It is super ambitious. But when you do budget, it's just, we typically start high, and we work our way down as we work our way through all of our figures. This is before we get departmental information. This is before we get any other factors put in. We go ahead and plug in a number, and, and that number equals roughly 8%. We don't anticipate bringing that back to you. Obviously, you know, based on the feedback that we've gotten already with revaluation, but we always start high, is the only way to put it. And as we work through reviewing all our requests, all of our needs, we know this is a place where we tend to trim. As we go through the budget process, I don't think I've ever, I'll take that back. I have seen, during COVID, there were some people that got this high, but I don't anticipate us hitting that number. But that's just what we plug in in the beginning. Last year was 10%. So that's kind of a behind the scenes of how we are putting budget together from a salary standpoint. Overall, I think we did quite well in our 2025 budget. I think a lot of that reflected in the fact that Stacy said our number of applications has gone up. I know talking with, in fact, the day Sheriff and I were talking, I mean, some of the things that he's seeing that make him more competitive across some of the other departments out there, some of the things that we took into play last year really helped. I'm not seeing the number of employees that are leaving us at the rates and the speed due to pay increases from other counties that we experienced in prior years, since we made the changes that you all implemented as part of 2025. But ultimately, we got to stay competitive. Again, the best applicants have options. We've experienced that in some of our interviewing processes, where we see a candidate, and by the time we get ready to sit down, they got two or three other things floating around. So we want to make sure that we are attracting the best that we can to come work for us. We know how great we are. Also, I'll leave you with this, about 65% of our workforce has got a Davie County zip code. The other 35% are traveling from another county that probably have a similar job or similar field, and they're choosing to come here. And we want them to continue to come here and work in Davie County. We'd love to have all 100 live here, but we just know that's not realistic. But we want to make sure that we are trying to stay as competitive as possible. So this just goes into the cake that we're going to bake for you guys to put together towards the process. And that's just kind of where we are from a personnel standpoint. Again, as putting that cake together, you have all these other factors that we have to consider. You guys know we have debt. We've already heard from Education Today, where we have a contract with them. Last thing we ever want to do is go backwards in salaries and benefits. So we still have to at least match that. You're going to hear some more capital and operational needs. So all of those play into how we come to the final number that we're going to present later this spring. I'll leave you with any questions.
Since you've kind of enticed us, what is the 8% on, as the budget placeholder?
What is that magic number?
Two and a half million dollars.
Well, I said it's ambitious.
Clarification there, the eight percent to get people to eighteen fifty, is that what you were saying, too?
It gets it gets your minimum starting pay of a minimum starting pay of an existing position with a warm body to eighteen fifty.
But was that eight percent that got it to that? Okay.
Because again, the way our system works, if my, again, take the EMT. If you EMT goes up, so does paramedic, so does field training officer.
Right.
In in terms of budgeting.
But then the eight percent, the two and a half million is an assumption that the eight percent goes system-wide.
Correct. And again, that's a placeholder.
Right.
And that includes benefits, like, you know.
Right. Which based on the numbers that we talked about a while ago, that's about three cents on the tax rate, the new tax rate.
And that's before we consider any new employee, any new positions as well.
Only one more comment about this whole thing. I think I can't stress enough my philosophy on this to realize any of these goals. And I'm not, this is not a counter to what Stacy said a while ago. There may be departments out there that need somebody that's very legitimate, but to achieve anything resembling this, we've got to maintain the same number of staff as close as practically possible and take care of who we've got and not be looking to add a lot of bodies.
There's no other questions, I think.
Karen, how long do we need for lunch? All right, okay. Well, we'll just kind of roll back in here when we see that, when we see y'all getting seated, we'll we'll, no more than thirty minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll do it. Father, we thank you for this time. We thank you for bringing us all together. We thank you for placing us in this greatest of all lands. And Lord, we just pray that, Father, you bless our staff, you you bless the citizens of this great county, and Lord, you bless this food to the nourishment of our bodies and our bodies to your eternal service. In Christ's name, amen.
Say three minutes?
What's that?
Is this like public comments, three minutes?
Three, that's what that's what Mr. Corndax just.
He gave me the three sign. You ready? Thank you. And the good news is we probably will stick to a short period of time because I have nine slides and seven of them have pictures on them. And so I'm taking the school systems approach and highlighting the work of HHS through pictures. I'd like to start with environmental health. Environmental health is a unit within the Health Department. A lot of people think environmental health is a standalone department. It's not. It's part of the Public Health Department. However, the environmental health specialists are agents of the state. That means they are trained by the state and they are authorized by the state, but they do work on behalf of the county. So I know we talk a lot about septic systems and that's probably what the commissioners get to hear about a lot, but environmental health, every morning, this is what they're looking at. They do a whole lot more than just septic systems and wells. They have to permit and inspect all the tattoo artists and their shops in Davie County, all the restaurants, public swimming pools, institutions, facilities, hotels. So I think there are five hundred and forty-one required restaurant inspections that they do every year. And when I say five hundred and forty-one, that's just required. They probably, you can probably multiply that times four, just like last week with the boil water advisory. They went out to all the the restaurants multiple times to make sure there was compliance. And I have to thank Cameron Webb and his team, too, because over the weekend, one of our facilities, our nursing home facilities was out of water. And so our environmental health team contacted Cameron and he took pallets of water out to them. So we, you'll hear me say a lot that we work collaboratively with all of the departments here, so you're gonna you're gonna hear that quite a bit. But I think we have right at twenty-nine public swimming pools now in the county that they inspect. I think we just got an application for another one. Mr. Shof, going back to the conversation this morning, I think the nine lots closest to you have just submitted applications, so we should see that pretty soon. So I broke public health down into three different areas. The first was environmental health. This is our clinical area, so we do a lot of preventive work there. You see the bus up in the top corner, Novartis Mammography Unit. We also partner with Atrium Health and have their lung bu- bus here to do lung screenings. We are still the only prenatal provider in Davie County. So we have an OB that comes from Wake Forest every Wednesday. So if you're a pregnant woman in Davie County, you either come to the Health Department to get your care or you go out of the county for your care. I know we work in partnership with the Pregnancy Care Center, too, but as far as OB providers, it's either here or outside of the county. We have an onsite, full onsite lab and pharmacy. We contract a pharmacist to come in and reconcile every month, but we do have that onsite. You see Contegra Health right there, the picture. We are co-located with a federally qualified health center. They do adult primary care, we do pediatric primary care. So we have two part-time pediatricians, two mid-level providers. We do a lot of case management, one for high-risk pregnancy, one for high-risk children, children of high risk under under five that are on Medicaid. So a lot of work goes in in the pediatric clinic in the Health Department. We also have a WIC program. It's for children, birth to five, pregnant women, postpartum, postpartum and breastfeeding women. It's a nutrition supplement program. There are about seven hundred and nineteen thousand dollars worth of benefits that come back to Davie County through our eight vendors that we have. So if they receive benefits for supplemental food, for healthy foods, they spend those at Walmart, at Lowe's, at Food Line, our eight vendors. So seven hundred and nineteen thousand of that comes back here. And and I do have notes pages to go with this, so I'll share that with you after the fact. We also, in in Health and Human Services, there's Davie Center for Violence Prevention. We have five staff there working now, four, four full-time permanent, one is a twelve month temporary staff member. We work very closely with law enforcement and the judicial system here. I think they did a thousand, over a thousand protective orders last year, went to court with victims of domestic violence about five hundred different times and provided about eighty-five hundred different follow-up contacts and services. I think they provided lodging for about sixty-eight last year. So a lot of good work going through our Davie Center for Violence Prevention. Senior Services, I can't say enough about this group right here. Quality of life, improving quality of life for our seniors. If you look at the pictures there, you see a ton of activity. They have meals onsite, those are our congregate meals, but we also provide meals for those who are shut in or homebound. They usually get out just for medical appointments. But we have, we served about fifty-one thousand meals last year between congregate and Meals on Wheels. They had about a hundred and seven thousand visits between the two campuses. That's the main campus and the Brock facility. Two hundred, about two hundred volunteers, they have helping carry out services. I know the Sheriff's Department volunteers to help with Meals on Wheels. They've been a tremendous help. There are some days I don't know that the meals would get out if it wasn't for the Sheriff's Department staff, too, so greatly appreciative of that. Two hundred and thirty participants this year in senior games, so our numbers continue to climb and Carrie Miller does an excellent job with that. So just great work going on in senior services. And then we have child welfare. And I bet you're probably wondering what the Dragonfly House is doing up there. I just, I want to show everybody that we have partnerships all over the county. The Dragonfly House works with our Child Welfare Team hand in hand. All child sexual abuse cases are done in partnership with the Dragonfly House and our Child Welfare Unit. If you look down there in the bottom left corner, you see somebody with a bottle in their hand. For the last two years, a hundred percent of our children in DSS custody have been there because of parental substance misuse. So a hundred percent. Right now, we have forty kids in foster care. That number climbs, it could be forty-nine by the end of the week. I think the last time I did this presentation, we had forty-nine. So we can go higher or lower just depending on court that week or how the weekend goes. So all substance affected infants that are born in the hospital, the hospital calls our Child Welfare Unit, we get involved immediately and then we communicate with the Care Coordinator for Children, Ryan Wallace, through the Health Department. They work very closely to make sure that those infants get the care that they need. And then we're working with the families. So a lot of legal work. You'll see people sitting in a car. We have social workers in cars all day. They go all over North Carolina. A lot of our facilities that our children are in are out of state. We have to fly social workers out of state a few times a year because they are required to do face-to-face visits. So they have to go where our kids are placed and sometimes they're in high-level treatment facilities that are not available in North Carolina. So they they are in the car a lot. We have a strong partnership with Davie County Schools, probably in the schools as much as some of the school teachers are, so we have a very close working relationship with them. And then this last one, I always, I always ask people, what gets your attention first? And all the guys say fishing license and all the girls say the corpse in the middle of the screen. So I'm gonna tell you about both. On our Economic Services side, we do issue fishing license. We issue fishing license to those who are receiving benefits because it is a food source. So anybody receiving food benefits can apply for and receive a fishing license through Health and Human Services. The corpse, if there is an unclaimed body, and there have been a few, and I work with Joseph and the funeral homes quite a bit, Krista, Krista Ramrope and her team, if there is an unclaimed body, DSS by law is responsible for that unclaimed body. So they pay for the cremation, they work with the local folks and and pay for cremation and then they work with Storehouse for Jesus who has property on, out, out at their property and they allow us to do a proper burial for these individuals who whose families are nonexistent or not willing to take on the body. So a lot of stuff that people do not know about Health and Human Services. You see up there, there's a file that says fraud. We have a fraud investigator, started out with a part-time one, now full-time. Last year, they received referrals, they go through the applications, they go through the information. They were able to recoup about two hundred and eighty-eight thousand in fraudulent benefits for the agency. So far this year, probably gonna top that. Last week, they got a referral, or two weeks ago, they got a referral. Went through it, noticed some red flags, contacted the state of Tennessee where these individuals came from. The Attorney General's Office contacted us back a few days later and said, this is part of a huge fraud ring that has ties into North Carolina and you just helped us close it. So our fraud investigator's doing incredible work. You see the picture of the individual with the syringe and the drugs. We have a licensed clinical social worker who heads our community response task force, works very closely with law enforcement, community paramedic program EMS and other community partners. She is in the school four days a week, doing groups and also working to educate the faculty and staff on what these new substances look like and how they're being misused. So enable program there. We also have non-emergency medical transportation. For those that are ambulatory, they go through us. For those that are non-ambulatory, we reach out to Joseph and the convalescent care program. We're, we help a lot with housing and I'm gonna get to that in in the final slide. Work a lot with housing for those who who are transitionally homeless. We have some that are homeless, truly homeless, but we have some that are transitionally homeless. They come out of a facility, don't quite have anywhere to stay yet, or they're in a domestic violence situation, they can get into housing in a couple of weeks. We we work a lot with transitional housing. The bottom right picture, you see the guy in the wheelchair, just like child welfare has foster care, adult services, adult protective services, we become the guardian or we find guardianship for adults who are abused, neglected, or exploited in some way. So we have about ten of those right now that we are guardian over. The bottom picture, the lady with the baby. Our Child Support Unit collected about two million dollars, like over two million dollars in child support for the custodial parent last year. We have been ranked the top three in the state for collections the last three years. I think we currently sit at number two. Last year, we were number one. We were down a staff person or I feel like we'd be right back there. And then, but they've done an incredible job moving that forward. During the west, the Hurricane Helene, our folks from Davie County assisted twenty-one out of the twenty-five counties with disaster food benefits, the application processing for that. So just a lot of good stuff going on in Economic Services and throughout Health and Human Services. And then I wanted to talk to you guys about the budget considerations. One, we've had a DSS MOU in place since two thousand eighteen. But right after it came in into into effect, they said, you know, this is new to DSS. It hadn't been new to public health. We've had agreements in place with the state for quite some time. But two thousand eighteen, nineteen, they put this in place and said, okay, we'll give you a year to get get into compliance, then we'll start the accountability piece. Well, then COVID hit. And then Hurricane Helene hit. But for those not involved in Hurricane Helene, this year, they will be looking at the performance measures and holding counties accountable for any that do not meet the performance measures. So we we have a dashboard that we stare at every every week. We're in compliance, totally in compliance, not gonna be an issue, but some of the areas that they measure, because of our small sample size, there could be possibilities in the future where it might might have a financial penalty, but should not impact us this year. Child welfare, we'll be implementing a new system, it's PATH NC. We are scheduled to implement that in September of two thousand twenty-five. That's gonna impact all of our staff and probably some quality assurance pieces that we're gonna need to put into place. In September, all of our staff will have to come in for training. It's gonna be a learning curve for them. Right now, they do their documentation, put it into Laserfish, they have a a complete system, but this is gonna be real time, so there'll be no time, if they're on the road going to Wilmington to visit a child, there'll be no time to do those quality assurance pieces same day, but their paperwork has to be in real time. So there's quality assurance pieces that we're gonna have to look into there. Not asking for anything right now, but after September, we see how this impacts us, then we may be looking to do something at that time. Had a lot of DSS audits recently and like I said, with the quality assurance, with all the state and federal audits, the new software implementation, we're probably gonna look to do something with quality assurance after September. Foster care, I'll go back to adult protective services in a minute, but with foster care, in two thousand twenty-three, they let us know that kinship placements would now be paid placements. Prior to that, you had to be a licensed foster parent before you could receive payment for taking on a child in DSS custody. But because it's better sometimes to place children with relatives, they realized that the relatives weren't getting paid anything, but they were taking on a huge responsibility. So in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, they implemented the kinship payments, but our budget line in that particular area got cut by about fifty-six thousand dollars last year. We were at sixty-six percent spent in December and didn't have all of our, we still hadn't have all of our expenses in. So I think moving forward, we're gonna have to budget a little bit more in the in the foster care line, so I'll be putting that in our budget this year. Public health medical provider, we've had a hard time recruiting pediatricians. We have two part-time pediatricians. It's been hard to recruit a full-time pediatrician for the amount of money that we're paying them. I can tell you off of the last full-time pediatrician that we had, we we were reimbursed about three times what we were paying her. And she was out a portion of the year. So I'm saying if we had a full-time medical provider onsite, then we could probably recover about four times whatever we invest, but we're gonna have to pay them to get them here. I think right now, our our pediatricians make about the same level, same amount as our mid-level providers and it's hard to recruit somebody at that at that pay and compete with. And it's hard to recruit somebody at that, at that pay and compete with all the medical practices and the hospitals around here. So that's something that we're gonna be looking into, something I've already spoken with Mr. Barnett about a few times. So I think we have a plan that we're gonna work on, but just wanna let you know that that's, that's on our, on our radar for the year. Adult Protective Services, we're seeing an increased number of cases in, in Adult Protective Services. What we did this year, every time there's a weather event or a major, major event, if we had to, if we have to open a shelter, it's gonna require multiple staff around the clock for multiple days. So we talked this year about having a, a twenty-person cutoff. Like if it's, if we have up to twenty people, we can find shelter for them at hotels locally at, at negotiated rates, provide food, it'd still be cheaper than to, to open the shelter around the clock for, for a lengthy period of time. So we may have to budget some of those pieces. We sheltered some this time. But I think we're gonna look into that in the budget this year. Davie Center for Violence Prevention, good news is, they, they wrote a lot of grants last year. They wrote about twelve grants. Our normal operating budget's somewhere around two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand. Right now, it's about five hundred plus because of all the grant money they got in last year. But those were one-time funds, so those are going away. So you're gonna see a budget of five hundred and seven thousand plus go to two-fifty, and you're gonna go, what in the world? But it's, those were just one-time grants. We've also been here for a couple of years now that VOCA's gonna cut our funding by forty to sixty percent. We just don't know when that's happening. But they, like I said, they've said it for two years, still hasn't happened. But I feel like it's coming in the near future. Senior Services, Kim Shusky helped us out right before she left by making sure that senior service was, senior services in Davie County was deemed an age-friendly community through AARP. And with that, it opens up opportunities for us to apply for grant funds. So I think Brent Harp, the new senior services manager, and his team will be applying for additional funds this year. About twelve thousand available through this community challenge grant that they're gonna be looking into. And then, just like we do with the Sheriff's Department for, for child support, we pay for a percentage of the deputy. We get that reimb, reimbursement from the state. It helps cut costs for the Sheriff's, Sheriff's Department and the county, saves us some money. We have, we pay part-time right now for one of our Technology Solutions staff members, and we're hoping that we can work with Tony to make that full-time so that they can continue to support us real-time in, in Health and Human Services. And that's, that's all I have. Any questions?
We're okay Suzanne?
All right, thank you.
Suzanne, thank your people for what they do. I've had it brought back more to my attention now that I'm reliving my second wave of teaching with my daughter being a teacher. So, you know, she deals with a lot of high-risk kids, and we know y'all, not just that, but everything, thanks.
Yeah, well, thank you.
All right, Joseph?
Unlike Suzanne, I have a bunch of slides. First, I just wanna come up here and say thank y'all for allowing us to be able to come up and present, and for being able to have y'all support to be able to get the supervisor in the, in the quick-response vehicle. That has made a huge difference in what we're able to go through and do in the future. So part of the presentation that I'm gonna go through and discuss is gonna be personnel, equipment, the different programs, and kinda what the future of EMS is gonna go through and look like. So starting out with the personnel, and I know Mr. Schoeff said this a while ago, that he didn't want a lot of, a lot of people, but I've got a lot that I'm asking for. So the first thing I wanna talk about is adding additional eight paramedic positions to make a sixth truck for the county. Whenever we start talking about the rooftops and the infrastructure and everything along those lines, we have to be able to grow with the citizens and making sure that we're able to provide those coverages going through. One of the things, the other thing I'm gonna ask for is four paramedics for a quick-response vehicle program on the Northwest Corner. I know that's, that's been a, a topic of our discussion, it's in the, the finance part where we're looking at putting a fifth station up there. I'm at, looking for four additional EMTs for a non-emergency transport unit, and then most of all, a training coordinator position. So I'm gonna kinda break some of this down. Eight paramedics, what I'm looking at doing with these is, is, is putting another truck on on the eastern side of the county. When you start looking at call volume, we run two trucks out of the Motzville Station because we've run about thirteen-hundred-and-seven calls out of Motzville, and now Smith Grove and Advance, that area, those call volumes has increased. Cause last year, it was Motzville, Smith Grove, Jerusalem, Advance, as far as where everything fell. Now Advance and Smith Grove has really combined through to pick up a lot more of that call volume on that eastern side. One reason those call volumes are picking up is from Davie Medical Center. When we sit back and look at the hospital, it's wonderful having a hospital in the county. I've talked to Dr. Klein, and they average about thirty thousand patients coming in a year, annually. So what they're looking at is they send out about fifteen, fifteen hundred patients. Out of this, if you look on here, we've took out roughly seven-hundred-and-forty transports out of Davie Medical Center, which leaves Air Care up seven-hundred-and-sixty. So we're neck and neck with their, with their inter-facility transfers going through. So that's one reason that we're looking at that, because when you start looking at how we've got our trucks spaced out and going through, then there's times that we run out of trucks on that eastern side. We do, we do look at systemat, as far as a system management part of it, where we try to rotate trucks to be able to cover so we can keep trucks available. But Air Care, and speaking with their director, they're, they're averaging three trucks a shift and running three helicopters. But the problem that they're running into is they've got all the other atrium facilities in the area. So if Davie Medical Center calls in for a trans, a transfer going to inter-facility, then it may be a four-hour wait, anywhere from two to four hours before Air Care can get to them. And we've agreed to, part of that was, we pick up some of the transfers, that, that way our citizens aren't sitting in the hospital waiting to get moved over. So that's part of what we're picking up on, on those.
Joseph, would you, um, station that vehicle at station four?
Yes. That's one reason, planning for the future part, and looking at it, and that we've got the bays, we've got the, the quarters and everything all ready.
And, um, DMC does not assist with any of that expense in moving those people, right?
They, we actually build the hospital directly now. So what we're doing is we're, the transfers that's going out, we was going through and billing the patients. Now whenever, in, I think it was March, they ended up changing the tax ID number to match Atrium Health Main Campus. So now what we're going through and doing is, we build a hospital, the hospital in return will go through and, and pay back. If they have a commercial insurance and we build the patient directly, if they have Medicaid, Medicare, then we build a hospital type deal. So we're still able to go through and bill for those transports going out.
Is that, um, are those invoices being paid pretty quickly, or is that, are they dragging?
It, we're in the process of going through and getting all of it, cause whenever that happened, we was with the old billing company. Then we switched in, in May to the new billing company. So we're, we're trying to make sure that everything's in line and, and getting everything there. So once everything gets in play, we're looking at sending the bill out for those transfers by the fifteenth of the month prior to. So that way, whenever they go through and do it, because some of them, if they're, my understanding, if they're transferred to the ER and the ER discharges them, then we can bill directly. But if they're admitted from the ER, going to the floor or anything like that, then they have to go through and tell us which ones were admitted, cause we don't know until after, afterwards, as far as whether it's a, a transfer or a direct admit type deal.
So initially, my, my question would be to staff is, how is that comparison, what we would have to spend to add that unit as to what we're making, in my opinion, primarily from the hospital itself? Um, I mean, I don't, I don't want us to add a unit and a, and staff and be going in the hole in the hospital getting the advantage. Does that make sense? Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, you're fine. But that is some, like I said, that is some of the meetings that we had, we actually met with them yesterday and discussed a lot of that billing part with them. So the other position that we're asking for is a training coordinator. This role is near and dear to me, cause this is a position I've held since two thousand and eight. The training coordinator position has multiple roles and responsibilities to go through and make sure that we're staying in compliance with the, the North Carolina Office of EMS and along with our educational plan that we submitted in. We work, the training coordinator works with the county medical director. As you know, we took on a new medical director in July. So Dr. Weakley is, is a huge asset to the county. He's got a lot of good ideas, and, and we're able to grow with him. So he's got different things that he's gotta do, that training coordinator's gotta make sure that we're getting everything met. The training requirements, make sure, like I said, make sure they're being met by, according to the, the EMS system plan. We have to submit a plan in every four years, and I've just recently done the educational plan, so we're, we're good with those. But the, the biggest part of this is, this position has been a dual role since two thousand and twenty-two, whenever I came in as the, as a director. So I've been doing dual role for training and as a director part of it. And if it hadn't been for the staff doing multiple contributions to it, we've been able to go through and maintain going through. I just, we just feel that at this time, it'd be a good time to ask for that position to go through. And that way, any certifications have to go through my Level Two, and that's the highest level of education part for the, for the trainers in the state. So I have to do all the, all the paramedic research along with all the other duties.
Joseph, are you the only staff member that meets the qualifications of what we have to have for training certification?
Right now, yes, cause you have to have that, that Level Two paramedic.
Right, okay.
The other thing that we're looking for is the four paramedics for, to serve at Northwest Corner of the county. I think the QRV program would be a good asset to that area, because looking at call volumes up that, in that direction, the Sheffield Callahan area, they've had about eighty-nine calls last year. Center was about a hundred and fifty, and then County Line was about a hundred and nineteen. So instead of putting a truck up there, I think the quick-response vehicle would be a good thing to put up. We've tried that in Advance before. It was done really good. It gave the paramedic the capability to stabilize a patient until a transport unit was able to get there. So you've got a standard of care, and it's just not having that additional crew member to be able to transport out. So you're still waiting on that transport truck to come in, but I think this will be utilized very well because of the call volume in the area. The Specialty Services Division, which is our non-emergency of convalescent services, kinda Suzanne alluded to just a little bit ago. This was, the convalescent was really brought on during the agent committee a couple of years ago to make sure that it was taken care of the, of the citizens. This will allow us to pick up more of our citizens who are bed-confined, who are getting discharged from the back, from the hospitals back to the residence, and will allow us to run multiple trucks a day to be able to go through and do that. Right now, we've got one truck running majority of the time, and on, on Wednesdays and Thursdays, we're running two trucks. So we're able to add those call volume, the calls in to be able to pick up and bring people back.
Joseph, wait, I have a question about the QRV. Where would you station a QRV for the Northwest Corner?
We've got some plans in place. Some of the properties that we've looked at, there was actually a place that we was looking at, and Mr. Barnett has been in discussion with it, and we've, we've got a plan and everything of where we can go through and, and, and get that. It may be similar to what we've done with Advance, as far as renting a spot for a little bit until we can get a building built. So, but it is, there, there's, there is some communications between myself, Mr. Barnett.
My second question would be, do we currently have enough, what we call senior paramedics on staff, to staff both the supervisor QRV and an additional QRV per shift?
The, the onboarding process to get them to that senior paramedic is actually moving a whole lot smoother now. So we are getting, a lot of our individuals are coming back off of FMLA that has been out. So yes, we are getting to that point where we would be able to provide that. It takes, once we hire them in, when we was talking about the EMTs a while ago, as far as being them to come in job-ready type deal where you have that training prior to. Medic-wise, it takes about anywhere from two to three months to get that paramedic where they're cleared to be by theirself and working with the basics. It does take a little bit of time to do that, but I think if we know ahead of time that this is a possibility, we can get them in and, and get this thing up and going pretty quick. The kind of the idea is to take either the assistant supervisor or a field training officer and have them on this vehicle. And that way, you do have a, a, someone in that leadership role, and that can be able to go through and have that critical decision-making skills and be able to do that on their own and, and be more, more reliable.
Joseph, is there a Medicare or Medicaid-type reimbursement for any of that transport? Like you were saying about people who are bedridden or getting people back, is that?
Those, those have to be pre-approved prior to by insurance. So whenever, that's guaranteed money coming back to us, cause before we take those transfers, we, everything's pre-approved. Equipment needs, the, this is where Mr. Barnett was talking about earlier, whenever he was talking about our prices changing. I trust me, they will not price-match. I've got the original bill of sales for the first ambulances we got, and they will not do fifteen hun, fifteen thousand dollars. But right now, we're looking at a brand-new truck. If you look at the timeline on this one, the last load I got a couple of weeks ago, there's a, it's for a two thousand and twenty-seven FI fifty. So we're looking at two years to even get in line to go through and do that build for that truck. We have been, we've tried to be very studious with the, the money and everything and, and make sure that we're using the funds by the, from the taxpayers and that, and not getting way out of line with it. So what we're looking at, and we're gonna ask for, is gonna be three remounts. These trucks, if you look at the turnaround time on those, we're looking at around a, a six-month period to be able to get a truck in service. The rate, the cost of that brand-new truck was three-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand. By going to a remount, which means they're gonna use the box off of our already-existing truck and put a new chassis under it, they'll refurb the box, new lights, new air conditioner, new wiring, new everything in the back of that box. So it's pretty much a brand-new truck, and they can do that for a hundred and eighty-seven thousand apiece. And we do, and the reason we've got three in there, we've got at least two trucks right now that's over three hundred thousand miles. And so those are at, we, I don't like having trucks with that many miles for the emergency stuff. So we really need to really consider doing something along this line. And I think now we're to that point, we can do remounts to be able to kinda keep us where we need to be at. We, since the supervisors have come off the, off the ambulance into a quick-response vehicle, we asked for this last year's, in this, this year's budget for the, to get a pickup truck for them. And the pickup truck's gonna serve various roles. So what that, we can do with this is actually help pull the emergency manag, emergency, emergency management trailers, EMS trailers, whatever that we have. If we have a stretcher that malfunctions and, and messes up or anything at the hospital, we can actually go pick it up and take them another one and, and switch them out with a pickup truck. We're in a, in a Tahoe, we can't. The other thing is, we don't like putting the dirty linen or anything like that with other vehicles. So this would actually be able to use the back of the truck to be able to transfer. This truck would have a camper shell on it with the lights and packages and everything like, along those lines. So the funding that we was able to use before, that we, when it was approved, we actually reallocated that money to get two community paramedic vehicles. And then speaking with the salesman yesterday, they're two weeks out, so we should have those here within the next two weeks. One of the things that we are looking at doing is get, is purchasing a used trailer and making that into a rehabilitation and mass casualty incident trailer. So what we mean by this is, for re, the rehab part, we're contractually obligated to the, to the fire departments whenever they do structured fire training and all, to have an ALS unit there. Sometimes it's hard to get all the staffing extra because that's on top of them, not, cause we don't wanna mess with the daily operations, so we have people coming in. But this trailer would allow us to go through and get, be, be able to provide the, the equipment and everything, have it pulled to the site ahead of time, and also allow us for extreme weather, if weather's extremely cold, hot on calls, we can actually get that trailer out there and set it on heat. We can get the cooling fans, different things, have all that equipment there. And then the, in the cold, I mean, we can go through and, and get heat and everything to them.
Isn't the rescue squad currently building one of these?
They've got a command trailer that we're building.
Is it not gonna be fairly similar?
Um, I have not seen it, so, so that's, I've been in talks with Andy over the, over the trailer, the old trailer. This would also allow us to use multiple agencies if the Sheriff's Department was out on a, on a long call or anything like that, if they needed it. We'd be able to get it to them. The other is the mass casualty events, whenever you have multiple patients that, and you, you wanna be there a long time on the scenes, that's, we can have that to house different equipment and everything for those. Mobile training lab, this is something that we already have the capabilities of doing. We've got an old EMS unit. The trade-in values are not very high on some of these, so we was gonna take the oldest unit in the fleet and actually repurchase it with audio, video, recording equipment, everything to where we can actually, the boxes are the same, pretty much the same in the back. So we can run scenarios with them in the back of the truck and put them in that environment and try to make it as realistic as possible. And for them to be able to perform under that stressful situation and, and be able, them to be able to- And for them to be able to perform under that stressful situation and and be able, them to be able to learn and see what they've done wrong. So this is something that we was just looking at getting the audio video portion of it to help improve those opportunities. This is going to be some of the big expenses, the technology is changing all the time. These Life包thirty-five monitors, if it makes you feel any better, what we have now is Life包fifteen, so that technology has really changed. We're looking at doing a three-year lease on these. If you notice in the slide, the current monitors that we have are forty-two thousand apiece. And now these new monitors are going up to sixty thousand. So there's, the way they've done this is if there's any new technology coming out, like ultrasound, where they can start IVs with ultrasound, different things, there's. Then it's just a plug and play type thing, plug it into the USB port, so we don't have to go out and buy another monitor. That, they've already got that built in. Any technology updates, any, any version changes or anything like that is all done during preventive maintenance, so it's easier to go through and and do. So they're not expecting any mon, new monitors coming out for, I think the salesman said about eighteen to twenty years. So once we purchase monitors like these, then we'll be, we'll be good for a little while. The defibrillators, as some of you know, EMS has kind of been in, put over the, the defibrillators, it's in every public access building in the county, Brad's transferred that funding over to us. We're getting to the end of life on the, all the defibrillators in the public buildings. These, we're requesting thirty-five of those to replace all the ones that's already in the buildings now. And this would be included into that, that lease with the, with the monitors if we're able to go through and do this. So that would actually put everything under one, one payment going through. So this technology will allow us to pull the data, if they was used, to be able to go through and take the data from that monitor. Pull it over to our system, so we can actually take a CPR call and run it all the way through from the time that AED was put, the AED was put on to our monitor was going through. So it kind of helps, if, if something happens to it or anything like that, we're able to go through and find the location of where that, where that monitor's at. And so that's, that's something that, some of that newer technology that's there.
Joseph, I have a question about that, so when you do have things that go wrong with those or things that have to be done, does your staff actually do that? Or is there a company that takes care of that, that you just have to contact?
On the monitors?
The AEDs? If you have to, if they have to be replaced or updated or, I mean.
Right now, right now, we have.
You yourself do or you contact someone?
Right now, we have biomedical come in and does the service work on them. But with these, it would go through Stryker. So whenever Mary Ann comes out and does our preventive maintenance on our monitor, she would actually pull these in and 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 check all of them as well. So that would be under a pro-care contract and that is included in the price, so every monitor that we have, that includes getting bat, getting new batteries, new cables, different things along those lines in that preventative maintenance and the pro-care. Security cameras, we do have the, the security cameras on the outside of the, the new Dave EMS Station Four. We're looking at adding these in at Stations One, Two, and Three. It's not that we have any issues or anything, but we just want to make sure that we have that security on the outside. Station Three, we've got to do something down there, because whenever somebody pulls up there, there's really no windows for them to see outside to see who's there. This will allow that opportunity for them to be able to see what's going on outside before they open up a door. Radios and pagers, we're asking for six Kenwood radios, I've left mine sitting back there. But they're about three thousand dollars apiece and this will put us in compliance with all the radio changes that's going to come about in July. So we're also requesting five miniature seven pagers, that's about five hundred dollars apiece, these are going to go through and replace the one, the pagers that we have for the EMS trucks now. That's a little bit older, because as you know, whenever you have those, just wear and tear and the speakers go out, different things, so this will get us, this will get us where we need, plus for the convalescent. The GTAC computers, we're needing to go through and and replace several of those computers, these are used on a daily basis, no matter how well we take care of them. And everything, they're out in the weather, they're getting bumped around, they're just, they're getting wore out on, on running calls. We use these to, for patient information, for billing, doing our patient care reports and all going through. The, the ten that we're requesting, eight of them will be for the emergency side of it, two for the non-emergency, so they're about forty-two thousand apiece.
Our forty, it said forty-two hundred, I made.
Excuse me, forty-two hundred.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah. I was seeing if he was paying attention. The computing, the community paramedic computer and software, we're looking at getting four Dell computers. Three for the community paramedics and one for the new peer support specialist. If you didn't, wasn't aware, Brad Ellison has come on as our full-time peer support. He has done a wonderful job and I think by getting these computers, two of them is going, or they're going to be replacing the Microsoft services, which, talking with Greg, they're, those are kind of obsolete. And by getting these computers, allow them to stay in the field more and be able to, to adjust whatever they need to go through and do. The Gelata software, this is the twenty-four thousand one, this is an annual subscription, it was previously done by a grant, we're, we're not aware, we don't believe that we can apply for that grant anymore. So this is going to have to be something that we pick up and 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 carry on with. That Gelata allows the fire departments to make referrals in, Greg has actually sent out the links to the fire department, so if they run across somebody that needs assistance from the community paramedic. They're able to go through and make that referral directly in, into a secured site. So then the community paramedic can go back and, and and reach back out and make sure that everything is good on there.
Has that transition with Brad officially taken place? Because a couple of weeks ago it hadn't. Is he officially a county employee or is he still contracted?
No, he's officially a county employee.
Okay.
The other thing that we're looking for with the paramedics, the supervisors being off of the road, is adding blood to the trucks. This is something that will help increase survival of traumatic events and some medical events, if we're somebody who needs blood, we can actually go through and do that. The blood would be kept on the, on the supervisor, quick response vehicle, if we're able to get that QRV for that Northwest Corner, we'd be able to put it on there. So that way we've got two different options of how we can get the, get that to the citizens. The blood can't be placed on the ambulance, it's just, I mean, with the regulations, because you've got to get that blood from the blood banks and the blood banks aren't going to let us put it on every truck. So there's going to be limitations of what we can do. By purchase, the biggest cost in this, if you notice, it's going to be eight thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars to be able to get the equipment to be able to do the blood. The biggest expense out of this is going to be the cooler to keep the blood cool and then you have to have something to warm the blood prior to administration. So those are the two big expenses. The rest of it is going to be just administration, like the tubing, different things along those lines. So the first upfront costs is going to be the most there at the very beginning. So we're just looking at adding, putting it on the QRVs if we was able to get that other one as well. Education, the educational part of it. What we're looking at is we have a lot of officers and whenever they get put in positions and everything, we don't really have that training to go through and do this. If you look here, Davey, Davey EMS is scheduled to run EMS Officer Series, which is a subject matter expert driven, directed towards North Carolina. For all of our FTOs, our, our field training officers, our assistant supervisors, our supervisors, those are going to be mandatory for them to attend. Rowan Community, Rowan County Community College or Rowan Cumberbaris Community College is offering to come in and run the classes for us because Davison Davy would not. So we are going through and working through the college, they've already signed the paperwork to allow Rowan to do this for us. So it's going to be held starting in March all the way through September. So we're going to have it at the EMS office, like I said, it's mandatory for our current officers and anybody who's wanting to go through and do this will allow them to come in and take that class if they're wanting to.
Do you know what kind of cost is it going to be the cost for us for the college?
No, it, the Rowan is, is, they're, the Rowan has signed the contract with EMS wizards to go through and do that. So with us being in a EMS agency, then we should be exempt from the fees.
Thank you.
Breakdown of EMS, this is one reason why we want to run those classes and get the officers there. If you look at this, to me, this is a slide that says a lot about how our recruitment's going. And the way this is broke down is somebody who just came in from day one to year five, we've hired thirty-two people. And that's kind of, that's where we're at, less than a year of service is, is twelve team members. One year is five, two years is four team members, three, three years is, is six people. Four is three and then five is, is two team members. So whenever you sit back and look at that, that is a lot of new people that's coming out of school, coming into our agency, so we are a very young agency. And this is where the leadership and taking these extra educational opportunities to go through to bring these individuals up, these are the ones that's going to be taking care of us in the field. If you sit back and look at the six to ten year ones that we're trying to retain, we're down, we're at nine at that, team members are there. Eleven to fifteen years of service for, for the county is at six, sixteen to twenty years is at three. And then the individuals like myself and Brent, there's only, there's only three of us left, so for twenty-one plus years. So the reason we put this slide in there is to, so you can kind of see where the EMS is going to be at in the future. We've got a lot that we've got to bring along to get them to where they need to be, to be able to go through and take care of the, the citizens of the county.
Joseph, have you, have you, have you looked at any other county just to see what they have? To see if, to see if it's, if it's is much different than that, what are they doing that makes it, you know, makes it maybe more seasoned or whatever?
It is, it's a lot of people that, it's about the same wherever you go, you, you, the older ones that's been there, they're, they're, they've just, they've run a lot, they've seen a lot, you look at the mental health portion of it. And there's just EMS, but it's one of those agencies or one of those careers that you go through and you take care of the sick and injured, you see this on a daily basis and it just wears on, on you over time. It is, we are fortunate to what we've got and this is a testimony to the administration staff and and what we have at EMS. We have a lot of applications coming in where other people don't and it comes back to those benefits, we're trying to recruit and get different ones. When Baptist was, when Davison Davy was talking about the program for Atrium Health, where they were doing the paramedic academy thing, we didn't know anything about it, but they do come and ride with us. And I'll say this out loud, that we've actually got three of the ones that's coming riding, that's actually putting in for part-time to come to work for us and going to try to come full-time out of that paramedic program. So we're, this is one of those odd ones, we usually lose people to the hospitals, we're actually taking people from the hospitals because of our service, yeah, for now.
Because they've taken some of ours, just, we'll go ahead and say that too, the hospital has taken some of our paramedics because of pay. So that's, we, we have to look out for that. Joseph, the three at the top are all MEs, right?
Yes.
So you know that, we've talked about that, we need to, we need to be looking at that, make sure we get that program covered before y'all retire.
Oh, we will, we'll have it done. The future wise of EMS, like I said, as the county continues to grow, we want to grow and our services to match. So that's the reason we've asked for so many people, so that we've got that coverage going through. Everything we're asking for, for the budget, is either to maintain the current status or move, move to the future. We continue to explore different opportunities, allow us to provide the services that is more cost effective. One of the things that we are doing is we're looking at the apprenticeship programs for the, with the high school. So we've got an individual that we've got in mind to come in and start that apprenticeship, I talked to Mr. Barnett about it. So we're, we're, I've got a meeting next week with the school system for, to start that. Like I said, being cost effective for the county, that QRV on the Northwest Corner, I think will be more cost effective than a whole nother crew. And then adding that truck to the eastern side to make sure, because that's where the volume is for transfers and transports. So that is all I have on mine. Any questions?
Question was, do you have an approximate number or turnkey number of what the request would cost?
I do not. I can get that to you though. Anything else? All right, thanks, Joseph. Sheriff you on next.
Okay, I'm not sure what remote cut support customer client is. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. We'll go through a couple of things quickly, promise I won't be as long as I have been in the past. Apparently I got talked to about being too long-winded, but I can talk about the sheriff's office all day long. So first thing I'd like to go through is just some activities, we're in the process of preparing our twenty twenty-four end of year report. And a couple of those numbers are available, so I wanted to show you, to your left is twenty twenty-four. CAD activities were twenty-seven thousand five hundred and one, or five hundred and eighty-one in twenty twenty-four. As you can see across a four-year spread, they've gradually increased every year. In the red is actual crime or report numbers for us. For twenty twenty-four, they were thirty-five sixty-three, as you can see, that was a drop from the two previous years, which is a good sign. Bad sign or maybe good, depending on how you look at it. The number of people booked into the jail, into the detention center for twenty twenty-four was up to one thousand and thirty-six. So we processed, one thousand and thirty-six times, we processed people into the jail in twenty twenty-four. Crime counts, you saw that, that report number down. Crime stats, whatever term you choose to call it. So if you look at the bottom, that's Davie County as a whole, we're down eight point six percent, that's a good thing. The only place, and I have to show this, is Bermuda Run shows an increase. But we've had a discussion with Bermuda Run, so Bermuda Run has the hospital, they're, they're the unlucky group because of where it's physically located, it shows in their crime stats. And that's a huge thing, because you might get called there and the event started in Kulumi. But people end up at the hospital and that's where we're dealing with them at, so that counts as an event at Bermuda Run, at the hospital.
But that Kulumi number looks good.
It Kulumi number looks really good.
I like that.
We, we've worked hard.
Yes, sir.
So the other thing about Bermuda Run, just to, to make a point, and this is true across the whole county. Percentage wise, it looks this way, but then you also for us have to look at the real numbers. So for example, Bermuda Run, five events moves that needle a huge percentage wise. So it looks like a great percentage increase, but it may not be that actual many events. For example, one of the things that caused this was, they have the sheets in Bermuda Run there on eight oh one, that we had information and patrol officers were noticing. Folks hanging out there and it, and that there was some drug activity in the parking lot, et cetera. So we did a couple of week targeted enforcement there with vehicles leaving that we knew were participating and doing traffic stops and stuff. So we had about eleven or twelve charges out of that, or people charged with various charges. Of course, in the scheme of things, that's not a lot of people, but it caused their numbers to go up, okay?
We won't blame it on Mike, we know it's not his fault.
Yeah, we thought it might be the mayor stirring up trouble.
Yeah, exactly. But again, remember, even Bermuda Run, when you take the county as a whole, cities and everything involved, we had an eight point six percent drop, that's tremendous. That's my staff working diligently and hard to protect the citizens of Davie County. So budget pressures that we're looking at. I feel like I'm telling, I feel like I'm just repeating a broken record here, listening to the other folks. Again, budget personnel cost will be a thing. I, I will say, in reference to something that the manager told you, the things you did for the current budget cycle have been tremendous for the sheriff's office. I, I can't speak to the other groups, but for us, they have been tremendous. I'll give you an example of, for five years, we were not able to, or had not been able to keep the jail staff full. Within just a couple of months of me being able to advertise some things y'all approved, the jail staff is, was full, we were able to recruit people. We currently have applications to come to work at the jail and it stayed full, so thank you. Our, our real budget pressure are two things. One, not so much an operational budget pressure, but, uh, this first one is. And that's just your general operational cost increases. Uh, again, feel like a broken record after listening to everybody else. And continued supply chain issues, everybody thinks the supply chain crisis is over after COVID. But it's not, I mean, even Joseph's presentation just a minute ago, two years to wait on an ambulance. You know, uh, sometimes if I, if I have a K nine unit and I need to build a K nine car. It's taken us sixteen to eighteen weeks to get that unit to get, build that car with for a K nine. Where in the past, they had a unit on the shelf. If you, if you were building a new K nine car, you called them and the next day they delivered it to you. It just doesn't work that way anymore across the spectrum. The other thing are operational cost increases. You've seen this before, I don't know if any of you remember it, but in twenty twenty-three, I presented this exact slide to you. Minus what's in red. So in twenty twenty-three, we'd had a cost increase of forty-two point six percent to buy a bulletproof vest. So to buy that at same vest for twenty twenty-five, our cost. To put an officer on the road and buy him a brand-new vest is now gone up to twelve hundred and twenty-four dollars each. I, I don't know where the cost increases are going to stop. And for my budget, we've, we've moved some monies around, covered different things. But I think I'm, we're to that point across the operational spectrum where I, I don't have a choice but to ask. There's, there's not a whole lot of movement left without asking you for some more money that I haven't asked for in the past. So, uh, my staff and I have been talking about that, we haven't come up with those exact numbers yet. But I'm gonna say, just rough estimate, that you're talking about a, anywhere from a twelve to eighteen percent increase on our operational line items. Just to cover these costs that keep increasing. You've seen this slide before, I used it in that same presentation. These were the percentages of cost increases for these products at that time. I'm showing you this just to say, these have continued to increase or it's maintained at this level. Which is still a higher level than they were over a three-year span. So I don't anticipate them ever going back to what they were. We're either going to stay at this higher level or continue to increase. Which again, points to what I'm saying to my operational, while we tried to cover it over a few years, hoping things would tamp down. I don't think they're going to tamp down and I've reached that point of, I don't know that I can cover some of this without some help from y'all. This is an example of a cost increase. We got this quote, uh, actually got it, uh, end of last week. So in twenty twenty-four's budget, we spent a hundred and nine thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars for the licenses. For the software that we do forensic investigations with. That same software, not adding nothing to it, same license, same everything. The quote for this year that we're gonna have to pay is a hundred and forty-one thousand and seventy-five dollars. All of my software licenses, all of those types of items are doing the same thing. I can, I could sit here till tomorrow morning at breakfast and show you, item by item, that's doing the same kind of thing. So for this year's budget, as far as big items. Of course, we'll have the normal requested items, your vehicles, uniforms, those things that are a yearly repeat request. We're currently completing several projects, uh, I think the manager pointed out some of those. Most of those bigger projects were funded through state grants. I don't anticipate getting those this year. Uh, in the past, we had never gotten much of that, it just seemed like the last couple of budget cycles for the state, we were very, very blessed and at the sheriff's office and got some of that. I don't necessarily anticipate unless we can get the detention center in there, getting any state grants. But it also has allowed me to complete a lot of projects that I don't have that necessarily big projects to ask for this year. Uh, we, grants, some reason this slide has blocked, blocked out, uh, some of the words, I apologize for that. But the third line was talking about grants, we have applied for grants. Uh, I think that's in flux, I think, uh, Robin mentioned that we got a letter, everybody. I got one from the governor's crime commission and the department of justice on the federal level. Saying we've cut all your grants off and yesterday we got one going, you can have your grants? So, um, we'll see where that goes. Uh, but we also are still working in conjunction with, uh, Suzanne brought up that domestic violence or the Center for Violence Prevention. Uh, has several grants, we, we've worked in conjunction with them, they've got us a camera, we have that in now. It's a specialized camera to take photographs of injuries and domestic violence cases. That enhances or makes that photograph more realistic to use in court. They got that for us through a grant, so that's, that's your agencies and departments working together. And looking at how to fund things jointly, not trying to, us have a camera, they have a camera, those kinds of things. This would be my really biggest project for the upcoming budget is network infrastructure and end-user computers. So the photographs actually show you our server room, the top two photographs. And then of course, just some generic pictures of the types of computers we use. Uh, Joseph alluded to this, I'm sure they have the same issue we have, as you can see the bottom two pictures. Our field units typically use a ruggedized type computer. In our world and I'm sure EMS world, uh, those things get treated a little different than you treat your computer at home. So keeping them running is a task. Uh, we have a cycle that we are on that has worked well in the past where we try to keep them under a warranty. We run them for five years under a warranty. That helps us, uh, keep things running and repaired through Dale. And they send the parts, do the repairs, don't have to worry about it. I, I don't know what the impact yet, we're looking at it and talking will be to the budget ask this year. Because past several cycles, we've done a lease program with Dale, we're a Dale shop, just. Uh, continue with that, cause that's what our infrastructure is and it just is easier to continue with that. So those lease-to-own products that we have, I have, uh, initially, we had three leases out. Two of those should be ending between this year and next budget year. So it'll be a timing issue if I can continue those lease programs. It's just moving money that we're already spending to cover another lease, so it wouldn't be a budget impact per se over what we already do. But it's all depending on the timing and how I can manage that out as we move forward with the budget process. So this, this is the real budget impact, not my budget per se, but the county's budget. And capital improvement plan. We've talked about this for several years and as the sheriff, I feel obligated to continue to bring it up. So I am now having to house inmates off-site, uh, because we're overpopulated at the detention center. So most of the places that we're dealing with are charging us forty-five to sixty dollars a day. And that leaves us still responsible for all medical transport and additional inmate activities that might occur. I, I've talked to Sheriff Smitherman in December. We've had a problem probably for the past year with the female population being really overpopulated. It is re, it had reached the point, initially I was just like, okay, we'll deal with it, we're moving forward. But the state really started getting on us. Uh, they've written us up, I think the last four years for it. Uh, the last three inspections in the last year, they've really been on us about it. It's also started to affect the staff of having to deal with them, uh, being overpopulated like that. So Sheriff Smitherman agreed to give me eight female beds as long as his population didn't grow over that. Uh, so for January, we've averaged housing five females in Yakon County. He gave me the cheapest rate, forty-five dollars a day. So that's two hundred and twenty-five dollars a day for five inmates, that's what we've averaged in January. If I have to do that for the continuity of the year, which I do not anticipate our population going down any, I anticipate it to continue to go up. That would come to eighty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars to house five people per year in Yakon County. Again, I think you'll see that number increase, cause if my population goes up, I have nowhere to put them. My report this morning, I had seventy-seven total inmates, only have seventy-two beds total. So. This is a six-month snapshot, the reason I chose this is, again, in last year's budget, y'all approved bringing, uh, pre-trial release in-house. So I have a person assigned as a pre-trial person. Uh, you can see these were, uh, these, this is a snapshot ever, basically every Friday. There's a couple of dates during holidays and stuff where I didn't pull the data. I didn't, when I built this slide for y'all, it didn't really affect the average across the board, just looking at it. So I, I didn't go back and pull it, I just built the slide for you. The orange, uh, shows you our snapshot of who was in jail that day, the number. The blue shows you the number of people I actually have on pre-trial release. So if y'all would not, if we didn't have the pre-trial program, you could have added that number, those people would be in jail. But what it also shows you is that pre-trial is about maxed out. I mean, one person handling the pre-trial program. Twenty-six people, twenty-four, twenty-five, as you can see, which is what his average is going to be across there. That's about as much as he can do. It also reaches to the point of, I have folks in jail, there are criteria that you're available to get out on pre-trial. Or criteria that says you can't get out on pre-trial. So he's, he's got the majority of folks out that he can. And even if he could get more out, I don't think he has the capacity to manage them by himself.
Sheriff?
Yes.
How long do the, uh, people that are in pre-trial tend to stay in the jail compared to, uh?
They, they're gonna stay in the jail, if, if they're not out on pre-trial, they're gonna be in the jail the same amount of time as they're. As the people that are currently there. So our average stay right now is somewhere between twenty-five to eighty-five days. Now, having said that, I have a subset of those that have been there for several years and have not gone to trial yet. So it's just a fact of life, I'm not the only sheriff that's suffering that problem. Uh, unfortunately, I don't get to set the trial schedules for the court system. Or they would be getting speedy trials and moved away to the state prison system. But I don't get to say so in that, so, and I can't repeat what I think of that in front of y'all.
Nor can we.
But is that right, your highest number there for this particular window of time was ninety-four?
Yes, yes. And, and I will tell you, some of you, uh, were on the board back when we, in the eight, twenty eighteen seventeen, when we were looking at this thing. And some of you may remember that at that point, we were routinely reaching a hundred and five hundred and ten inmates. I think that's where we're headed back, COVID, COVID was a big interrupter and changed those numbers drastically. We've recovered, so I showed you our crime rates, if you go back and look, it scared me when I went back and looked at it, uh, when I was building the slides. If you look from twenty-one to twenty-two, our crime rates went up like a hundred and eighty percent, a hundred and ninety percent, or twenty-two to twenty-three, excuse me. But then when you go look, that was in the COVID time where everything bottomed there. I mean, people were scared, even the bad guys were scared to go do anything originally, you know? Till everybody kind of figured out, oh, we can survive this and.
Nobody was out there catching.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe that.
So, but then it all shot back up and it, it's scary when you look at the numbers, if you don't realize or don't think about that timeframe happening, but anyway. So this is a report I get every Friday, uh, I forward it to management, uh, just so they'll have it. The one on the left is the pre-trial report, so that shows you, this was the report for last Friday. So last Friday, he had twenty-five active participants. But he shows me everything that he's done, uh, what those folks are doing. As you can see under services, he's making sure they're getting these services if they need them. So drug treatments, uh, psychiatric services for some of them. Uh, he has some of them on a telephone check-in, some of them in-person check-in. Uh, seven of them are on electronic house arrest, so he's out checking on those. Um, how many supervision days, how many doing educational or vocational case management where he's doing some job training, those kind, or making sure they're getting that. Uh, only eleven of those folks. Now, he's going back and looking at forty-nine was his total number over the year. Somebody may be in pre-trial over months, depending on how long it takes to, for them to finalize or get their court case heard in court, okay? So he's had forty-nine total people so far in the physical year. But day jails or days in jail are what he calls jail days. He has, uh, saved the county an estimated three hundred and eighty-one thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars. If you round up that ninety-nine cent, okay? So he's more than paid for his salary, more than paid for it. The report to the right is a report from our medical provider, uh, I just wanted to show you this just to highlight. Uh, I, I hear all the time how we have a terrible jail and we don't help people. But as you can see, uh, highlighted three hundred and eight of our inmates got mental health services on-site. Hundred and seventy-one got to see a doctor or physician on-site. Four hundred and forty-seven got to see the medical staff and sick calls, so we provide just. Just like going to your doctor, they can submit a thing and they get to come up and visit the medical staff. That's a nurse or the, the physicians are there on certain days. If it's something that needs to be elevated to see the physician, you can see they get to do that, a hundred and seventy-one of them did. Uh, we had thirty-five that were on a suicide watch, uh, twenty-three that went through detox protocols. Uh, five hundred and twenty-seven of them, we administered medications to day and night, uh, for the entire length of their stay there. We gave them their medications that were required.
Sheriff, is this also starting July first?
Yes, yep, they're showing you your physical year. Okay? Uh, no, I'm sorry, let me, uh, pre-trial is the physical year, this Southern Health report is the, the calendar year for twenty twenty-four.
So that's all of last year?
Yeah, that's the calendar year for twenty twenty-four, what medical services were provided.
Thank you.
So, uh, all of you have been to the jail, you've seen it, you. I, I think you understand the issues we have. So I can tell you, uh. So I can tell you, uh, since we've started talking about some of this stuff in the last, uh, three years or four years, uh, we've spent one-point-four-million dollars just keeping the jail running, doing the upgrades where things are breaking and falling apart, et cetera. The most recent thing that's happened is smoke evacuation system. This frustrates me to no end. And I'm gonna throw Brad in here. He's laughing at me because I get mad every time we discuss this. So we get inspected routinely two, three, four times a year by the state. Current jail we have was built in the year two thousand. For twenty years, we passed inspections, no issues. This past summer, we, they did their inspection. We got wrote up for our smoke evacuation system. What is it? What are you talking about? So there is a requirement for you to have a smoke evacuation system in the jail. I never knew it didn't work. Uh, then I discover, thanks to Brad, that when they built it in twenty-twenty, or twenty-two thousand, excuse me, uh, the buttons are on the walls that you would hit to start the system, but there's no system in the, internally, it was never installed.
Hmm.
So for some reason, the state let that pass for twenty-some years and, and we'll talk about my opinion of that in just a second. But now we're having to, uh, go back and do that because they've written us up. So so far, we had to have an engineer come to design the system. Brad, uh, this is not my budget, this is so, but it's a cost to the county, it's an impact. And I'm responsible for the jail statutorily. I, I feel I have to tell y'all, I have to bring these things up. Because it's gonna, eventually, it's gonna hurt the county as a whole, if you know what I'm, anyway. So so far, Brad has spent fourteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars, is that right, Brad? On just the engineering service to look at how to design the system. I have no idea what it's gonna cost us to install a system. We met, uh, I guess it's two months ago with the engineer, when he showed us his designs. And his answer to Brad, when Brad asked for an estimate was, well, I don't know yet, it'll take me a while to figure out how to do all this and what it's gonna cost you to do it. Because the smoke evacuation system is tied in into your heating and air system, which is, should be installed when you're installing your heating and air. So now you're gonna have to, as I understand it, in my layman's mind, uninstall a lot of that stuff to put the system in, then then reinstall it. Well, now you're talking about heating and air systems that are twenty-five years old, opposed to modern smoke evacuation systems. So how do you make them work together? Uh, then the engineer brings up a secondary issue. Quit laughing, Brad. Of, okay, we get it in, we go to test it because the state has to come and test it and approve it. To do that, the pod, if you're do, if you have an inmate that starts a fire somehow in a pot, the, the reason for this is you can hit the button and it will evacuate the smoke from the pot, right? So you have to seal that pot. Y'all have been to my jail. Do you realistically, any of you sitting there, think I can seal a pot? With the problems I have with doors and windows and? But if it doesn't seal and the state's there to inspect it, then they're gonna write us up for every reason it didn't seal and we're gonna have to go fix all those things. So I can't, I asked Brad for an estimate and he just laughed at me. He's like, I can't tell you what it's gonna cost. So I can't give you an estimate. This is where we're at. Again, in red, I've highlighted it in red because these are problem areas that we deal with every day. Uh, doors fell into work properly, can't buy parts for the doors, can't get door locks anymore. I've got, uh, I'm sorry, remind me of the number, Ryan toilets? Twenty-four, okay, thank you. Twenty-four toilets that were installed in the nineteen-fifties in that old section. Uh, you no longer can buy those type of toilets. Nothing that connects, so if you replace one, you have to rig the whole connections, hook it to pipes in a different way. So that has become a nightmare for Brad's staff. But all of those twenty-four toilets are at this point rusting and leaking and failing to, beginning to fail. So that will be a problem. At the rate I'm going, all twenty-four of them will fail at one time. Again, windows that are, need to be replaced. Uh, I think Brad's already done some preliminary work, even prior to finding out about the smoke evacuation system for windows that need replacing. You've all saw that I have one section where the walls separated and coming apart. Then just for operational purposes, I have no proper isolation areas. I have, uh, staff that are currently have filed workers' comp claims because inmates are throwing feces on them. Uh, I can't isolate the female, the inmate. I have some video that I'll be happy to show you, I just can't show it in public, uh, so he, um, you'd like to see that. Mark and I actually talked about that for a little bit and then some things happened and we didn't get to do that, but, uh, there's no staff facility, so when that happens.
You can't cool him, luk him?
Uh, so, no, I can't, I'll just say it out loud. Uh, I can't show you the video because it's a female inmate who has taken all her clothes off and decided to back up in a corner and she's throwing, uh, dirty water and, uh, urine and feces on other inmates, on the staff, on anybody that turns into a fight with her. Uh, she's managed to use those products to grease herself down. So anyway, we'll move on. Uh, just many, many, uh, we've had these discussions, y'all know my problems, so. I'm not, I'm not gonna open this, I included it. Yeah, I sent it to the sta, uh, to your staff, so you have this available to you. You can click on this link and it'll show you what a new jail, what our plan would look like. I would caution you that what I put in here is the digital copy I had. It's not the final, final version of our, the actual blueprint plan, but there's very minor difference. This would give you a, a, there's a couple, like, the medical things redesigned a little bit, but you'd see how it would be designed, cells, pods, et cetera, okay? And then I included a few pictures of what new facilities would look like. Uh, this is what I, if you build what we've proposed would look, this is what the pods would look like. Uh, as you can see, these pods have doors where nobody can throw anything on a person. Uh, it gives me the ability to isolate inmates, et cetera, that I don't have now. I'll move along. So let's look at this picture particularly right here. I think this is, in, in talks with you all in the past, this has come up about cell count and bed count. When I say, well, I would have a hundred and thirty-four beds in the new facility. And questions come up, well, could we reduce the beds? When I say that, that doesn't mean I'd have a hundred and thirty-four cells. That means I'd only have seventy-some cells. So then we talk about reducing bed space again. So if you look at this picture that I'm showing you right here, this is what the inside of a cell would look like. So they would bring those cells in, Brad went out of state and looked, we've looked at the different ways they build cells. This is the cheapest, most efficient way to do it. They prefab those, they build them, they bring them in, set them in with a crane. So that's a self-contained unit. But if you look at the picture right here, uh, this picture gives you an example of how that's done, including the beds. So it's built into the wall, it's a part of that prefab unit. So when you say you're gonna take a bed out and do a single cell, if you look on that drawing, if you open that drawing I show you, it shows some row of single cells. Well, one of the things that's wrong about that drawing is we went back and made those all double-bed cells. Because when you order them all en masse, you can order the two beds and it's a couple hundred dollars to add that second bed. But if you try to go back later in the future, hopefully, lo- long after we're gone, but I'm, I don't wanna leave somebody stuck in the future with what I'm stuck with right now. You know, it's gonna cost thousands of dollars to try and go back and add that bed. So it's cheaper to go ahead and have the two beds, even if I don't have anybody laying in the bed right now. But then we're prepared for the future, we're ready to go and we did it at a cheaper cost. But that's, that's what that would look like. Uh, some of these are videos and I'm not gonna play them for you. They're there if you want to pull them up and look at them. They're just basically videos that show you current jails. There are several jails across the state that we went and looked at that are built off that same, off the same vision of what our jail is. Um, this bottom picture would be what the upper control panel looks like. As you can see, every window is looking down into a separate pod, so your control area can see everything, control everything that's going on, see what's happening in every pod. I said I wasn't gonna play them. Uh, so this, this, I tried to show, uh, uh, your booking area, so the booking area we have in our current facility doesn't allow you for containment or isolation. And we have an area that we call isolation, you all have seen it, it's the nineteen-thirties area of the jail. But it's not truly isolation, because it's those old, it's like you see in a movie, the old bars and the, so inmates can still talk to each other, they can throw things at you, those kinds of things. So most facilities, including our design, would show you booking, you'll come in, you'll have a control area. So this, this, uh, lower picture right here is one jail we looked at. This is the, uh, Stokes County Jail. All these other pictures are from a tour we did at Stokes County. So this is their control area and booking. It's kind of an uprise, just like the picture underneath it. It's an area where their computers are, where they enter data when they're booking folks in. But as you can see, that area allows them to see all the containment cells. So one officer or two officers in the booking area can watch all those folks that need to be watched or have fifteen-minute checks or twenty-four-hour monitoring from where they're at. I don't have that capability right now, which we also get in trouble for. But as you can see, if you look on the back wall, there are just rows of cells in the booking area. They're all have large windows where you can monitor them. This is a section of cells back there, but it has an extra exterior wall. So if you have an inmate who's yelling, screaming, cussing, those kinds of things, you can use one of those cells. There's an extra wall that eliminates that person from interfering with operations or causing you problems. Uh, there would be cells, even in our jail, if you look at that plan, you'll see it where if somebody comes in and you suspect they're sick, it's a neutral air cell where that air doesn't circulate throughout the jail, it evacuates it. So if somebody's sick, they can't spread disease. Uh, it even has a facility for those folks, like we were talking about a minute ago. Doesn't have a toilet in it, it's got a hole in the floor, that's it. And that whole cell is designed where I can go in with a water hose and just wash it down and be done with it. I don't have that capability right now, so. So those, that's, uh, the conclusion, let me make sure I didn't have a, that's the conclusion of my presentation, I'll be happy to try and answer any questions if you have any. Sorry to be so graphic in my presentation.
When was that built in Stokes?
Uh, they opened a year and a half, a year ago, opened a year ago.
Is their design similar to yours or was it way different?
No, their design is exactly like mine, it's the star design with the upper thing looking down. Their booking area, I mean, it's, it's extremely similar. The only difference is they moved their, they have a second control area. They have a whole different section for females with two female pods. So they have a second, almost like a second jail for females. Uh, but they're ha, they have an inmate in Stokes County, they had an inmate count, Ryan, correct me if I was wrong, six-hundred and some people when we went to tour the jail before they'd moved. They had an inmate count of like six-hundred inmates, yeah. Yeah. We're not there, and I, I don't ever wanna be there, not in my time, anyway.
This is a practical timeline. Um, Sheriff, the, if this board decided that, you know, the jail had to be built and we had our financing in place July one, twenty-twenty-five, so you go to design, you go through all that, when would you anticipate having a functional jail? And part of the reason I'm asking is some of these things you're talking about, while we don't know the price tag, it's gonna be consequential and you're getting ready to just flush it.
Exactly.
So if we said, all right, if we could get a timeframe, and I'm making stuff up here, you know, three years, I don't know. Could we buy enough time with the state not have to?
So, let me answer that, I said a minute ago, we'd talk about my opinion of something. So there are other sheriffs facing similar issues with overcrowding and those kinds of things. And, and I'm gonna use a neighboring county, Davidson County, it's facing, they're, they're very, they're more overcrowded than we are. But they have not wrote Sheriff Simmons up in the same as they have began to write us up. But they have a plan, you know, we had a plan, we were moving forward, we were drawing the plans and we didn't really get wrote up when we were telling them that. I mean, they'd give us warnings, but, okay, you're moving forward, you're working on a plan. Sheriff Simmons is the same way, they, they're a little ahead of us, they have a plan, they have the land, they have start dates for construction. He ran into a problem with the US Postal Service because they rented a building where the county was gonna build the jail and they refused to leave, so they had to go to court. But the county attorneys, they were in court, they were in the process to do all that. So he hasn't faced all that. We've, we've reached a point because of what happened to us and our timing and the cost issues of, I, I reached a point where when they come back, it's like, well, I, I can't tell you we're, I can't tell you we're progressing, I don't know when we're gonna build it. You, you know, I don't know what our, and I think what they're doing, just like this, for twenty-some years, they didn't write us up for this, smoke evacuation thing. But now I think it's, a- a- and it's my opinion, I can't prove it, I can't, you know, there's nothing you could ever do to say anything, but I think it's their warning of, hey, you're not moving forward with a new system, so we're gonna get stricter and stricter if, if that. Now, again, I, I gotta say, I'm saying it in public, but it is my opinion only, okay? Does that answer your question to some degree? The other part of your question is, Brad, what did we, about two and a half years before the jail?
Just your point there, you have, yeah, it's running, ready to go, you know, the next three years, probably still twenty-eight or thirty-four months before being in that new complete jail. And you're looking six years out, so. Something in the next three years, probably. Twenty-eight or thirty-four months of construction.
So, so what would be the, I get that, but what would be the three years before we started? Could you, I didn't, I didn't follow all that.
I didn't follow that part.
I didn't follow that part either.
No, I was saying, if we were ready, we, if we, if we were ready to go theoretically, July one of twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, you're looking probably twenty twenty-nine to make that full transition over into a new jail.
Okay.
Uh, just to add note to that, it's gonna be in my presentation following the break, but I spoke to Mosley yesterday. There has been some building code changes since our design. Uh, so you're looking at probably another four to six months of changing our design based on building codes and ADA accessibility. From our current plans we have now.
Do you know how long it took Stokes to build theirs, or the timetable?
I know from the time, based on talking to Sheriff, or to talking to Steve, was, uh, uh, he took over as sheriff. While it was under construction, and then I think it had been under construction for a year and a half, when he took over. Took him about another year and a half to open it. They partially opened it as they moved along, they are, this past year, they fully opened, I think they moved the males first and then finished the female pods. But again, their population was substantially larger than ours. So there was a lot more work to do for them. And they also built, in the, in that building. Stokes was just not a jail like we would be doing, they built a brand-new nine-one-one center, a brand-new training type area. And it was all under one roof in the building, so took them longer to finish that building than.
Did, did they, did they get any funding, do, or do you know if they got any funding from any source other than the county?
I, I, I can't answer that about Stokes. We looked at that last year, uh, I think, it, do you remember we looked at that? From state grants, there, I think there were about fourteen sheriffs across the state that got funding for, uh, jail projects. Cleveland County, uh, and I've asked him how he did it. They spent a hundred and twelve million, if I remember correctly, for a jail project and a new sheriff's office. They got a hundred and ten million of it funded by the state. If I could figure out how to do that. He just looked at me and said, I'm just lucky, was all he would tell me, basically. But if you think about it, the, uh. Leader of the House, the State House at that time, was from that sheriff's county, so.
What are the odds?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
On a jail, can you, if you chose to fund it out of your pocket before you had funding, could you go ahead and move forward with design? While you're waiting on funding? You can, okay, thank you.
Don't you already have the design, and the, I mean, you've already had it designed at one dollar?
I learned something that I did not know in this, you can have the design, it can be approved, it can, but if you don't move forward with building it, correct me if I'm wrong. It goes away and you have to get it re-approved, right?
And we spent two million dollars on that?
Yes, ma'am.
And now it has, has to be completely respent?
Not completely redone, but it has to be some work to it, right?
So just to resubmit, not a complete redo.
Yes.
Anything else?
Alright, well, let's take just a short break here, and then we'll come back, thanks, Sheriff.
Good, alright. Brad, you and Robin, let's, we'll get started here.
I just have one statement to make, and I'll let Brad continue on. So if, with this capital improvement plan, we have what you, you'll see in a minute, is that the sources we've identified. We haven't completely run it through our model, so we're still in the process of identifying how we're gonna fund everything. So just keep that in mind of that, you know, we're still in a very much a, a draft stage.
Like Commissioner's chair, uh, just to give us a quick rundown, a reminder of what qualifies for CIP. You know, those are projects that meet or exceed two hundred thousand dollars or span over multi-years. And also, I know we brought up last year of kind of, uh, the timeline, we gave directors submit these type of projects, so from October, December. Uh, we have that open to the director to submit projects where there were capital facility projects. Uh, so that was our timeline of getting this information in. This will be a slide that you've seen from years past, uh, we do have a few new projects, but a lot of them is just redundant of what you saw last year. But if you have any questions, stop me throughout. Here's the overview for the additional of, uh, twenty thirty. We've ranked these in, I don't believe any particular order, except just kind of ranking them, how they fall in the fiscal year of funding. Uh, we've got parking lot paving, Brock Center roofing, which is a new addition, uh, former HHS building demolition. Library HVAC replacement, which is an addition, and the library ADA entrance renovations, uh, slated for next year's, uh, funding. Now, each, each one of these will be explained a little bit further, uh, but you can see there, the big eye catcher, kind of like the toe tag on Suzanne's from. Uh, slide there in the middle is a thirty-seven million dollar detention project. Uh, that same year, you're looking at pre-trial renovations, EMS storage, Davie County Community Car, uh, Park splash pad resurfacing. And then on out in the out years is a Station Five EMS, uh, the Civic Ag Center, and HHS Secure Parking. Next fiscal year parking, looks like, uh, the Senior Center, the Dodge, and the Community Park remainder of the large lot. These are all following our focus area growth and infrastructure. These are the three parking lots identified, so the DC Park is the large parking lot there at the main entrance of the old high school there. Uh, so that's the center parking, during construction, we done the outer perimeter, uh, for heavy asphalt. The next one is the Dodge Building, located, those houses, public utilities, uh, development services, and then the resurfacing of the Senior Center. This is the Brock Center Roofing, uh, we're having quite a few issues there with the areas highlighted in green. Uh, if you know, driving by there, the green surface there on the south side is extremely steep sloping roof. Uh, but that roof is just over twenty years old, and it's starting to show a lot of wear and tear. And that's just from the speed of water and rain, uh, deteriorating those shingles. Uh, we've probably have at least ten fixes a year, we've got to call in and try to locate, find leaks. Uh, it's leaking in the auditorium and there in the lobby areas. Of course, you're familiar with the old Health and Human Services Building, nothing to expand on there that you haven't seen. Uh, the capital improvement plan for the library, um, this project is renovation for ADA issues, uh, with the current entrance. At the, the main entrance there at the public library. Now, this will be a new configuration of the ramp and stairs, a larger footprint for the landing, electronic door openers. The way it's configured now and designed when it was built, uh, we cannot get the ADA requirements for turnaround at the top of the ramp. Or the electronic push buttons to apply those, and then you're also bringing that stairwell directly into line of traffic and travel. So that would be reconfigured. Also on there, uh, the HVAC at the library, uh, that is our oldest remaining HVA system in the county. Uh, so that's an early nineties unit system, uh, there's six units out there, five or six units. We've been maintaining them for preventative maintenance, they're running, we do a lot of work the last three years of keeping those running. Uh, the issue that would concern me is, once they go down, our lead time could be twenty-five or thirty months for getting new units. Uh, and you know that in the library, we house the history, which is records, artifacts, that we've got to keep at a certain temperature and moisture content. So that, that is a concern, is when these units fail, is the lead time to get them replaced. As JD's mentioned before, uh, here's the, uh, Golden Goose or Black Sheep, either way you wanna look at it, but here's the Detention Center and the design. This is our current design we have of record, uh, like I said, there wouldn't be any major changes to the design or layout, it's just bringing it up for ADA compliance. I haven't dove into that with the architect to see what that consists of, uh, but he didn't have any concerns of a major redesign. But that, that thirty-seven million dollars is an increase from. Last year, I think we were at thirty-five something last year, uh, speaking with the architect yesterday. He was comfortable with holding that number and not decreasing it, depending on if we're looking a year or two out of bidding this project. So he's comfortable that that number would be sufficient, but he didn't feel comfortable with saying, no, you can drop that. Also on there is the pre-trial renovations, uh, this will be renovations to the old NARC building on the jail campus. That would be moving the current pre-trial from the old warding, warden's house to NARC and updating it, so. With the increased flow of traffic through there, even if we do move forward with the new jail construction, that NARC building pre-trial would be existing on the campus, that building is to stay regardless.
Oh, I thought everything was going under one roof.
No. So the, the NARC building, uh, would, was gonna be a facility that would stay after the construction of the new jail, demolition of the old jail. That NARC facility was gonna stay.
Quick question on this, is there any, I mean. Because sometimes it doesn't save any money to do this, is there? What kind of, is there any scale thing, they'll say it was, we built it to be a hundred and thirty-seven beds, or we did whatever. I mean, is there any noticeable cost savings whatsoever?
As the current design, we have VE'd, cut this thing down to bare bones. Uh, the issue when you have, start adding or removing beds, there's some cost savings. But when you look for future use and you have to add those beds back, the core part of the jail, which is administrative, the kitchen facility, the laundry. All that has to be built to your max capacity. So, you know, this one's built for a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five core with this amount of beds. Cuz that's just the way it works out for size and square footage, so if you, if you wanna say, well, we're only gonna do a fifty-bed facility. But we've planned to have future build outs, that core's still gonna remain that size because you can't come back in and add square footage to your kitchen and all that area cuz it's within inside that footprint. So you're, it's a minimum cost savings just to remove beds.
Have you made these reductions since we saw the plans that day at the jail, the last time?
That, that day you were at the jail, we, we have already VE'd it.
Okay.
If you really go through that plan, there is nothing fancy in that plan, it is bare minimums of what you would need to do stuff.
So it would be, I mean, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but because of the core areas, you're not getting a lot back for saying we're making it smaller inmate-wise.
No.
Proportionally, at least.
Uh, next, we've got the enclosed storage space, uh, for EM, uh, this is just a basic storage facility. You know, this is gonna be minimum electrical power for doors, probably some security, uh, this is nothing fancy, no office space. This is just to bring our EM units and out, outdoor storage stuff under shelter. Uh, next, we have the, uh, resurfacing for the water park, um, that's a cost of replacing the existing concrete surface to a new safety surface and to help prevent injuries and falls and slips. This scored high on our matrix based on some regulations and legislations that are changing in Paul's world of these type of surfacing and these type of play areas. Uh, we got EMS Station Five, uh, like Joseph touched on earlier, you know, we're still trying to identify some property for this location. Uh, this layout is similar to, uh, the new Station Four, uh, we've redacted a, a bay and cut down on the number of beds. Here's a conceptual plan or idea for what the Ag Center could be or look like. Uh, I know they've had a meeting earlier this week to get that committee kicked off and running to, uh, see what's good for Davie County. So this is just a placeholder in dollar amounts, you know, the estimated cost, uh, is gonna be based on what that committee or what they decide is the footprint they, they wanna see and what the amenities they wanna see, uh, but for basic footprint, site work, utilities. That eight millions is probably a good starting number to get you your basis. Uh, lastly is the addition of the HHS Secure Parking, this is the parking located behind the Government Center, uh, it's highlighted there in red. This was in our original design for going into that facility, uh, this is one of the areas that we're VE'd, uh, to get in that facility under budget or at budget. Uh, so this would just be the addition to that complete build out behind that facility for HHS Secure Parking. Um, just for reference, that gate down there in the bottom right, uh, that would be over there near the current Fleet Building. So you'd access by the Fleet Building around to the low area there, that was not graded out, uh, that's where this parking is located. That's all the slides I have, I do have some additional comments I'd like to make before I take some questions, just some updates from last year's projects that rolled off. Um, one of those being Musco Lighting, um, those poles are up, you ride down by the park today, you're gonna see lights up, they won't be on, but they're up. And, uh, we've got paving completed at EMS Station One, uh, we're waiting to, uh, the weather to warm up to do in front of the community park. We've had that awarded since, uh, late August, and then Hurricane Aline hit, uh, that paving company went to assist Western North Carolina, and they've been busy at other places. So it's kind of delayed us from getting ours, but we did get Station One's large parking lot completed, uh, we're waiting on the rest of the park. Uh, courthouse update, uh, we are under asbestos abatement right now, uh, they have completed a bait on the courtroom side. The courtroom is almost completely demoed, uh, they have transitioned over to the nineteen seventy section, uh, over like, uh, the estates and stuff like that from the second floor, uh, they're baiting that this week, the remainder this week. And we look to finish demo and completion probably, I'm gonna say probably middle to end of February, the demo will be complete. Uh, so probably gonna give you another two weeks before I set up something with Brian for y'all to go in, maybe just look, see what's going on. Uh, but it is a ma- a major drastic change upstairs there, I mean, you won't recognize it when you walk in, so. Also, we've got, uh, what JD alluded to with HVAC, uh, he brought up every point and concern that we have. Uh, we had set some money aside to start this and had a few other projects listed, thinking that it was gonna be a simple fix. But as you can tell, it, it could be a major renovation out there. The last report I did have from the design team was, you know, we're probably gonna come in somewhere at two ninety-five to three hundred thousand dollars in our bid to get this fixed. Like I said, once we get it fixed and get it tested, we could be doing more work with the door closures, uh, seals, door frames. We don't know that now until we get the system built and get it tested. So we do have potential expansion of scope there. We've also have, uh, some paint, some shower and window issues out there, and then like he alluded to, that all the maintenance. all the maintenance and work orders we have out there. I've got a, I've got one person on staff that that's where they stay all the time. Uh, he's not able to cover any other buildings except the jail. So that's all I've got. Any questions?
Sheriff, in terms of the max population that you run at the detention center, not counting pre-trial, what do you, wha- what would that be? I mean, go back as far as a year or two, you at seventy or eighty?
Eighty-four. So my average daily population for twenty twenty-four was seventy-five.
Okay.
You can't just count that. Uh, you can't just look at that and go, okay, well, we can only build a hundred beds. Cause I have to classify people and I'm currently getting in trouble on a regular basis for not being able to properly classify people. For example, I can't keep sex offenders with this group and I can't keep this group with this group. So if you have the pods, uh, you might have five empty beds in a pod, but that's a classification unit also. So you have to look at all of that when you're talking about bed space and how you're designing it, your isolation. You know, your isolation units might, they count as a bed space or a, a cell, but they're an isolation unit. It's not a housing unit per se. But you count them in that count. So if you're saying reduce bed space, then you might be taking housing units away, but I can't house somebody in an isolation unit all the time without a reason. If they're a general population inmate, it's not causing a problem, I have to put them in a housing unit. What if you take all my bed, all my beds away? And then the other part of that is, again, I, I said it when I was up there, having to deal with what we're having to, I mean, let's be honest, it's, it's, it was built in two thousand. It should be, it should have lasted us longer than it's lasting us. You know, and I, I don't want to leave future generations of this county having to deal with it again in twenty years like we're having to deal with it. So we're trying to plan for it to have a, at least a forty to fifty year lifespan.
So Brad, in terms of the, the comment you made about the proportionality of the kitchen, those kinds of things. If you reduced the, the, uh, number of beds from the one forty-seven that you had, let's just say, this is my figure, I'm just, I down to one ten, would you then reduce the proportionality of that kitchen so that that would cause the overall cost of the project to go down? Cause the, then you wouldn't be building a kitchen for a hundred and fifty, be building a kitchen for one ten.
Depending on whether you're planning to add addition, those units back in in the future for potential growth or issues that you may have. But that's, when you start reducing that core size there, then we're going into redesign. So yeah, I can take a wing off, you know, so he said it was more like a, it's a spoke, it's a spoke design. So you've got that command center and you've got the wings coming off. You can remove one of those fairly easy in architectural work. But the core, making that square footage, well, that changes the whole footprint, the footings. So then you're going in back into redesign. So then you've got redesign dollars to get your VE, which would be an substantial savings possibly, but then you're never going to add those beds back in.
Is that, is that because basically that wouldn't fit for an expansion because the kitchen has to have X amount of square footage?
Correct. And unfortunately, I'll probably still be here in twenty years, so I don't want to be able to.
Come on, Brad.
Others?
Just to walk down memory lane, cause I don't remember. The, didn't we do some pretty major paving at the, uh, at the rec center, the old high school site a few years ago?
Uh, during construction, we did. Uh, I can go back. I don't know if you could see it in the.
I see the darker area.
Yeah, you see the dark area there?
Yeah.
That is the portion that was not paved. The light gray was done during construction. Uh, so this is just getting that center core repaid. That, that was existing from the old high school, which I think, speaking of Michael Spielman, it was done in two thousand and ten, I believe. Uh, that center parking lot.
I, I'm remembering some paving we were going to do for the sheriff to practice defensive driving. Is that what that was?
That was part of that area. That was the additional down here, just off the screen here. We, we captured that to reconfigure that for his cone layout and marking, but we have never went back and paved that. But it was, that funding was used to expand the parking, uh, toward six oh one Salisbury Street. We initially just had the loop going around like this. With the addition of those fundings from state, we were able to take out these islands and expand it all the way to that front curve there at the front. Uh, get his distance there. So that's, it's, uh, I think three point two five acres of paving right there. That's a large parking lot.
Anything else? All right. Hey, thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
All right, Johnny.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for having us and giving us this opportunity to, um, go with you over some of our budgets and what we planned. So we're going to start out with utilities and some of the budget requested capital improvements for this year. And, um, what we're requesting is just some vehicles and operations. So again, we're replacing vehicles as we do on a yearly basis. We just keep rotating them. Um, and then another utility body service truck. As you can see from the years on these vehicles, we're rotating them out. We're getting pretty good use out of them. So. Um, and then of course we're going to do some UTV replacement, um, for, we use these UTVs around Sparks, around the water plants to maintain the sites. And then also we have one for the, um, operation maintenance guys to check sewer line right of ways and things like that. So kind of save some of the wear and tear and beat on our truck. Now for water treatment, Sparks Ray Water Treatment Plant, we're going to place some of these valve actuators on the filters. Um, in, in more or less, this is just maintenance. This is just something that we continue to do. Um, this plant's getting older and older and we don't want it to fall off the radar like Coolome did. Um, we want to continue to maintain these valves and filters as we go forward, moving in. That comes with the Ross bout, rail valve rebuilds and then the effluent flow meters. Um, utility projects. So I wanted to go over some of the projects that we're still in process with, which asset inventory assessment for the wastewater system. This has been going on since May twenty twenty-three. So we're about to wrap this up. We're awarded four hundred thousand dollar grant for this assessment in the sewer collection system. Basically we've gone through this whole sewer collection system and we're going to, this tells us where we're getting eye to eye, um, different things. But we did some flow monitoring, smoke testing, TTV and CTV inspections. And this is going to give us an improved data set for our mapping and accuracy. Um, there's been a lot of things that as long as I've been here, I've never seen that we have found. So that's a, always a good sign. Um, we're in the final stages of it. We've still got to do some of the, uh, inspections with the CT, with the TTV or the CTV cameras. So we're getting to that part now and then we'll, um, we'll create an asset management plan out of that. And that asset management plan will help us produce a CIP moving forward in the future years. Um, Dedmon Road Pump Station Rehabilitation. So this is one of our main pump stations that, um, basically moves water through the system. It's responsible for distributing water throughout the county. We did a joint water model with Moxville, uh, several months ago. And it demonstrated the need to upgrade the station before providing water to Moxville. This modification is now a requirement to ensure future needs for both the town and county are met. This project will not only update deteriorating components, but will also enhance the system resiliency through directional flow capabilities. When we say that right now, if we turn this pump station on, we can only move water from Coolome to Bigsby, that area. Um, so the way our system is designed, it's designed to move the water completely in a circle. So we want to move this water. We don't want it to set. So right now, if something happens on the southern side of county, um, with Coolome, then we're kind of just sitting there. We can't move that water back from Sparks. So when we build this, we'll be able to move water from Coolome towards Bigsby area and then from Bigsby area back to Coolome. We've set this, the money aside for this in our capital improvement plan through the years. So, um, we have the money now. We'll start this upgrade pretty quickly. We're probably at about seventy-five percent design right now. And we may have to purchase just a little bit more property from where it sits now because the footprint of the building will be a little bigger. So the Coolome Wastewater Treatment Plant, um, again, we put this in a capital project because this is going to be a, it's going to be a little bigger project than what we like to do in our operations budget. So, um, this is clarifier, these clarifiers, JD, um, we settle out the solids. This is like a final treatment to get the solids out of wastewater and anything that's floating grease, anything that's not biodegradable. So this thing spins and spins and spins. It never quits. And the arm on it is thirty, thirty, thirty-one foot. Yeah. So it spins twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. It never stops and it's been doing that since probably the late eighties. So, um, we're seeing some problems in them now. So we're going to rebuild one, uh, next, next year and then year after that we'll be to, uh, rebuild the other. Aeration and mixing rehabilitation. What we'll do here is we've got aerators and mixers in these basins at our wastewater treatment plant. And the aerators are basically putting ox- oxygen in this wastewater and the mixers are keeping it from settling out. So in this, in this process, we want to keep the oxygen and the bacteria moving active. That's what helps us reduce the solids. Um, and then a digester interior concrete rehabilitation. We're looking at repairing the concrete. Um, you know, you deal with a lot of very harmful gases in these digesters because this is where sludge goes to get out of the plant. So it's basically turning septic in here. So you're seeing a lot of gases that really are harmful as concrete. So we'll go in, patch the concrete, put a coating on it and it should last for a much longer time. So we talked about nutrient and emerging contaminant removal. Um, this is something that we're all hearing about PFOS, PFAS in the water system. But we've talked about this and I'm sure Mark and Terry and it, we, we had this in our capital improvement plan years ago and we scrapped it because the state could never really enforce it. Um, it's to the point now where we've put it back in the capital improvement, improvement, improvement plan because the problem is we have to remove these PFOS, PFAS from the water, from the raw water. And then our Coolome Water Treatment Plant, all their wastewater goes back to this waste treatment plant. So that's going to take everything that we've removed from that water and put it in our waste treatment. So then we're going to have to figure out, okay, how do we get it out of there? It's going to be tricky for everybody. Um, right now we land apply our sludges. I don't know if we're going to be able to do that in the future. It may be something where it's going to be have to be moved somewhere and incinerated. So again, as we all know, um, rules are changing, laws are changing very quickly right now. So, uh, this is what we've seen over the last couple of years. I don't know what's going to happen over the next couple of years. So again, and Brian talking about grants and things, you know, our next project is this FEMA project. And so FEMA has agreed that the repair cost submitted back in February of three million, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, uh, with ninety percent of that coming from the federal FEMA and then ten percent coming from state. I can tell you that this will not repair that basin. Um, we went back and forth with them for the last five years. And we're still going back and forth with them. And then the, you know, everyone's seen the news. Do we start a project and, you know, not know if we'll get reimbursed for it? Um, I can't go to Robin with a, you know, a ten million dollar project and show her that I can only come up with five point eight of it. So. We're still looking into this. We want to get something a little more firmer and writing from FEMA instead of a reimbursement type scenario. You know, Brian's worked with FEMA before and we've talked about this and I think the reimbursement thing is pretty scary to spend millions and millions of dollars and not know if I'm going to get reimbursed for it or not. So we're still looking into this. We want to start this project. Kim has done so much work with FEMA to, you know, their insurance reductions. We don't understand that totally and how they can, you know, deduct the million of dollars of roughly nine hundred twenty-nine thou- nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars they have deducted from us, but yet we use that insurance money on other projects to get the plant back up and running and things of that nature. So, we're still asking questions. So, um.
Johnny, on that point, have, since the, the great flood several years ago, have you got actually received any money from FEMA?
We did. We received, I would have to check with, do you remember what that check was, Cindy? I want to say roughly about eight hundred thousand dollars we have received from our insurance in FEMA. Maybe it was insurance. Yeah. Some from FEMA, but very little.
That, that's good for today. That's, that's.
Yeah. It, it has cost us more to try to get money from FEMA than we have gotten. So, um, again, they want, when, when you talk about these projects and you look at this basin, you're looking at a concrete basin. Just think of a pool. And it's collapsed one side of it, but there's, okay, we understand that, but we're only going to fix this one side. Well, you got to tear the bottom and the other side out to fix it. We're only going to fix this one side. So, um, you know, the other problem that we fight with is, is the first numbers they sent us. They sent us the numbers and, you know, in the bottom of the contract, it said, you have to bring everything back up to the codes and standards of today before we'll reimburse or we, you know, any kind of reimbursement. Well, they didn't even supply me the money for that because I, I supplied them the numbers for that. So I've sent back, well, why didn't you supply us the numbers to bring it back up to that? Why are you just giving me this? So it's, it's a little different. But again, we're going to look at it. We're going to look at some grant funding. We won't qualify for brick, which is another part of FEMA. But we're going to look pretty, pretty deep into some funding throughout the state to see what we can find out because there's a lot of regionalization money out there and with Moxville pumping all this wastewater to Coolome, maybe we can kind of loop that in to see if we can do some kind of regionalization project. Any more questions on that? So Dutchens Creek Lift Station in Forest Main, uh, this was one of the ARPA projects that we received money for. You know, it aims at supporting development, emerging properties around I forty and Farmington Road areas. Um, in addition to facilitating growth, the project also served to replace and upgrade the existing infrastructure. Um, so this project has started. Um, it currently is set for November twelfth, twenty twenty-five to finish. I think we'll be done much sooner than that, but that's what the contract says. Cause again, like JD said, you know, supply chain on some things are getting better for us, but others it's not. Um, costs are kind of leveling out. We're not seeing these big spikes in them anymore, but they're still not coming down. So, um, we're seeing a lot of that, but supply chain for generators, Brad's probably seen this as much as us, but it's a year, sometimes two years just to get a generator anymore. So it's a little, a little frustrating. Um, so we'll start the upgrade of the lift station. Um, actually we'll start next week. They'll start doing some work on the lift station, upgrading electrical and things like that. But the line, the force main is complete. They actually cored the manhole there at Main Church Road yesterday. So, um, a lot of compliments from the contractors on that one from, uh, the community around there. They did a real good job and people were proud about it, very excited. So, um, so the contract amount was one point one nine eight. That's just for the construction. Uh, we've paid a hundred and We've paid a hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and ninety-two out. We were actually awarded one point five million dollars for this project. So all the engineering costs and everything will be reimbursed through ARPA. I'm gonna let Mike talk about this. Mike has spent a lot of time down there and I'm gonna, I'm gonna let him go through this.
Yeah, home away from home. It's been a while since you all got the chance to come out. It was, I think, first week in October, so we wanted to take this opportunity to kind of give you a quick update. Hopefully get you back out there early this spring when the weather heats up a little bit. But pretty much from the picture, you could see a lot of the exterior is already completed. We got all the brick up, it's in the dry roof, windows, doors. Pretty much all the, you know, the exterior stuff now. Part of the, the whole project, we were looking at, you know, winter getting interior. So but in regards to the overall project, distribution side of the project's pretty much complete. As you know, we have the, the associated water mains have been installed. Tabs have been made, transferred over connections. All those lines are in service, haven't had any problems, so that's a, that's been a good thing. In regards to the, the water treatment facility, like I stated, we've got, they're working on all the interior piping. Pretty much got the vast majority of the, the interior piping complete in the filter gallery, that kind of thing. They've done some pretty major work in the high service pump room. They'll be getting ready to drop the pump cans in and then after the pump cans, they can attach the motors and then proceed with the electrical with that. On the actual water treatment facility side, the main building, really the only interior piping left to do is on the UV reactors. All the filter piping's done, the actuators, the valves are all in place, which is great. Outside stuff, plate settlers that is, that are gonna be going into the said basins. So they'll be dropping those units in hopefully pretty soon this spring. Interior, the interior lab, interior offices, skater room, all has been sheet rocked. All the associated electrical cables, that kind of thing are in place. They'll start sanding and bringing in some of the cabinetry and all that kind of thing here soon. So for the water treatment facility, it's coming along great. Hopefully, like I said, in the spring, it'll actually, you can actually walk in there now and visually see stuff. There's not studs, you can see the rooms, you can see how big they are or how small they are, whichever, however you see it. But as for the raw water pump station side, that's kind of the part two that we're gonna be leading into now that the main facility is pretty much, you know, nearing completion. The raw water primary pump station is the one out by the dam across from the bowl. They've done a lot of work since we actually created the slide. We're way beyond thirty, thirty percent complete on the transmission main. That main is all the way almost to the building now. So they, they made some really good time, had some good weather and, and got that knocked out. Coming up mid-spring, probably around, we're looking at first of March scheduling. They're gonna start actually taking that primary pump station out of service. They'll gut it and pull everything out and then start revamping it for the new plant. All new piping, new electrical, VFDs, motors, pumps, the whole nine yards. They're estimating somewhere, somewhere in the neighborhood of three weeks, a month. And that primary pump station should be complete. So it's a, it's a pretty quick process of them coming in, tearing it out and bringing it up to new. Overall, our project status, we're, we're right on track, on time and under budget. Or on budget, I guess would be a better way. We're at the, still closing in right now, approved with all the approved changeovers at fifty-one point five million, fifty-one point six million. That with the change orders, we've only had about a one point three six percent. On a fifty-two million dollar project, that's pretty amazing. So far to date, we've paid out about thirty-two point three million dollars. We're looking at sixty-two, sixty-three percent right now, final completion. And with the contract amount being paid out about sixty-three point five percent. So with that being said, you know, as we're getting closer to that seventy percent mark and stuff, you're gonna see that project schedule, final completion date is really gonna start to dial in. You know, for the last three years, it's been spring of twenty twenty-six. So over the past couple of progress meetings, they've given us an update, March eighth. Our last project meeting, they dropped it to March third. This is, this would be the final completion handed over to the county. The actual final construction, they're looking at somewhere around the first of December, twenty twenty-five. So we're, we're well under a year and, and rocking and rolling to where the construction's complete. They'll start the testing phase, training phase and, and subsequently handed back over to the county. So that being said, we'll move on to more projects.
I want to go back and, and really stress what Mike said, you know. Right now, we've paid out thirty-two million, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars on this project. And a one point three six percent overage. That's, that's big. If we can keep progress this way, that's gonna, I don't think I've, I don't even think that's heard of right now, so we're, we're excited about that. This date, like Mike says, this final completion date keeps rolling back. We hope to have staff running that plant in January. So we're December, actually December, so we're excited about it. So our capital improvement plan, I didn't break this out. I just kind of did one slide of it because really nothing has changed here or swayed from years past. We're still putting money every year into a fund to do some water and sewer line extensions or replacements. That project is still slated for Main Church Road to do the other end of that, to complete that loop. After that, our plant will be in service. We'll actually look at the water model with Moxville running to see what we need to do next. Where we, what, what's gonna be healthy for the system moving forward? So we'll create a new master plan for that. So, but we'll continue to do these, these extensions and replacements. The skater system upgrade, so this is, this is key and we'll get into another slide here. This is continually upgrading this, our skater system. We hope to be completely upgraded within the end of twenty-seven. And we may be able to cut some of that back in twenty-eight, twenty-nine. But again, with so much of the technology changing, this changes constantly for us and it's, it's pretty expensive. And then we'll start the renovation of the Green Hill Road Pump Station. Again, this is another pump station. You know, this pump station's been there probably the same time, probably early eighties, I would imagine, if I had to put a date on it. We continue to move pumps and we continue, but the system is gonna change as we're growing, the system is changing. And I'm gonna give you some numbers on some of the growth here in just a minute. So our rates, we're still sticking to the rate model that Raph Tellez has done for us. You know, when we were going through the process of actually pricing this plant and bidding this plant out. So this will be the last year of our four percent increase and then we'll start to trend back down. Hopefully, we'll look at this again next year. As you can see, we didn't ask for a lot of capital in our budget. You can see that we're only doing things that we need to do. And that's because we really want to control this rate crease, rate increase. We want this as minimal as possible. So we're gonna continue to try to back down on this as much as possible moving forward and look at other options for irrigation and things like that to kind of pull the rates back in the flex. So year in review. Kind of want to go over this a little bit, just, just so you know, since January of twenty twenty-four, the water system has expanded forty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-five feet. So that's nine miles of water line that's been, this water system has expanded. So this is accommodate new developments along with eight hundred and thirty-two new water meters and accounts. So Mark, you asked a question earlier, how many lots do we have in, in the county, right? So I can tell you that anything that the water system or the sewer system has connected since January of twenty twenty-four, and that includes buildable lots. There's been eight hundred and thirty-two of those added since January first twenty, twenty twenty-four. And I'd done this slide about mid-January. So it's a pretty close number. Now that doesn't include Moxville, but that would include Bermuda Run or Davie County, if that makes. So, so our staff has repaired a hundred and twenty-five leaks since July first of twenty twenty-four. That could be service line leaks and main line leaks. That, that number has actually come down from last year, last year that number was a hundred and thirty-seven. So that's, it's gonna fluctuate. I wish we could control it, but we couldn't, we can't. So water treatment, Scott, I want to, you know, just show numbers that you, you probably don't see or don't realize, but between July first, twenty twenty, between July, between July first, twenty, in the present. So since July first, Coolomey and Sparks Road have, plants have come treated approximately five hundred and fifty million gallons of water together. So the Sparks Road Water Treatment Plant set a new record in July of twenty twenty-four and they treated sixty-six million, eight hundred and seven thousand gallons of water in July alone. So Coolomey operated, so our, when we say operated on average fourteen and a half hours per day was Coolomey and they treated one point three million gallons a day. So during peak times, that's, that's a lot longer, but during unpeak times, which could be, you know, the first of December, it's cold, people aren't using a lot of water, it could be ten hours a day. Sparks Road treated, operated on average sixteen hours a day and treated one point six million gallons of water daily. So that just kind of gives you a look at what the plants are actually treating for water. And our current capacity is five point six million gallons a day is what our plants are rated for. So the Coolomey Waste Treatment Plant, they treated an average of five hundred thousand gallons per day of, of sewage coming in. That number's gonna change pretty drastically here over the next thirty days. I got word that Moxville is gonna start up a pump station that they built called Break Bush. It's gonna divert a lot of the Leonard Creek flow wastewater to Coolomey. We're looking at an average of probably three to three hundred and twenty-five thousand, thousand gallons a day from that. So again, until it happens, we don't know the exact flow, but.
What's the capacity?
The capacity at Coolomey is one point five a day is what it's rated for. Eastern Davie, so right now we're transferring on average of four hundred and eighty-five thousand gallons per day of sewer to City County Utilities Commission, which is Winston Salem. So it's what we're seeing coming from Eastern Davie to Forsyth County right now. Questions on any of that?
I have a hypothetical and you may not be able to answer this. A, a development of say five to six hundred homes that on the Coolomey side of Moxville that would have sewer run to it. In your mind, what, what type of, what kind of flow are you looking at there on a daily basis? Just thought.
So I left my phone laying back there, but if, if you look at, if you just do a simple number and figure out seventy-five gallons per bedroom. So if, if just say seven hundred homes, there you go. Just say seven hundred, three-bedroom homes, that's twenty-one hundred bedrooms. And then you just multiply that by seventy-five gallons a day, you're looking at a hundred and fifty-seven thousand gallons. And, and usually that's a good, that's a, that's a number. They just dropped that, it used to be a hundred and twenty, but the state changed the rules not too long ago and changed it to, from the one twenty per bedroom to seventy-five. So that's what they tell you to design it for and that's what we have to use for capacity. So if you build, if you build a three-bedroom home, I'm gonna use seventy-five gallons per day per bedroom. More questions on that?
In the grand scheme of things, what, what type of percentage of overall volume does a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand gallons represent on our system?
So you, you have to think about this in a couple of different ways. You have to think about the infrastructure getting to the plant and then the, and then the plant. So the percentage of one point five million gallons a day of the hundred and fifty-seven is what, point one five? Okay, so and then you think of, but you really got to look at your infrastructure there. It's just like water. We would love to go through the county and build a twenty-four inch water main for growth for the rest of Davie, for, you know, forever. The problem is you can't do that because your, your sewer lines get septic. It doesn't move, it's gotta move because if it settles out in the lines, you create a lot of issues, you know, in the system. Smell coming out of manholes. It's septic when it gets to your plants, impossible to treat. So you have to look at those lines. So an eight-inch line, and we look at this, every new development before it comes to you, I require them to look at every piece of infrastructure from where they tie on to an interceptor to where we know there's capacity. And that may, currently Hall Walker Lane, you know, they're, they're looking at a piece of property across from the hospital. I'm making them look at infrastructure all the way down to the Smith, Smith, Smith Creek Interceptor. And if there's any portion of that sewer line that meets fifty to seventy-five percent capacity in that sewer line, I will make them upgrade that. So I'd love to say that it's possible, but without running that analysis, I really don't know because I'm gonna look at every piece of that infrastructure. That's where this flow testing and this AIA really come in, it's a lot of help. Because we really actually had flow meters in the system, so we know what type of flows are coming through there. And eventually we can create that model. Right now, it's a lot of manual calculations, so.
Now, eight hundred and thirty-eight lots you spoke of, that was water earlier.
It could be water, it could be sewer. I didn't, I, it's just a meter, right? So I didn't differentiate between water and sewer, but I would say that it's probably fifty-fifty.
So what, one final thing, looking at this over a period of years, what kind of impact would five thousand three-bedroom homes have on our system? If we're looking at like what could happen over seven, eight, ten years?
You, you, again, you're looking at your Eastern Davie, let's, let's just say this, let's say Eastern Davie. Let's just say Eastern Davie got five thousand homes in five years. So if you're just looking at three-bedroom homes, you're looking at a million, one million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons of sewer alone. And that would be similar to water, but not as much. Your infrastructure that you just finalized in two thousand and eighteen, Eastern Davie Sewer Project is currently rated for two and a half million gallons a day. So you would be at the point with five thousand homes that you would have to update that infrastructure again. Your contract is fine because you've got five million gallons a day with, with CCEC.
Yeah, with the second sleeve, yeah.
Right, but again, you can't build the infrastructure that big because of the problems that it caused, so you only built for half of it right now. So again, it could, it could cause problems, you know, in your water system. I mean, depending, you're an average daily flow right now of two point six million gallons a day. If you add another million gallons a day to it and you're at four and a half million gallons a day, you know, the state has trigger numbers at eighty percent of capacity of any system, you've got to be in designed to upgrade it. Again, that's why we push for higher irrigation rates because we won't hit anything close to that until July, August, September, when people really want to water their yards, you see our usage go up. So why should I make a regular homeowner pay for that water using it in their house? Pay for that upgrade when, when really we wanna, we want to stop the irrigation. So again, I'm gonna let Mike touch on this.
Speaking of critical.
Speaking of, uh, critical infrastructure, um, one of the projects we took part in in, in twenty twenty four, um, we were, uh, reached out to by, uh, North Carolina DEQ, uh, which consequently they were reached out or have been involved with, uh, the North Carolina National Guard Cyber Security Response Team, Response Force. Uh, they do a lot of hygiene assessments. They've done it for the county. Uh, local municipalities, uh, county government, town government, city government, stuff like that. They branched out, they've seen a, a definite inc- uh, excuse me, definite increase in attacks of, on critical infrastructure. Um, I don't think we need to go much farther than that. But, uh, uh, so we, we took part in this with the help of Tony and, uh, information technology came out, uh, with our, along with our OT side, which is our Fortech, which is all our SCADA. Um, and integration on that aspect. Um, so it was a great opportunity for, for us. It's a great opportunity for the National Guard as they're, they're diving into this type of, um, you know, area, um, a little outside of what they've normally been doing, but, uh, it, it was, it was an amazing experience. We're going to, uh, um, hopefully take part in this again. Uh, they're looking to try to incorporate as many systems in the state. Um, but fortunately Davie County was the first, so, or, uh, for water treatment. Um, and with the new plant coming and new technology coming, this just makes us, uh, trying to stay one step ahead of, of the, the bad guys. But, uh, that was a, that was a great project. We, uh, were able to take part in this year.
So this slide says two things. Um, this tells you how good of a, of a set of employees you have in this water treatment industry. So, um, I want to congratulate them, Mike, and I've got Matt back there and uh, all my water treatment plant operators because they go above and beyond, but I want them to celebrate the outstanding achievements of our water treatment plant staff and the remarkable contributions to our utilities water quality. Um, their diligence and hard work, having sure that our water treatment facilities go above and beyond and safeguarding our community's health and providing clean and safe water. The North Carolina Area Wa- Optimization Award for twenty twenty three, presented by North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality acknowledges, acknowledges the exceptional performance of water treatment plants and turbidity removal, crucial aspect of main high quality drinking water. So these guys do a great job. I mean, they've got certain standards at the state and then the state comes back and says, okay, you've went so far and above this that, here you go, we're going to put you on this list. So. But it also tells you this was twenty twenty three and we got this award two weeks ago. So the state is having the same problems that a lot of people are, and they are very, 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 very behind. So.
Well, that, that and a lot of data. I mean, you're talking a year's worth of data. I'm probably fifteen to twenty, um, components every fifteen minutes for the entire year. So I mean, it's, um, just a tremendous amount of data they have to go through. Um, so.
So you, they've done a great job in that and I have to give, you know, a lot of credit to, to y'all and to county management for allowing us to, you know, stay in the, and, and keep evolving in water and wastewater treatment because, um, we've got a great system and we're very proud of it.
You guys do a great job. Congratulations. Thank you for the hard work.
Three of you board members know this already, it's been there. Benita, the, you know, Brent were on the board, you know, but this guy here doesn't pat him pat on the back at all. But when the East Davie wastewater treatment plant, well, our system was, was developed. You know, there was a bore under the Yankton River in which there's space enough for the extra sleeve to go through. And Johnny made certain that, that we have the capacity to double our capacity.
Yeah, and, yeah, like JD, I mean, I think we've all walked into problems there and we don't want to pass those on. So, um, we take this, this is our county and we, and we want to make sure that when we leave, of course, everybody's going to say we did something wrong. But, um, we want to, we take pride in what we do.
Well, I will say this, every time I've had to call you about, uh, a constituent in the county that calls, I don't care what the problem is. To you, it's probably minor, to them it's major, but you have always responded to it directly and that, that's amazing. That's great customer service and, and I got to tell you, I really appreciate that and I know the other commissioners do too.
Well, I appreciate that and my staff does too. So like I said, we've got a lot of help and a lot of them are sitting at this table right here and, and of course y'all, so.
Well, we don't do the hard work, y'all do. We, we, we don't get in the ditch with the town of Moxville in freezing weather, in the water and, and repair water lines. Y'all do so. But, and thank you for that too. For, I know y'all had, I know y'all played a huge part in getting that taken care of so quickly last week.
We do what we can.
I would echo that same sentiment to you, but I would also say that to our other, our other departments as well. They go well above what's asked of them.
But they don't get in ditches of water in thirty degree weather.
We talk about that annually.
Yeah, we enjoy it.
Well, I want to go on record and tell you that I appreciate what your guys do sincerely. Also appreciate you because you're one of the people, you're kind of like the, the Terry Brawley equivalent of county government. Because I can call Johnny anytime and I'll either get a text back, I'll call you later or he'll call me back. Sometimes just call him to find out general information because I know that's going to be my quickest person that'll answer me. So that's professional.
That's right. I appreciate it. That's great.
Thank y'all. Mike, y'all do a great job.
Anything, anything else for Johnny? All right, we'll move into, uh, Brian, you want to, uh, you guys, we have these sheets. Uh, I don't think we've had much of opportunity to ponder this or discuss it, but, uh,
Well, I guess we, we just assumed after getting through the whole day, if there was anything. I mean, you guys have readily jumped in and provided comments and questions through the whole day. Um, I, I, I have written down here two things that we did not answer specifically while we were here. Uh, Benita wanted to know the hospital revenue versus the staff. And Brent wanted to know the estimated cost of all the EMS requests. So if there was anything else that I may have missed that we couldn't answer right on the spot.
I have a few more things, but I have them scribbled, so I will write them clearly and get them to you. Cause they're not like rush, but things we'll want that I would like to know. So I'll get them to you like maybe by Monday. Okay.
You have the pages in the back of your binder, but you also have the pages in the front that have your name on it.
Yes, that's the one I started on. So.
We can't remain anonymous.
But other than that, I mean, I didn't, I don't think unless there's anybody else, the thing we missed that I had left, we were just, you know, the floor was yours to give us any more feedback or, I mean, obviously the conversation is going to go, it's going to go for the next few months, but you know, anything that we can be working on, putting together, you name it.
I do have one thing. Um, you know, today has been great and we've figured out many ways to spend money and, uh, but, uh, there is one thing that, and Robin and Stendy will probably throw something at me, but uh, we've still got an issue with fire funding capital. And, you know, we did, we've made, I feel like we've made good strides, great strides on the operational side. We've got capital needs for these guys that I would ask, well, I'd like to have some more discussion with this board and, you know, see what we could possibly do for that. Because if we don't start, we're going to be having this, or somebody's going to be having this conversation, you know, ten years from now. So. Um, it's an issue, um, because I just don't see with the rising cost and some of the dilapidated, um, buildings they have that if we don't do something to jumpstart just the capital side, because again, I think we did a pretty good job on the operation side. We're going to have this problem. So I would throw that out for the group and, um, you know, we can, as you say, we'll continue to talk about this over the next several months, but it's an issue.
That is one of my questions that I had written down. I was going to ask you to kind of guess how much that fire tax is going to, um, change with the revow. And then I, I think as a board, we have to make a final decision whether or not we would support the sales tax going towards fire funding because Brian and I have kind of been asking the fire departments in the county to give us their opinions and their feedback, whether they're willing to do the work to make that happen. But if we're not willing to put that on the ballot, then they don't need to do that. So those are some things we do need to address like pretty quickly.
Well, the other thing, commissioners, that we have to do is we can't, um, you know, we've heard a lot here today and all valuable, all good. But we've got to make a determination how much of this fifteen and fifteen and a half cents, they, they need to know. Because that's how they're going to direct budget. Uh, and so we need to, uh, I, I think in these documents that you sent back, sent back in, you need to have some idea of what, of what of that you want to, uh, you want to, uh, put toward the budget. Yeah, a- and, uh, if you're neutral, you're neutral. If, if not, they need to know so we can determine how we respond to the requests we've had so far. And they're getting more requests than that because we haven't heard from everybody. So let's ponder that, pray about it, think about it, get that to them as quick as we can.
And in regards to that fire funding, just like JD, his vests have gone up to twelve hundred dollars. I mean, a, a set of, a complete set of turnout gear is probably nearing nine thousand dollars for a fire department by the time you put all the equipment, including, um, boots and everything, but it's probably pretty close to that by now because it was five. So that's, um, they are also experiencing rising costs. And a stripped down fire department is like one point two and that's probably, that was when Moxville ordered theirs and now it's probably one point five, if not more. But so they're, they're also experiencing those supply pains.
I don't want to oversimplify it, but, and I don't want to sound like I'm being combative to anybody that's asked questions or presented today, but you can buy a lot of gear, a lot of equipment, a lot of things for what it costs to hire an employee over time. And I just, you know, I think that's, I think that's the only way we can achieve some of these goals that seem to be worthy is to be cognizant of that.
I, I would just like to say that, um, I would never want us to lose sight of our job here and that is to provide all these services the best that we can to the people of Davie County for the least amount of tax money that we have to spend.
Anything else? Any other questions for us? All right, will we have a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Ms. Finney, do I have a second? Richard, all in favor? All right, we will stand adjourned. All righty.